All right, we are live.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Harrisburg City Council Budget Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. Mr. Ben Allen is the Chair of Budget and Finance and all of City Council members. I have Doc calling this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Ms. Houston, please do the row call.
One second. Yeah, give me one second here.
Okay.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors. President Williams.
Present. Thank you, Ms. Houston. I'll now move on to committee business, and I now will turn it over to Mr. Ben Allen, who is the Chair of Budget and Finance. Mr. Allen?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to budget season. So just by way of announcement, there was a flurry of emails that came out this afternoon. So for council members, if you have not checked your inbox, please do. There are responses to the questions. There's a myriad of job descriptions. So some of the requested information that council has made as part of this process is sitting in our inbox as well. So I just want to make sure that if you have not seen that, definitely reference that as we have the discussion tonight. As in the past, we will break it down by section. We do have a busy agenda for the evening, and we will jump right to it. I did have an opportunity to speak to the mayor ahead of this meeting, and so I wanted to reiterate kind of my perspective to him and some of the things that, one of the things I want to draw down on through tonight's discussion later on. As we all can all attest to right now, we know that we are still in the midst of a pandemic. Our hope with the implementation of a potential vaccine that we can see the craziness and the insanity of what we've faced from an economic standpoint decrease or go away in 2021, but it's not a guarantee. And so one of the things that I will ask the mayor to do as he presents the information to us, particularly as pertains to our capital expenditures this upcoming fiscal year, is to get a sense of the timing of when we will expect to experience some significant drawdowns, both in the general fund, particularly as it pertains to our capital expenditures. So I want to get a good sense of that because my request is that for those things that can be drawn down in the second half of the year, I do really want to see what happens in the first six months of the year from a revenue standpoint. I know we have Dan Connolly has joined us for the evening. He has done a lot of the legwork to look at anticipated revenues. So we're looking very closely at that. But for my colleagues on council, just so you know, my first initial request as we go through this process is for some agreement from the administration side to look at the timing of when we would anticipate drawing down on the general fund, particularly as it pertains to capital expenditures. So with that, I am going to turn it over to the mayor. I know that he has prepared a few slides for us, and then we are going to proceed through the agenda for the evening. Prior to doing so, are there any initial questions that my colleagues on council have before we get going? Okay. None? Okay.
Just generally, when the budget was mentioned to many, many typos, but they haven't received information on which entries were typos and which ones were not. So maybe the mayor go over which were their mistakes and what are the mistakes we should be noting?
Fair enough, and that might be come from either Mayor Endor Neil, I'm assuming potentially as well. So, but thank you. That is a good point because I know that was something that was mentioned initially. I'm going to go ahead and turn on, and actually just for note, I see that both council member Daniels obviously has joined us, and so has council member Majors, just so, Shadane, if you want to mark that into record. I will turn it over to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Chair Allen. Appreciate the introduction for tonight. We discussed a framework where I was going to just go over a couple of slides to begin with. You've already heard a lot from me, and then turn it over to, first to Dan Connolly, who is the city's financial advisor and who is really largely responsible for the revenue and expenditure projections as well as the debt plan. Then to the police department, and we have the command staff here. We have Blake Lynch. We have also the codes department and fire. And then on to a discussion about the capital improvement plan, and that will be led mostly by Wayne Martin and Mark Woolley. So what I did was I took a handful of the questions pertaining to those topics and put them on some slides, the ones that I thought that would interest the public the most. And we also emailed an awful lot of information over today. It's quite thick. All these are answers to various questions that council members had, and I encourage you to go through it, and if there are more questions, we can get those answered tomorrow. But there are a lot of job descriptions, a lot of other materials that were, should be in your, you should be in receipt of currently. So if Momen can bring up the PowerPoint, we're just going to do a couple of slides here. And these are your questions that I thought we should highlight for the public. And if we can go to that first page there. The first question was, you know, walk me through the projections you made for the LST and the EIT for 2021. Are you concerned that they are projected too high in light of still being in the midst of the pandemic? And I think it's important that we have a conversation about this, that we're transparent in how we came up with our calculations so that you can feel comfortable for them. And I think it's a very reasonable question. Earned income and local service tax revenue projections are based on projected employment levels in the city. And these are the steps that we took to make those projections. We examined the historical relationship between local employment levels and the monthly EIT and the LST. And for example, in 2019, when the city collected an average of a little over a million a month in EIT, we looked at the unemployment rate and we looked at the unemployment level. And then we analyzed the relationship based on monthly receipts, taking into account lags between work performed and receipts collected. We projected area employment levels into 2021, assuming a modest economic recovery. And I want to stress modest of 2021 over 2020, but it's still modest and conservative. We applied the historical relationship between employment levels and receipts to 2021 based on projected employment levels and wage expectations. And we're assuming a sort of metro area unemployment rate of about 8% at the year end that may improve to as much as 7.5% by the end of 2021. We're also assuming no wage growth. And that resulted in the 12.5 million in budgeted EIT for 2021, which is lower than we had anticipated in terms of when we were making our projections for 2020, lower than what we are assuming that we're going to collect by the end of the year. And next slide, working on that question, there was a sort of general statement that was made of concern that we're not taking into account consideration for the future emergency declarations that may occur as a result of the ongoing pandemic. How much did you factor that logic into determining appropriations that could be subject to such declarations and that would inhibit receipt of projected revenues? And so just a little more detail on that. The 2021 EIT projection is based only on a modest economic recovery. The receipts are actually budgeted to be less than 2020, when hopefully the city was faced with the toughest stretch of the pandemic. We believe the assumptions behind the budgeted EIT numbers are reasonable. There are many economic forecasters currently who are projecting economic and employment expansion in 2021, including the Pennsylvania Independent Fiscal Office, which projects 3% GDP growth, 3.8% wage growth, and 100,000 new jobs statewide in 2021, whereas the city's EIT budget assumes no wage growth and very modest job growth. That said, the finance department wants to assure you that we are sensitive to the uncertainties facing the city in 2021 and the potential negative implications to general fund revenues. And even with a significant draw on fund balance such as being proposed, the city projects over 10 million in unrestricted cash by the end of the year. And this is equal to about 14% of operating revenues well beyond the adopted fund balance policy. So it does provide some budgeting flexibility. If we go to the next slide, and if you really look at how we're drawing down that fund balance, I think this slide is clearer than what I presented to you the other day when we did the budget. Because it looks at the projected drawdown of the fund balance. It takes all 15 million and it breaks it up. So the 5.75, that is the proposed defecence of the stadium bonds. That is sort of non-negotiable. That's what the bonds cost. The 2 million is the additional payment towards the forbearance liability, which we are proposing getting credited for. Together, that equals the 7.750 in total debt payments that we're drawing down from the fund balance. Dan Connolly, who will come next and answer your questions, has made it pretty clear. And I agree that we should have the opportunity in the new year to be able to refinance this forbearance liability. And it is possible that that $2 million, rather than come from fund balance, could be wrapped into the overall financing. So one thing we can do right off the bat, if we start to see revenues not coming in as projected, is potentially defer that $2 million payment until we can put the refinancing in place. Another, the rest of that breakdown shows that we've got about 4.6 in capital projects. And we've done that pretty much every year. That's not out of keeping with what we've proposed in past years. It does include some projects which you already know about that we've planned about in IT or in terms of the upgrade for the public safety building that we've planned to expand in our long-term capital plan. So not too many surprises there, but it equals about 4.6 million. And then we have about 2.7 that we are proposing using to cover general operating expenses. And what I would say there is that, over the past year, excuse me, we saved $3.3 million in personnel costs alone in 2020, meaning we underspent our personnel budget by 3.3 million. I think there's no question that we will be able to underspend our city personnel budget in the new year by in excess of that 2.7. So I don't actually anticipate us having to draw down on the fund balance for that. I think we've had a proven track record of being able to manage our budget accordingly. For instance, we're going to talk in a minute about how many police positions we have open, how long it's going to take to fill those. A lot of the new positions aren't going to be able to be filled immediately. So the reality is that from a budgeting standpoint, you're sort of getting the worst-case scenario. And there are lots of controls and lots of ways that the city can adapt over the course of the year to lessen those drawdowns if necessary. We expect to finish this year with 25.3 million in unrestricted fund balance in cash. And after the anticipated draws of the 15.1 million, that would still leave us with 10.2. And that 25.3 might even be a little conservative. As we're looking at it now, that might be closer to 26 or even more than 26 by the year's end. So we have enough cash, and I think we've baked in a lot of ways that we can make sure that if 2021 turns out to be a grueling year for revenues, we can pull back on some of our expenditures. The only other set of questions that I wanted to highlight before we turn it over to the departments, there were a few things having to do with policing. And I wanted to bring up the organizational chart one more time for your benefit, but also the public's benefit. And Momen will have that as well. So if we're having a conversation with the police later, and there's a question, for instance, about, you know, how the co-responders work or where the animal control officers are, we can pull this organizational chart up. And the public can find this on our website. They can find it in the original PowerPoint. They'll find it in this new PowerPoint. But it's a fundamental shift. It really puts community services in this new division at the heart of the police department and not as just some sort of ancillary connection. And it also puts the co-responders right at the heart of what we do. So I wanted to show everyone that again. And then just a brief couple of slides before we turn it over eventually to police to talk about the new positions. Because while there were a lot of questions about the new positions, and we have submitted job descriptions to you, those are long, I just wanted to highlight a few things. So for the Director of Community Relations and Engagement, and again, that is the new position that we've created for Blake Lynch, who is on the Zoom call tonight. That director is going to serve as a liaison between the Bureau of the Police and the community and the officers in the field, both advertising the Bureau Command Staff of Citizen Community Concerns and serving as a police bureau representative in the field to organize citizens against crime and present a positive message of work being done by the police. The director is going to work to achieve and sustain gains against crime by strengthening community relations and trust. He's going to serve as a spokesperson on behalf of the Bureau with community leaders, news media, civic organizations, block associations, concerned citizens, et cetera, with a focus on developing solutions to challenges that arise within the city's many diverse communities. And again, you've got a full job description for all these positions in your files, but I wanted to highlight that a little bit more tonight by way of beginning. Also wanted to talk about some of the other management positions. We have the Record Management System, RMS Manager. Wanted to make sure everyone understood what RMS stood for. And the RMS Manager is basically in charge of reviewing a wide variety of complex and technical issues concerning the application and use of the RMS programs. And they will assist in identification and development of new programs, new program add-on systems, procedures, maintenance, equipment, and basically all the ways that we handle our records, helping us move to the next level in terms of how we record things, and then eventually how that information can be accessed. Similarly, the Body worn Camera Manager, the BWC Manager, it should be noted, also deals with the in-car video, which is an important thing in addition to the body cameras. And that is a lot of managing in terms of, you know, in terms of data. So to have a full-time manager in charge of that is going to help us when we need to access that data. Switching over to the next slide, we've talked a lot about them, and we can have a longer conversation tonight, but the Community Service Aides, unarmed civilian support positions, primary responsibilities within the community policing division. And they can do customer service and outreach to citizens. They can enforce certain things and other non-criminal police-related duties and basically focus on quality of life issues and improving community relations. The co-responders that we've talked about, that is an expansion of an existing partnership with the county. They work side by side with law enforcement. Law enforcement, the co-responders together identify calls for service where behavioral health, including things, not just mental health, but also other types of disorders can be an underlying factor for individuals at risk of arrest. The co-responders can offer assessment, access to crisis intervention if necessary, provide referral information to the individuals, provide follow-up. And a large part of what they're going to be able to do more of now has to do with follow-up and sort of other types of proactive measures. So that's the co-responders when we talk about them. And then the Technical Services Manager is responsible for coordinating all of the reporting and the right-to-know requests. And basically is going to work for the new captain, commanding officer of the Technical Services Division. But that's going to be a key person in making sure that, you know, you and others can get the information that they need on a timely basis. Flipping over to the next slide, some of the other new positions that we should highlight. We of course have a new substation manager position, responsible for all sorts of things, including engagement with the public, and basically ensuring that we will have that daily staffing and daily presence at the substation in coordination with community policing and the Community Services Division and the new aides. And then two new captain positions. These are the two uniformed positions. And we have both of the newly proposed captains here tonight, Hooper and Abramitis. Hooper, we're proposing to be in charge of the Community Service Division. You can speak to him. And Abramitis would be in charge of the Technical Services Division. A lot of knowledge there. And we are happy to have them proposed to be joining our command team. Only a couple more comments on policing here. One of the council members asked, how does the proposed changes in the structure and the appropriations increase public safety? And basically, you know, in short, and the police can expand on this, it allows for us to separate from uniform patrol responsibilities and house all these appropriate special units together for greater cohesion and better response to community needs or concerns. Increased efficiency is key. Utilization of civilian staff focuses officer and leadership attention to crime fighting and increases public safety and more a positive community interaction. More time to spend on calls and more capacity to deal with quality of life issues. It's a combination of that, but that's what we're planning. We're planning, a repeated question from a lot of council members was, you know, when are we going to fill these new positions? We're hoping to fill them as quickly as we can in the new year with qualified candidates. Some of them may be filled internally, but a lot of them won't be. And they'll be open for either. And the goal is to, especially for the Community Services Aides, find and identify candidates who are connected to the various community policing districts. And I'm going to show you that map again in a second. But, you know, one of the questions had to do with defunding the police. And while we are not proposing defunding the police, we are proposing utilizing this new funding in a civilian-first way, which we think is going to be a great benefit to the public. And if we switch to the next slide, so that we'll have this, because I know council is constantly asking for this, and this is also the district map, which the public needs to understand so that we can find people for the Community Review Board. But those are our policing districts, and again, we'll have Community Service Aides aside to each of those districts. There are a few questions about the South Allison Hill Safety Project. I just wanted to highlight that again. That is a proposed funding of tri-county community action to a grant, basically for them to work with their partners and our partners like The Hill, Brethren Housing, Wildheart, et cetera, to be a model of how the city can work with community groups to help improve safety, whether it's, you know, providing light bulbs for porches or installing residential camera systems or developing a neighborhood watch app. And this is just one of a number of partnerships that we have planned. We've got another similar partnership that we're trying to work to establish, not requiring funding, but requiring an MOU with the Bellevue Park Neighborhood Association. And the city's going to work with all neighborhood groups and all associations. And we have more of a budget than ever to try and address their needs. And that's a part of what we're going to be doing. And then finally, just a little statement about the vacancies for the Harrisburg Police Bureau. Just so that everybody understands where we are, we right now are up to 20. We have 20 current vacancies, and that doesn't count, obviously, all the new positions that we are, that we're doing. There is a limit to what we can do. We are working on establishing our own testing. This is something that could have benefits in future years if we establish for next year. It's not a short-term fix, but it could be helpful in filling some of those ranks. But we are facing a real challenge in terms of recruitment and retention of our officers. So we're hoping to supplement that with this civilian force. But there's no question that we're going to be down many officers still by the end of the year. And that's another way that, by sort of shifting the focus of the funding onto the civilians, that we can build the capacity even when we're challenged in hiring our officers. So with that, Chair Allen, I'd like to introduce Dan Connolly, who is our financial advisor for the city of Harrisburg. And he's available to take direct council questions on the big picture, revenues, expenditures, debt. He's worked side by side with Mark Woolley, our business administrator, who's also on the line and myself in establishing the basic framework and projections for this budget in the five-year plan. So I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us, Dan. Hang tight for me one second. We had a few questions for the mayor before we move on. I just wanted to, while it was still fresh in mind. Mayor, my quick question to you, and I don't know if you want to defer to our police commissioner on this. Looking at some of the job descriptions, particularly when it comes to the, let me bring it up on my other screen here. I think it's the CSA, yeah, the Community Service Aid role. When you were developing this description, and I'm looking particularly at the background and experience, it seems a little vague in terms of what would make someone qualified to do that role. So my question is, if we're looking for someone to help to step in on calls that might be more related to domestic abuse, mental health, or any of those things, wouldn't it be advantageous for us to look for someone who's had specific, maybe TSS background, some type of counseling background, even a social work background, or anything along those lines as well, as kind of a stipulation or at least a basis for that role, knowing full well what our intentions are for what we want them to be able to do or perform?
Yeah, I will, let me say that I think that type of background is obviously very appropriate for the co-responders. And we're looking to have them sort of be taking the lead in addressing a lot of the mental health issues. For the Community Service Aides, I think we were looking at a broader pool of applicants. Not to say that that wouldn't be a good background, but to say that we're looking for people with really rooted connections with the various neighborhoods of Harrisburg, ones that can really help us in doing that type of community outreach. But I would defer that question if I could. Maybe we can do that in a moment to Blake Lynch and Milo Hooper, because they are the ones that actually wrote the job description. And they're going to be the captain and the director of the new division. And I think they should talk to you directly about how they plan to recruit and fill those positions.
Fair enough. That is fine. I wanted to defer for a moment over to council president. I know you had a question for the mayor as well prior to moving to Dan.
Yes, Mayor, you were kind of vague last week when I asked you about why are we not working with the uptown organizations and the southside organizations to implement the same process that you have going on Allison Hill? Now, you've talked about doing something on Amo Street. I don't know what you're going to do on Amo Street in uptown area, but I've been telling you for years that we also need to address the lighting up there. You also need to address the bliteness up there. And we also need to do some redevelopment of some of those homes. And you have been real vague about not trying to do anything in that area. So I'm not too pleased about what you're doing out in Allison Hill when you have two other areas that you're not working on. When are you going to put some concentration in them areas? You've done it in the Third Street corridor. You've done it in the downtown area. There's other areas in other districts, as you just showed us on the map. So my question, when are you going to put something in capital improvements or expenditures that focuses on those particular areas?
Sure. I think we are focused on all the areas of the city, and we're going to.
You did not say nothing about the uptown and southside.
Okay. Well, let me explain how the Allison Hill Safety Project came to be. Basically, we were approached by the community organizations that banded together and presented us with a proposal for funding, which they believed would benefit their neighborhood and their community. And one of the things we're trying to do is empower neighborhood groups and organizations to be a part of that solution. So we're funding the proposal that they gave us, and they developed as part of a neighborhood plan. And I think that that is a good model and the right model for moving forward. And we do have resources, and we are available to fund other community organizations. That's why I meant this Allison Hill Safety Project could be an example of the type of partnership for empowering neighborhood groups to become a part of the solution. So this is just the first of what will hopefully be many neighborhood partnerships.
Mayor, there's other partnerships. There's other organizations. They've gotten contact with you. And I know for a fact that Camp Curtain United uptown said that they reached out to you and no response. So in what you stated about, you know, you want to make this the, I guess, you know, you're looking at doing something in Allison Hill. And yet, still, when these other organizations uptown reached out to you, and there's a couple up there that reached out to you, because I know for a fact there was someone out of the Camp Street Church, Wesley Church, that reached out to you, and no response whatsoever. Their concern was security. Their concern was the lighting up there, and their concern was the bliteness. They reached out to you and no response whatsoever.
Well, Mayor President, I won't argue with you tonight. I'll just say that I, I am responsive and would respond if it reached out to.
You can, you don't have to argue with me, but I'm going to tell you, we are going to now do something in those other areas. We're not continuing, uh, doing things in certain areas of this city. The city of Harrisburg encompasses seven districts and I want to see improvement in all of the areas. I live in the uptown area and you have not been up here in the city of Harrisburg doing any capital expenditures or the south side. So yeah, I'm on council and now with this budget, we need to be inclusive of doing those, those certain things up there too, to make sure that the residents up there are safe and the residents in south side are safe.
All right, look, all I'll say is that I think the model that we're trying to do in South Allison Hill can be done in every neighborhood of the city.
And why haven't you done it then?
Because we don't have the community organizations coming to the city and saying, here's a plan that we'd like funded.
Why have you not been in other areas? If you've seen the plans for the south side, why have you not reached out to those different organizations that I just mentioned and do it in, in those certain areas? I've been saying that for the last four years to you.
If the community, if the community steps up and says they have a proposal that they would like funded, that is similar to, to what we're doing, we have the capacity to do that and we are, we can be responsive to those neighborhood needs and those neighborhood desires.
Well, you're going to be responsive because I'm going to give you, I'll get in touch with those organizations and I'll present that to you. And include them in this budget.
Yes, and we, well, we already can, because, uh, there is money in the community policing budget for that type of partnership and those types of sponsorships. So what we're doing in, in South Allison Hill was they just, they had a ready-made plan to fund. We're saying yes to that, but we have additional resources already laid out and we can have that meeting, uh, not just with myself and yourself, but we can invite Blake Lynch and, um, uh, Captain Hooper. And this is going to be a centerpiece to the new community policing strategy, which can go neighborhood, uh, by neighborhood and work on neighborhood-centric plans. But we need to, uh, encourage ownership by, by the neighborhood groups and we need to have a, a, uh, you know, a dialogue with them to be able to develop these plans. And I, I'm hopeful that we can do more of it. I, I, I really share your, your desire to see this spread to every, um, every neighborhood of the city.
Well, just like I asked you about the substation in the uptown area, uh, that has not been in, you know, in any account. I don't see that in the capital expenditures at all. I asked you when you were doing that for the Allison Hill. I said, where's the, where is the plans to, uh, do a substation in the uptown area? Nothing whatsoever. Now you're quiet.
Okay. Well, I could keep going, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to take up all the time of the conversation. I thi, I think it would be good to ask the police that, that question. I think we're, we're trying to build on, uh, we're trying to fully staff and build on the substation that we've already, um, established in South Allison Hill. And, uh, we're trying to build additional capacity for the department through these civilianized positions. And I think, uh, that that can lead to what you want to see in the future, but we've got to go sort of step by step.
Mayor, I'm not berating you for anything. I'm telling you what the people want. You're not out there in the public, you're not in the streets. I'm in the streets. I hear this. They come to my home, they call me on the phone, they text me. Where is concern for their particular neighborhoods? And when you do this budget, I'm sure they're looking. They see nothing for where they live.
Well, I, I think that's short-sighted. I think the, uh, this plan benefits all residents and by building capacity and increasing our community services division, we can build those partnerships in every block in the city.
No question, okay.
We'll just leave it at that for now.
Well, I guess, yeah, you will. What is the salary on this CSA? What, what did we come up with, with the community service aide? What is the starting salary? What did we come up with? It's a grade three, but what is the actual salary?
I can look it up for you. Got the budget here.
And I'm not going to be brushed off, I'm going to certainly.
The answer, I'm sorry, I'm not on mute. The answer is, uh, thirty-nine thousand, um, plus benefits. So with benefits, it becomes, you know, a little bit more than that. It is an entry level, AFSCME, union position. And it's not meant to, uh, it's not meant to take people from other existing positions. So it needs to be at the start of the, you know, of the, of the salary scale. But it could lead to, I think, a, a really, uh, positive career at the city and there's opportunity for growth.
Well, the, okay, well, who be paying, who pays for the uniform that they will, are going to be wearing? And is that going to be in part of the Harrisburg Police, uh, budget?
Yes, uniforms are in the budget and we can talk more to that, uh, you know, uh, when you speak to the police. They, uh, they have a lot of detail on how they budget for that.
Okay, and are you going to be, uh, purchasing more cars? Because I see that you're going to allow them to be driving in, uh, police, a city of Harrisburg-owned cars.
So there, uh, I would defer that one to police as well. There's a, a plan for a number of different, uh, uh, you know, new vehicles as well as, uh, transitioning older vehicles. So ask them about their fleet plan.
Well, I will come back with you with, uh, when I, once I get in touch with some of the, the community organizations in the uptown and south side area.
Yeah, I'm hoping they can look at what we've done here without South Allison Hill and work together with a plan that is reflective of their needs and come to the city and say, city, we'd like you to, we'd like you to fund this plan and, uh, and we will.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Allot.
Thank you. Just by show of hands, uh, on the call, does anyone have a specific question for the mayor and anything he discussed prior to turning it over to, um, to Dan Connolly and then moving over to public safety? All right, Seaman, Dan, thanks so much for joining us. I, I, I kind of want to pick up where we left off last week during our hearing. We were discussing kind of the AMBA deal when I asked you a little bit about, um, the revenue projections and, um, and therefore obviously our, our focus on expenditures and the significant drawdown of the general fund balance that we're proposing for the share. Can you just recap that for me? Because I know we have a different audience tonight perhaps than we had last week. But talk me through, I know the mayor walked us through some of the, um, how they arrived at some of the numbers, some of the data that they used to do that. But if you could just offer your perspective as well, um, on terms of achieving the revenues, things you wanted to add, things you just want to make sure council is aware of as we're looking at this, uh, in a, from a big picture standpoint.
Sure. From a big picture standpoint, we are, you know, budgeting based on a modest recovery. Not as bad a, a year as two thousand twenty when, you know, the economy literally shut down for weeks, but clearly not a return to pre-COVID levels in two thousand nineteen when revenues were, you know, fairly strong and robust. The mayor walked through some bullet points about how we, uh, projected earned income tax revenue, which is a key, uh, revenue source. A, a projection model that we developed in the middle of COVID, um, that frankly, I, I hadn't used before, but I thought was helpful because, um, of the sudden impact of the COVID, uh, effects and the effects on revenue was kind of a month-by-month look at EIT collections and connecting that with what, uh, employment levels were and economic activity was in a municipality. So we took that approach, uh, for earned income tax, uh, revenues for two thousand and twenty, assuming a modest, but, uh, not, not very strong, uh, recovery in two thousand twenty-one. And, uh, projected out about twelve point five million dollars, which is about two hundred thousand dollars or so less than what the city projects. It will finish two thousand and twenty on. So we, we thought that was a reasonable projection. For other revenue sources, uh, we, we projected a little bit of a rebound, but clearly not up to two thousand nineteen levels. Revenue source that is hurt the most is, uh, the ground lease and priority payments associated with parking. That is over a three million dollar hit for, um, uh, the budget compared to, uh, previous years because those revenues simply won't materialize. Uh, another key revenue source that I think council and then your audience this evening should be aware of is business privilege tax revenue. Those receipts, um, are based on, uh, when, when folks file next year and they pay next year, it'll be based on two thousand twenty activity. So that is a total lag in terms of connecting the receipt of the payment where, you know, uh, with, uh, what economic activity it's based off of. So we, we projected almost a twenty percent reduction in that revenue source compared to this year. Overall, there's a modest, uh, increase in, in revenues compared to what we're projecting, uh, for two thousand nineteen. As, as the mayor. I'm sorry, what?
Are you referencing twenty twenty into twenty nineteen?
Twenty twenty, excuse me, excuse me, yes, thank you, thank you for correcting. Uh, a, a modest increase in, in revenues overall in two thousand twenty-one versus two thousand twenty. We don't live under a rock. Nobody's got a perfect crystal ball. Uh, we hope the recovery does, uh, you know, continue that the pen, uh, the, um, uh, vaccine is effective and is rolled out and available to as many people as possible, so the economy can open up as much as possible. We are aware of the risks though. So with every budget, there are, you know, contingencies in mind. And, and the first thing that I, I think the, the finance department is going to be doing to, uh, to guard against some of these risks is continue its regular monitoring of the revenue situation. Uh, the city has a strong history of managing its budgets. Almost always comes out ahead. That's one of the reasons why, you know, you're approaching, you know, twenty-six million dollars in available fund balance at the end of this year, which is remarkably high.
Is that a long history, Dan?
Well, not, not, not. Since I've been, the, and I'm, I'm, by the way, I'm not trying to take credit for that.
Oh, no, I know. I just, uh, we, we can't forget that in the all-too-recent history, that wasn't always the case, so.
Yes, and, and I'm reminded of that when I talk to, uh, some folks in the union world too, so. But, but anyways, in recent history, uh, there, there is a, um, uh, a, a track record of being able to, uh, adjust when things are not going quite as planned and, and maintaining strong, uh, fund balance. So there, there are things in the budget that do, do offer flexibility, um, in case revenues do not materialize as, um, budgeted currently.
Yeah, and that was one of the things, I mean, just as I started off tonight's conversation in general, is I want to make sure that we have enough of a contingency in place where we don't significantly start hitting that general fund as we get into the early part of two thousand twenty-one. And we find ourselves in an emergency declaration or the pandemic extends beyond, the vaccine wasn't as effective. Like, I do not want to put the city in that precarious of a position. So for me, the biggest thing that I want to make sure that we do is that we don't, that we have a plan, kind of a plan within a plan essentially, to make sure that we've reacted appropriately, um, and that, uh, that we're doing it. So that's the, the, the big overarching thing that I'm, I'm going to keep, you know, putting out there is, is just that, that we, that we enter into a little bit of a, um, a wait-and-see model. Not that we can't appropriate and do it, but that we look and make sure that we're moving into that place. Because I, you're right, from the projections, it's true that unless there's any significant economic impact where unemployment jumps up significantly, that will not have a, a huge impact on EIT and our LST. But if there is that, you know, economic downturn and an unemployment rate that jumps up, we could have that impact. But the other, the smaller impact, but also very significant to our revenues, could be if we get ourselves into some type of emergency declaration or shutdown, where that will significantly impact some of the other revenue sources that come in. And that could really have a detrimental impact on our operating expenses, particularly if we draw down too much. And so that's my overarching concern that I, that I keep coming back to, to make sure that we are, um, cognizant of that as we go into two thousand twenty-one.
May, may I just chime in?
Yes, absolutely.
But, but in, in to your earlier point about, you know, monitoring the timing of the cash flows with respect to capital improvements, the mayor mentioned the, the debt restructuring plan. And the earliest that that is going to happen after going through, you know, uh, court approvals, council approvals and so forth, is definitely in the second quarter and, and probably late in the second quarter. So, um, that will give us a lot of lead time to, uh, uh, at least reassess the situation. And that right now, the budget calls for two million dollars for, to pay down the forbearance liability. But the draft, uh, term sheet that is, you know, for council's consideration, um, does not require a minimum of any kind towards that forbearance liability when we execute the agreement. We have another year to, um, pay towards the forbearance liability and get a benefit. It's going to be a slightly less benefit, the more you put up upfront, the, the, the higher the benefit, but there still is a benefit for a full year.
Well, and I'm, I mean, I am completely in favor of doing what we can from the debt service repayment and, and doing it like I, I, you will not hear me object to that. I just want to be cautiously optimistic in terms of being able to expend that at, at the appropriate time. So I'm glad to know in some respects that the earliest that that would be, would be kind of middle to the end of the second quarter, um, in terms of looking at that. Because I do, I, my hope, I mean, my hope is we get into two thousand twenty-one and we have a much better optimistic view of where things are from a, um, a pandemic standpoint. But, you know, not being there right now, it, it just causes me a little bit of that hesitancy, hesitancy for it, so.
No, but I mean, I, you're, you're, you know, those are good questions to ask and then nobody knows exactly what's going to happen. And you have to have guardrails up there.
Absolutely. I know, um, I want to move to some questions for some of my colleagues. I know that I think the council president had a specific question and I will go down the, the line. And for my colleagues specifically right now, really looking at some of the analysis pertaining to, um, the revenue projections and things like this. Really good time to ask Dan these questions right now. But I do want to go down the line, uh, council president, let me start with you, because I know you and I were just talking a, a bit about a specific question that you wanted to kind of, uh, put out there. And you have to unmute yourself.
Hi, Dan, how are you?
Hi, Councilwoman, how are you? Council President.
Well, before I ask you that question, I just wanted to follow up what you said about, uh, the forbearance liability, uh, that we have another year to pay. What happens if we have another emergency during this quarter and it falls into the next quarter? How will that affect us?
From, from the term sheet point of view?
Right, right.
Well, if you have, you know, you, you simply do not have the resources or, or, or the concern rises to the level that you don't want to make the outlay towards, um, the forbearance liability, um, later and then towards the middle of this year, towards the end of the second quarter. You don't have to make that two million dollar payment. And you can, uh, replant. As the mayor, uh, mentioned, ideally, we, we will tee up a refinancing, um, that we can, uh, uh, redo the whole thing and take advantage of the benefit of repaying up to four million dollars towards that liability.
Okay, thank you. And I was going to ask you a question about the Senator Stadium, uh, where you have the, the feeings, uh, and you added it, it's coming out of the general fund. Is that part of the deal with AMBAK? The monies that. Yes.
Yes, yes. The, the AMBAK ensures the, the stadium debt. So they have exposure, right, right, right. So, so that's why they are.
You know that, okay.
So, you know, what, you know, in exchange for reducing their exposure there, they are going to, um, reduce the forbearance liability by almost two million dollars.
Okay, I understand that. All right. That's all the questions I have right now, Mr. Allot.
Thank you. I'm going to jump down to the end of our traditional dance and start with council member Daniels. Um, any specific questions for Dan Connolly at this point in time?
Um, not right now. I think he answered most of them.
All right, thank you. Uh, council member Majors.
No questions for Dan at this time. I think the last meeting and his, uh, some of his explanations here were sufficient for me, um, right now. Thank you.
Thanks. Jumping over to council member Mattson.
No questions for me, kind of like we discussed last week. Volatility makes me a little nervous, but it sounds like we have a good plan in place. And God forbid, there's a natural disaster or something that happens, you know, seen that happen in other areas. But I know that that would involve FEMA and stuff like that, so we'd probably be okay. But, um, yeah, just, just a little nervous about the, um, volatility out there. But I guess, yeah, I think we have a sufficient plan down. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, moving over to council member, uh, Bowers.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
All right, council member Green.
No, I don't have any questions on this, thank you.
Dan, thanks for being here, uh, again, to provide your insight. I really appreciate that and the work you've done, particularly with, uh, uh, kind of being the go-between between us and AMBAK. I know that has been a long, uh, process in the making, but, um, I'm optimistic that we are really moving ourselves to much more sound financial footing in terms of doing some of the debt, debt resolution that we've been focusing on for some time. I, I, before we move on to Commissioner, I wanted to reiterate, um, because I know that council member Majors and, and Daniels joined us kind of, uh, right after I was making my opening comments on, um, the evening. If you haven't done so already, please check our email, because we did get responses back via Katie, uh, for the questions that we sent in advance. And so the mayor did touch on some of those in his opening presentation. Please review them. I wanted to make sure, number two, if, if there's a follow-up question that requires additional perhaps information. I wanted to make sure, number two, if there's a follow-up question that requires additional perhaps information and things like that, before we close tonight, get a chance to look at and speak up. Or if you had a specific follow-up question you wanted to have that you already know, we can do that at the end of this evening as well, based on those questions. We will also begin where we left off with that tomorrow evening. So if there is something that you want to review and have found a chance to look into it further, we'll begin with that tomorrow, just to make sure we kind of get those questions answered and make sure there's no kind of lingering questions that pertain to that. So just want to kind of reiterate that for kind of the flow of the evening. But I do want to move over and move into the portion of the meeting talking about public safety, I'm sorry, public safety specifically. So I do want to invite our members of the public safety team to kind of join us and I, I believe, whatever, there we go, sorry, I was looking for you on the screen. Commissioner Carter, do you just want to just take a quick intro? And I do want to jump right into questions, because I know that I have some and I'm sure that my colleagues have some as well, that we want to be able to get to as quickly as possible. So, but I will turn it over to Commissioner and we will take it from there. And I think, oh, there you are, you're unmuted.
Good evening, honorable City Council members, I have my public safety team with me, Deputy Chief Derek Moody, Captain Dennis Sorsen, Lieutenant Milo Hooper, Captain Terry Whelan, Blake Lynch and Lieutenant Todd Abramitis. We're here tonight to present the public safety budget information that you're seeking to answer questions. And keep in mind that we listen to the needs of the public and everything that we did this year with the above, with our budget, with the CSA's responders, it has to do with keeping the public safe, keeping them in mind, understanding what's been going on the past nine or 10 months, the pandemic and everything you know that we're currently faced with. So with that being said, and City Council President Wanda Williams, the mayor and I have talked about putting a substation, station uptown. We were looking at a couple areas, but the cost of those buildings were astronomical to us and we couldn't come up with the funding for it, but we have not stopped looking yet. With that being said, I guess we'll open up the floor for some questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. So one of the questions that I proposed to the administration and I want to have you spend some time speaking about as well, and it's this more kind of a top-down look at, you know, over the course of the last really nine months or so, we've spent a great deal of time looking at potential police reform initiatives. Obviously, we've had the passage of Bill Eight and there's some things that we've been, you know, working towards. But a common theme that we've heard from the community pertains to accountability. And, and this has been an ongoing discussion at so many levels of what does accountability mean? Who are we accountable to? How can we increase accountability between members of the community, members of law enforcement, law enforcement and leadership, law enforcement and the administration, law enforcement and even city council? There's, there's been so many aspects of the conversation and obviously, we're here to talk, talk about things from a budgetary standpoint. So I want to propose a question to you. How, based on the, the projections, the structure, the things that we're putting in place, from your perspective, how are we working towards increasing the level of accountability that exists within law enforcement? And, and every aspect of the communities that we serve, including council administration and the community at large? I just wanted to kind of get your perspective on that as we, you know, begin this conversation.
That's a very good question, I respect that question. Accountability can be measured a couple, couple ways. I, I am accountable to the citizens of the city and to the mayor. Leadership starts at the top. My captains and lieutenants and sergeants are accountable to me. We're all accountable to city council with anything that city council wants, any questions that city council has. We hide nothing here. We all feel sad about what happened to Mr. George Floyd, we feel sad about what happened to Mrs. Taylor, Breonna Taylor. We have no, no knock warrants here. We have, we have a use of force policy that hasn't been in place. We don't choke people, we don't use strangleholds or anything like that. So accountability has been happening as an agency for years. If you look at our twenty nineteen record in accountability that we had, we only had one or two police complaints filed on us the whole year. If you look at twenty nineteen, we had the lowest crime rate in the history of our city. You know, twenty twenty is totally different. Accountability can also be measured by, so far, since twenty fourteen until present, we started an initiative of taking guns off the streets from our juveniles, from people that shouldn't have guns. We've taken close to two thousand guns off the street from kids raging from ten up to in their mid twenties. And so far, we had opportunities to maybe get into a shootout, but the officers, they wouldn't do it because of the love they have for the city and the city residents here. And, you know, they held themselves to a higher standard. So, you know, we are accountable in every aspect of our police work and everything that we are doing here. And hopefully know what the new responders, co-responders in the CSA, it'll just make things better. That's why we're employing Mr. Blake Lynch, putting him in a higher capacity than he is. We're elevating Captain Hooper, putting him out there, because, you know, we are sincere, we are serious about building the bridge between the citizens and policing. So I hope that I touched on your question or answered most of.
No, you did, and I appreciate that, and my one follow-up to you, and, and again, this is more of, I recognize there's a built-in process of how we handle internal issues that might come up within law enforcement. And I think that there is a general feeling in society, and I don't want to localize it at this point, you know, because I don't necessarily want to kind of point out an issue that may or may not be there, but there's a, there is a general feeling within society that there are, there can be rogue officers, that there can be people who are not acting in the best interest of the, of the law that they have been chosen to uphold. How are we ensuring that we can either reduce or eliminate that instance occurring within our own rank and file with law enforcement? And do we have the right tools in place to be able to address any internal issues that can be? Because my, my fear and my thought process has often been that it just takes one bad officer to create an avalanche of issues for the entire law enforcement agency. And I want to make sure that we have the adequate tools in place to be able to address those types of things, whether it be from funding mechanisms, training mechanisms, the, the culture within the organization, to be able to address some of those things. Can you perhaps comment on your perspective on that? How you feel we can, you get there and if we are adequately focused on the right things from a budgetary standpoint to be able to meet those things?
I understand the concern that people have, community have, and what's taking place nationwide. We're purchasing I A Pro, well, we did get it, and that there, it counts, it sends up a red flag when an officer does something wrong. So like, you know, we keep track of everything that they do, use of force, complaints, be it, you know, verbally or physical, it keeps track of everything. We have terminated officers for doing things such as that. We have the interview process that we hold here, you know, we try to nail everything down to what to expect, how to expect it, you know, we, we dig into the officer's history, his past. It's a very strenuous process and we just don't hire people. You know, we put them through the wringer before we hire them. And now, the hiring process is perfect. And is it possible that bad apples will slip through? Yes, it is, but we have mechanisms to weed them out. My deputy chief wants to talk about that a little bit, if you may.
Evening, everyone. I just was going to touch on the boss did, he did pick up on a couple of points that the command group is sitting here to make sure that's being relayed properly. And one of the things that the boss talked about was the actual, the thoroughness of our backgrounds, the ability to do the more in-depth to weed out these potential problems that may exist or may not readily be available to us. There has been some change in, in through the accreditation process and some of the things that we do now that you're going to see start coming out in the law that talks about how we're able to better track these officers to make sure that we don't hire an officer that has an issue in another department that can kind of jump from department to department to department. So there are a lot of things in place now that you're going to see even changes for those departments that may not be up to speed. It's going to force them into this new era of the thoroughness of the background checks. The boss talked about the I A Pro, which is our internal affairs software. We successfully purchased the internal affair software as of, I think, what, two weeks ago? The command staff, basically, we went through, we had the training, they were all, the officer from Baltimore City came down to train us on the software. We're at the policy writing portion of it to introduce it into our, our new flow. So what we'll have is a more robust reporting, ability to track. And like all things, currently, we have one internal affairs detective who's tasked with monitoring all of the officers that may have issues or may not have issues in this city. We just gave him the tools to make that job easier. The next piece that you'll see in the budgeting talks about the Blue Team, which is another piece of software that really puts the power back into, at the frontline level, so that it doesn't get to our level before we recognize that there's a potential problem. A lot of this has to do with reporting and we use the power of modern technology to keep eyes on things that the human eye may miss, a pattern, this or that, and we set like the standard, for lack of better words. If we have, for instance, three reports of use of force plus one violation of this, the computer sends off the flag that says, uh-oh, take a look at this guy, he's met your criteria. And it doesn't rely on the person to, I was, I was too busy or I missed that or I didn't see that. So we're really taking the steps to really beef that side of it up. And I think what you'll see with, through the budgeting and the hiring process of asking for more, whether it be civilian personnel officers, that'll free those, these people up to do these abilities and to have that position to catch these things that we may, may miss. In addition to that, our body worn camera program, that's, although body worn cameras have been around for a while and you would think that our department has had them for a while, we have a successful program currently running. Our program works, we've identified different things that may not reach the level of criminal activity of officers, but obviously, some things that we may see through the course of the officer's body worn camera that, hey, this is an issue, explain this to us. What was the thinking here? So it works both ways, it puts more of, for, and I notice it's not the best choice or just puts that, those extra eyes out there. And when we have something, it's not a matter so much of, you know, well, I heard this, I, I heard about that. We can actually see things and we can take corrective steps really early on. Generally, what we do now when we're in a disciplinary phase with the officer, we play the camera back. We, we show and say, okay, walk us through this, explain to us how this occurred or this makes sense to you or you wrote a report that says that. It's been very, very effective and I think that you will see just a, a better policing model as a result of these things. Those are just a couple.
Thank you for that, and the final question I wanted to throw out there is really when it comes down to kind of ongoing training for law enforcement when it comes to cultural competency, mental health, mental health issues. I wish I know, it was probably about two years ago that Councilmember Green and I met with you and talked about training for more of an LGBTQ competency. I know we were kind of moving in that direction, but then we lost Shoshawn, who had moved on. So I want to reiterate, just from my perspective, are we and do we have enough? Because if there's ever a place that you will see me wanting to add more money is into training and development in issues pertaining to how we can make sure our officers are better trained to handle the issues that they might face while serving our community. So I don't know, there's something, you want to speak to Captain or go back to Commissioner on? I just wanted to kind of get a sense from like our training budget, our training focus for twenty twenty one and kind of where we're going to go with that.
Sure, training is, is huge, I mean, and we have a staff that supports, a command staff that supports training. The drawbacks to the increased training is that, and although it's no excuse, we have to take the officers off the street to actually train them. So you start to run into staffing issues and stuff like that, but we've come up with ways to get around that so that we're ensuring that we are getting the training out. The biggest training that we are pushing for, for our bureau-wide training, and you'll see it in the budget, it refers to the initials, you'll see CIT, with a crisis intervention training. We had the ability and pretty much most of the command staff went through the training first. We were initial ones to go through it to kind of gauge it, it wasn't just something that someone said, hey, this sounds good or this looks good. We actually went through the forty hour course and as soon as we went through the course, we were like, this is it, this is amazing. This course here, it touches on so many different aspects of, different things that we may deal with. And it's, it's a cross-spectrum of places that you can use it. So the CIT touches heavily on the mental health component of recognizing a person in crisis and that person having a mental health component that's attached to it. Something that maybe before it was just, hey, let's arrest them, let's get them out of here, let's get them out to the prison or whatever. So the tools that it's providing on this one just greatly, it opens up to officers' eyes to, hey, this is what I'm looking for. Is this, is this, is this an illegal act or is this someone in a mental health crisis? That we have other avenues that we can take to now deal with that. Jail isn't always the answer for a lot of these mental health problems. But now that we're teaching the officers like, hey, here's another method, here's another tool on your tool belt. Myself, when I went through the course, I was surprised that being an officer for going on twenty-eight years, I didn't know all of the services that are in the city that are available to us until I went through the course and guess what? We had a visit, visit the services day of our course, where we went to all of these facilities in the city. And I'm like, oh, my goodness, I've seen this building here for so long. I did not know this is everything that they're doing in here and I didn't realize that it's available to us. We do have some officers that are aware of it, some officers that when they have a down moment, they go up, they visit these, they're making connections with a lot of the people in our mental health side of it. But what I want to emphasize from that is that the tools that, in the, in the training that we're getting on that can be applied across a whole multitude of different problems. It's not just specific to mental health. A big piece of that is the de-escalation that is taught in that, in that crisis intervention training. So you take the de-escalation piece of that alone and you can apply that to a criminal act, a non-criminal act, a civil issue. There's so many different applications that were taken from it, that we push that we want to make that a mandatory training for all of our officers. The problem is the course itself, we can only get so many officers in at a time because it's open to the entire county. So what they've hosted and we, you see in the budget, we're asking for a city-only, city-only class that we can put as many Harrisburg police officers in and, and just concentrate on us. So that's one of the things that the county is looking for, is to offer us our own day or our own forty-week class that'll be made up as many Harrisburg police officers that we can get in there. And we will do that until we get through every officer's strength, so.
Is Blake in there with you or is he somewhere else on the screen?
He is on the other side of the computer. Do you need him?
Yeah, because I wanted to move into the question, then I'm going to, I am going to go open up to my colleagues in council. I love it, a little musical chair is happening.
Just a little bit.
Hey there, sir.
Hello, how are you?
Good, so I, I proposed a question to the mayor, but I wanted to talk with you, as you're developing the job descriptions for the roles that you're in place, that you want to put in place, have you given enough emphasis on background experience pertaining to things that might help from a de-escalation standpoint for mental health, TSS, social work background, like are those some of the things that you are, have incorporated into those descriptions with enough capacity to ensure that we can get that type of talent within the city to be able to work alongside our law enforcement?
Sure, good evening, members of council, thank you so much for having us on. When it comes to that, not necessarily, because those are crisis intervention specialists from the county through our partnership that the county provides, as well as shared amongst other police agencies throughout the county through that program. So we're one of the pilots. When it comes to community service aides, it's more of community relations and engagement. It's more of working to understand the neighbors on the blocks, going through individual districts, being assigned to specific areas of the city to build those relationships and double down. It has definitely been a great honor to be in this role, but it's very hard to be one person to feel so many things. My voicemail consistently stays full, because there's just not enough hours in the day to try and do so much, so many things. But I can tell you, the need is great, our residents deserve more and having more people on staff to help, especially those who will be assigned to specific districts, those relationships can be built with Joyce at Camp Curtain United, as well as with Tannen on the Hill. You know, there's so many people and advocates throughout the city for their specific neighborhoods that need to be heard and represented.
So you had referenced the partnership with the county, are you referencing like specifically the Dauphin County Mental Health Program and those services? Are you referencing like specifically the Daft, Daft County Mental Health Program and those services? And, and how does that, I mean, how's that work exactly for us? Like to make sure it benefits our community residents? How accessible when there is an issue, how quickly are we mobilizing that effort? I, because I've realized that many things that are happening like this, the, the point where it goes from a, a perhaps a minor issue to a major issue is, is really quick. So how quickly will we be able to mobilize these services to make sure that we are acting in the best interest of the situation as it occurs? And maybe may being able to best assess a mental health issue. And I'm thinking particularly of, um, and it didn't happen here, but the situation happened in Philadelphia, um, not that long ago, where, um, it was clearly a mental health issue that was occurring. The man unfortunately was shot and killed. And I'm looking at it like, how can we make sure that we are saving lives? Um, in terms of the efforts that we're taking, because I love the, I love the focus. I love all this in theory. I just want to make sure that we're able to mobilize these efforts to save lives and, and make sure that we're doing so in, in an efficient way.
And Councilman, those are two different positions. Uh, just want to clarify that. So the community service aides.
Right. I know. I'm going back to like how you move by for the mental health.
Okay. From my limited knowledge, I can let, uh, Captain Sorenson or Deputy Chief speak a little bit more on that. They ride with officers or assigned with officers, uh, and are available on certain shifts. Uh, they are then with those officers and able to go to those types of calls and assist. Um, but I can let them speak a little bit more specifically to the, uh, specific to that.
Okay, that'd be great. I will, we can circle back around and we, I'm sure we'll circle on to that. I want to make sure that I allow my colleagues to ask questions since I've now dominated um, the public safety conversation so far. But I do want to turn it over to our esteemed, uh, Public Safety Chair, Councilmember Green. I want to make sure I give you, um, prime footing right here to jump in and ask some questions that you have.
Thanks Ben. I appreciate it. You asked, um, some of the questions that I had to ask, but I would like a little more information on the community service aides. Uh, I guess to me, I was looking for more, uh, of a co-responder type job description. And, um, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding why we have so many CSAs and not as many co-responders. Cause I feel like they would benefit what we're looking for with the city, especially providing those services, um, and connecting on some of those mental health and domestic violence calls that I, I feel like, um, a lot of the residents in the city feel like we need more people to help co-respond, uh, where the, the community service aides are more like, sound more like police liaisons, community liaisons, than so someone who's helping to, to civilianize the police department. That's just the way I kind of see it.
And, and Councilwoman, you're actually correct. Uh, that's true. There are a lot of responsibilities from being here on this side as a civilian for the last almost three years that I've been able to witness and work alongside officers, especially with our community policing unit, to understand that there's a lot of administrative duties that can be performed by, uh, civilians. There's a lot of things that can be done in some areas of the police department, uh, that can assist officers and take those things off their plates so they can be more proactive, more community policing and more proactive policing and respond to more quality of life calls, uh, which of course, as you may know, that calls when you call 911, those calls are then gone to county out in Steelton and then county then dispatches our officers to priority calls. So when Mrs. Jones complains about noise complaint and no one came, it's because there were other issues going on and we did not have enough officers for that specific situation on a priority. Now with the liaisons, uh, there's a lot of quality of life issues that, you know, myself and our community policing team with Corporal Hammer have addressed and work alongside that can be done in a different manner. And when you talk about the co-responders, uh, that is a county pilot based program that is actually working very well with other agencies like Dairy Township and Swat Era and us as well. And so hopefully they will continue to fund that and do more so that we can receive them. It really helps out with our budget. Um, but I can tell you for sure that we are continuing to do all that we can so that we can make sure that they are incorporated in policing.
Understood. Uh, maybe this is a question more for the mayor, um, than since he created the budget. But, um, why, why is it only two community, two co-responders being budgeted in 12 CSAs? Why isn't it more balanced, maybe three co-responders and nine CSAs? Or something like that to balance the budget a little more, but give us more co-responders?
Well, uh, 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 let's see if we can get, uh, Captain Sorenson to talk, uh, Blake, if you could grab him for a minute. But I, I, I'll say that, uh, uh, right now we have one co-responder for the city. Uh, she does a terrific job and she is, uh, she is funded by the county. Um, we met with, uh, we met with the county, I met with her, I've, uh, talked to Captain Sorenson and we wanted to, um, uh, sort of triple that by adding two more co-responders so that we could always have coverage, always have somebody available for ride along. Um, in addition, uh, and those would be city employees that we would be, uh, that we would be paying for, but they would be, they would work, um, under the umbrella of this county, uh, co-responder program. So we're going from one to three. We're also providing, uh, uh, a vehicle and a variety of other, um, support things, which are, which are important to making sure that the program is successful. Um, uh, so that would give us greater capacity than, than, um, any other agency I know. But I really think, uh, Captain Sorenson is probably in a better position to talk about, um, uh, whether or not, uh, three co-responders are, are capable of doing what we, we hope they'll do.
Uh, good evening, City Council and Mr. Mayor. Uh, for the C I T, the county runs a program right now and they're doing a really good job with it. Right now for the county, there are only two co-responders for all of Daft County. We are the only law enforcement agency in the county to have a full-time, uh, member as part of our team. Uh, it really was a pilot program. When they hired the second person, they came to Harrisburg, they rode with our officers and our C I T co-responder, Liz Manning, and trained her so she could go out and support three other agencies, Swatara, Sesquahana and Dairy Township. Uh, with the mayor's plan and City Council's approval and by and with the police department, three is plenty for the city at this point. Uh, the reason why is the way we have it set up, obviously one person can't run the entire seven days a week, 24 hours a day coverage that we need to provide for the citizens. So the way we have it set up now is if there's a, an issue during a time when, uh, a C I T co-responder is not available, we're talking the main person, Liz Manning, that's why we have C I T trained officers. They go to this 40 hour course. I've been doing myself. It is one of the better courses I've been to in my career, uh, specifically in dealing with, uh, people with, uh, uh, having a mental crisis, uh, intellectual disabilities and like DC Moody had alluded to, uh, the actual de-escalation training. So with our first hire that we want to make with C I T, it will be an offshoot after they're trained. And that, after they're trained, it'll be an offshoot of Liz Manning's work hours. And when we get a chance to hire the third one, it'll provide even additional coverage. Uh, so, but the big thing is, and our biggest hurdle is the qualifications necessary to hire and train a C I T co-responder. We're not, uh, we don't have the, the institutional knowledge of if I interview, uh, Dennis Sorenson for the position and I just talk about things I've done, someone who is in that field of the social work, mental, uh, mental health, crisis intervention, they know what they're looking for and, uh, they know who they're going to hire. So that's the beauty of the program with, working with Daft County and C I T. Okay. Yeah. And the hard part for, uh, the reason why we have Liz Manning is she works the hours she does now. She overlaps from the day shift. She blends over into three to 11. And unfortunately for Liz, she's a great worker. She works out well here. She works good with the citizens, but she also knows all those different support agencies. Uh, when you talk about crisis, like a Denzia and getting people drug and alcohol referrals, mental health referrals, working with crisis down at the hospital, off hour, uh, three or two commitments if necessary. Working with families to get them the mental health treatment they need and the follow-ups. We, those core hours are nine to five for most of the Daft County services. Um, and then they have the on-call people after that. So we're kind of in the same boat is if we identify someone at two o'clock in the morning and Liz isn't working, we already have a system set up at the Harrisburg Police. Well, they will refer that person to Liz in the morning. She picks it up, hooks up with a C I T officer on day shift or three 11, whatever the time is, and goes out to the address and does follow-on services to find out what that person needs to get them the help that they, they deserve. I hope that answers some of the question.
Yes, it does. Um, just another question about the community service aides. Um, it says that they will be uniformed. What type of uniform will they be wearing? Uh, I feel like if it's too much of a police style uniform, it kind of defeats the entire purpose of civilianizing positions. Uh, because public facing, when, uh, someone sees an officer that identifies them by their uniform that they're wearing, um, not so much about like the train. They don't know anything else behind the scene. They just look at the uniform, they say, police officer. So if our community service aides are supposed to be more civilianized and they're wearing a police style uniform, how does this accomplish that mission?
The, the vision of them is really similar to what I've kind of worn all summer. What I normally wear outside of being dressed up is a Harrisburg Police, uh, polo. Um, or similar as well to what our codes officers wear as well. That clearly labels that they are Harrisburg codes officers. Nothing that militarizes them or anything like that specific to the police, but is something which is in a casual yet professional manner such as a, some type of, uh, identifier as being a part of the bureau.
All right. Um, I just think we need to make sure we're, we're careful about that because we don't want to defeat the purpose of civilianizing the positions if we, uh, present too much of a police look. Uh, I feel like that would kind of defeat position, uh, that, that goal there.
Yep.
Um, I had some other questions. Oh, a question about the RMS manager. Will they be responsible for producing the reports, like all reports for the police department?
So part of that RMS assignment, um, uh, Council Chair is to, uh, provide that ability for certain reports, uh, your office in, included. Uh, there are a ton of reports that request for different reports, uh, different things that deal with that. So our vision with that RMS manager is to encapsulate all of that. Uh, whether, um, the program is, is not working, uh, that we can't connect, uh, officers like, hey, my computer, I can't connect to the RMS system. I can't do my report. That manager will handle every aspect of that, whether it's the retrieval of reports, whether it's, um, the, the fixing of the system, it doesn't matter. If it touches the RMS, if it's an RMS issue or problem, that's where that person will step in and handle that. And that'll free up the, uh, the police officer that's assigned in there to handle the more technical issues of it. Uh, it may be a combination of the both, but what we're saying, that seeing is that by bringing that civilian person in to handle that issue of it, you can free up the officer to handle some of the other issues that are, uh, lacking on. Cause we're getting bogged down with things that we think, um, you, you know, firsthand, you'll ask for something and we'll say, hey, that's going to take us a while to find it. I gotta stop what I'm doing over here. Uh, I gotta work on that. I gotta stop everything else. We're hoping that that position then opens that up that, hey, I'm available. Um, I can work on it right now. I'll have it to you and within however, however long it may take. But a dedicated person to deal with any issue that touches the RMS.
All right. Um, how do we plan on making these reports public, uh, you know, publicly available? I feel like, um, a lot of what we've heard, especially over the past year is the call for transparency with our police department. And the easiest way to do that is to make things available online. Um, one of the questions that I asked during this time was to the IT department to see if they would be able to support putting documents on, uh, online in a, a timely fashion. They said that they have the ability to get them uploaded right away. So how do we plan on getting these reports, um, what, like just anything from a police department? That's already like a public document. How can we get those put out publicly as fast as possible? From police contracts to reports, even like arrest demographics. So that we will stop getting as many requests for, you know, that information because it's already publicly available. Um, I've checked other city websites and things like that, and these are things that are readily available. And I feel like we're really lacking on that and that's kind of, it gives the air of secrecy. Um, not that it's done purposely, but without it being available, people automatically assume that it's being hidden.
Understood. Um, so, excuse me, we've taken a couple of steps to address some of that transparency issues. Um, obviously with the last council approval, we hired an accreditation manager. That is a civilian who deals with our accreditation process. Um, one of the things that was introduced to us, uh, he brought to our attention and we purchased it and it's now available. Uh, we're very close to turning this service on is our ability to push out documents in a clean, professional manner. So let's talk about, uh, our general orders and stuff like that. If there's something that needs to go out and we bought a, a option in our, we have what's called Power D M S is our, our housing piece for that. Uh, we purchased that software, but we purchased an add-on that allows us with the click of a button to post a public face document. And where that becomes important is that, let's talk about the, the general orders, for example. If we tweak a order or if we make a change to an order, one of the biggest problems with the way our system is set up now is that we got to go down, we got to pull it out, any connection to it, any link that may have been associated to it. With this new software that we now have now is, um, because it's a standalone, it's not connected to a web search per se. Um, what it is, is that once we post it up and we put it up, number one, you're all, you're automatically going to have the most current version available. It's never going to show you something that's old or something that we've changed because of the ability with a click of a button, we can turn it, uh, turn that public face document onto the public side that they can see it. Um, if they were to, um, close it out and come back in, because it's not, it's not really connected and I'm not technical enough to really explain this to you. I'll do my best. Um, because it's not connected to like, um, a web search engine, it's never going to go back and grab an old document was there because it's not pulling it from the internet per se. It's pulling it from its own standalone. So every time you connect, it's going to go back for a fresh look and that public face document is there. When you start talking about, um, the ability to put, uh, different things out, we have the ability to post a lot of things. We just, um, have to be careful some things that we post. The last thing we want to do is post, um, something out that, uh, would, um, maybe cast a person in a bad light or whatever. So there's a lot of things that are referred to for right to know requesting. When people ask for things, um, you haven't asked it yet, but I'm feeling like you may ask about the next position, which includes a right to know request. And that all builds into that whole thing that we were talking about, about the, uh, ability in a timelier manner to address these things that people want to see or people want to need or, or people need. So we're hoping that, um, these positions coming in will address that and it will be almost an immediate, uh, um, piece that people will say, it was like, okay, that's, that's how it should be. We're aware that there's all kinds of other things going out there and our attempts to bring us up to the 21st century, uh, you will see through the budgeting, when you see some of the things that we're asking for. All of that is in mind with, we hear what the public is saying. We absolutely hear what you're saying and these are our attempts to make it, um, uh, to make these things come to life and, and to give the public what they should have and what they demand to have within reason.
All right. Um, one request that I, I will kind of have is that, um, maybe we create a list of documents that should be updated on a monthly basis, like such as, I mean, it could be basic demographics of arrest. It doesn't need to be like the specific arrest, but how many people were arrested for, you know, certain crimes over the past month? Um, how many animals were sent to the Humane Society over the past month? Um, how many officer complaints have we had over the past month? That can be updated on a monthly basis, uh, just to provide some of that transparency. So it doesn't have to be like dug down low level data. It can be high level data, um, and reports that we should be running anyway. Uh, just making it public. So I'm not really asking for you guys to run a lot more reports or create a lot more information and more work for you guys, but just to make it public, uh, in a timely fashion so that people have access to that data. It sounds like the, some of the systems and software that you guys have purchased will help with that. And, um, the IT department says they, they very well have the ability to keep things updated as long as you guys get them documents. So that's the thing that I would like to see, um, happen, uh, as soon as possible, especially during this time when, um, you know, we're all at home, uh, everything's virtual, um, and everyone's becoming more acquainted with technology.
Absolutely. We're trying to remove IT as much as possible from that equation because we know they are pulled in every other direction. So the more that we can do and not include IT and get people what they need, the better for everyone. We just, we're trying to eliminate as many hands in that as possible so that it's a much cleaner process. So we are also meeting with IT and making sure that the things that we're doing keeps all of that in need and doesn't give them an additional workload that they can't keep up with as well.
All right. I just have a few more questions before I pass it on to my colleagues. Um, another one, uh, so as we're looking to civilianize the police department in some aspects, how are we, um, and this might be more for the mayor, I'm not sure, but how are we really addressing the concerns of, um, uh, police interactions, like direct police interactions and civilianizing those or making them, um, more pleasant for, for those who have to interact with the police, including victims. Um, I've, I've talked to a lot of victims lately who feel like something happens to them. They're a victim of a crime or they've witnessed something and they feel like they're interrogated when the police come, you know? They want name, address, phone number. Uh, most recently they've really been asking for social security numbers, they say for reporting purposes. But you kind of feel like you're being put on the spot when, you know, officer asks you, can I get your name, address, social security number and date of birth, you don't feel like a victim, you feel like you're, you're being interrogated or you're being looked at as a suspect.
No, um, and I'll just touch on a little bit and then American pickup, uh, if he so chooses. Um, some of the things that you talk about, um, I, I agree. And from a person standing inside with the inside knowledge as opposed to outside, a lot of that is, um, directed by, uh, just the law itself. Um, I'm sure you heard of, um, just different ways that. just different ways that the police have to do things. So a lot of that when we're asking for identifiable uh things is it doesn't seem like it upfront, like why do they need to know that? But when we get to court, if we prosecute someone, a lot of that relies on, well, how did the officer identify that this is the correct person? And how do we know that you were dealing with it? And how do we know that you didn't? So a lot of the questions that we ask that may seem offensive to people, it's just about validation. Uh, sometimes people don't have identification, and it's simple. If you had a driver's license or some other form of thing that we could just look at and say, okay, I know that I talked to uh Jane Smith about this incident where she identified John Doe about that. We can't use um hearsay type evidence and and all types of uh other things. We have a a very strict way of how we introduce things into the court system. Um, a lot of that relies on our ability to show how, what steps we took to make sure that A, we did not get the wrong person, or we misidentified the wrong person. So there's a lot of redundancy and a lot of things that don't make sense to people. Social Security numbers, sometimes, believe it or not, uh, a person can rattle off a social security number. Well, although we don't have the ability to look at your social security number, we have the ability to run the number to tell if it's a valid social security number. So right away, if you give me a number, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, we're gonna be like, hey, uh, that came back, that's not a valid social security number. You are not being truthful about this. It just starts to work its way backwards. So there's a lot that goes into us proving a case beyond a reasonable doubt. And some of the things that you see are on the front end so that on the back end, when we get in a court and the defense attorney has the officer uh on the stand, we can answer these questions without making it look like, well, I don't know, I didn't do this, I didn't do that. And it then draws cast, it casts doubt on our entire investigation. And then a person who may have truly did something that deserves uh justice gets to walk free because we had a technical error with identification or proven that that was the actual person that we talked to or that the person saw what they said they saw. So there's a lot more to it, and it's unfortunate that it comes that way. But we don't, we don't do such a good job of explaining that sometimes to people. Well, this is the reason why I need that. And uh part of that whole CSA piece of that is again a part that maybe the education piece to say, well, let me explain to you how that process works. Someone that can spend time or or a part of the uh uh agency or a part of the city that can answer these frequently asked questions and has the time to go out and explain, well, let me explain the process to you. I'm not saying that's 100% what they would do, but here's a great example of uh a outside entity that's not a police officer that can spend time on that to bring the public education up and allow that officer to go concentrate on something that may be more pressing uh or more of a priority that they need their services for. And if the mayor wants to jump in from that, um, it's open for him.
I'll just jump in and uh and DC, you can uh you can elaborate on this, but uh one of the things that I thought was important from a uh customer service standpoint for the police officers was the funding of cell phones, and that that is in the budget, uh, a cellphone for every police officer. Um, uh, you can ask why, you know, that wasn't there sooner, but uh historically, it was a funding issue for the police department. I want every officer to be reachable, uh, and I want them all to have a business card, which clearly has their name and their contact information. Can you talk a little bit about that, uh, Deputy Chief?
Sure. Um, as uh the mayor had explained, that is something that we uh we met and we talked about through our labor management with uh with the uh police department itself, the command side, the the union side of that. And the goal in that is exactly as the mayor stated, is the availability of the uh of the public to reach an officer. Currently, the way our process works now is that you call an officer out. Um, Officer X shows up, he takes your information. Maybe you don't have all of it. Maybe it's something that uh you need to get another piece of something or check something out. Once that officer leaves, it's extremely difficult to ensure that you will get that same officer back for what you may need to do. So a lot of times, the officer may go start, go start a report. That person may call in and say, hey, I got the information that the officer was looking for, or I thought of another thing. Um, can I speak to Officer whoever? Um, we really don't have that ability to speak to that officer particularly. So with what we're proposing in the budget now is through the cellphone and every officer having a cellphone, you have a dedicated phone number. We took it another step. Business cards. Every officer will carry a business card, and then you don't have to get, well, who was the officer that I dealt with? You'd be surprised the amount of people that um forget some of the officer's names. Some of our our names are are a little dependent on the 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 call that you may be on. It may have been stressful. You may not have jotted it down correctly. So just I the ability to identify that officer and get follow-up information or find out what's the status of your investigation. We're now putting that power back into uh the civilian's hand or the citizen's hand to just say, I know I dealt with John Smith, uh, Officer John Smith, here's his phone number. Let me call him directly and leave a message instead of calling Stilton to the communication center. Leave a message when the officer works again. Um, I don't know what his days off are. I don't know that he's on vacation. It just takes another step out and puts us closer to that ability to deal with those issues. I think it's a great idea. Again, the mayor said it. Um, funding was a big reason as to why you'd be surprised how much the technology has uh the cost have uh shrunk to make it something that's more of a uh an ability that we can sustain it, not just get it, but sustain it for a long period of time and actually do the job that uh that we needed to do.
All right. Thank you. I just have one more question. Um, and this might be more appropriate for the mayor, but uh looking at the overall police budget, there's a an increase in the policing budget, and why is there an increase in the policing budget when historically we haven't been able to fill our police complement? So why don't we just reallocate the funds instead of increasing it?
So uh we are, that's a good question, and uh we have a lot of open positions, as you know. We uh from a budgeting standpoint, we are budgeting for those positions to be filled, even though we know full well we're not going to be able to fill all those positions. Um, and uh just because that's a a really proper, proper budgeting, and you know, it is our desire to fill the positions, although realistically, um, are we going to be able to hire 20 officers next year to fill the 20 open positions? No. So um, so we know there's going to be a savings there that's not directly reflected in the budget, but um is essentially there to help us pay for uh for this um increase in in terms of civilian staff. And uh and I think it it also represents perhaps a longer, a longer term shift. Um, and and the other thing to keep in mind as well is that uh we're not going to have all these civilian positions uh funded in in uh it uh in the first quarter necessarily. Um, it's going to take, uh, it's going to take a while to find the right people. I know Blake and his team are very interested in getting the right people for the community service aides. I know we're going to be hiring with the county to get the right qualified people for the uh co-responders. I know that the, you know, the police for the other management positions are going to, are, you know, it's not going to be instantaneous that all that money is going to be spent. So um, while it looks like we're spending a a lot of money, there is a savings there in terms of open positions. And when you net it out at the end of the year, I believe we are going to, um, you know, we're we're not going to have to draw down on the fund balance. But when you, when you budget it, um, uh, we're we're sort of putting it all out there as sort of a worst case scenario. The budget does assume that all the positions are filled, you know, 100% of the time.
All right. Um, like I said, that was my last question, just a comment. Um, you know, a true shift in policing would include a reallocation of personnel positions rather than budgeting for everything with the idea of we're not going to fill it, so it's going to balance out anyway. And on another note, I I still would like to see more of an increase in the co-responder positions rather than the CSA positions. And that's just my personal standpoint on on the way I feel that the resources will be best used for the city. Uh, with that, I'll pass it on to some of my colleagues for their questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. I'm going to move over to Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you very much. So I tried to organize my questions as we were talking. That way I'd be orderly and the gentleman wouldn't have to move around too much. So I'll begin with my questions regarding the co-responders. Um, I wanted to know what the qualifications were for the co-responders. I know, I think in some of our information, it was noted that the co-responder job description would mirror that of Dauphin County. I just wanted to confirm that. And um, will the co-responders look like those community members that they will be responding to? Um, as you know, the city of Harrisburg does not look like Dairy Township and some of the other communities that you mentioned. Uh, what efforts are being made to ensure the applicant pool for these critical roles is diverse?
And I'll I'll let uh Captain Sorenson uh touch on that. Let me, let me just say, that's one of the reasons I it is going to be harder to fill those positions with qualified individuals than um, and I I think we have greater flexibility and ability to hire more uh community service aides more quickly. One of the reasons why um you don't see as much growth there. Also, the number that was chosen three um was chosen after consulting with the with our current co-coresponder, Liz Manning, and the county in terms of and and the department in terms of uh trying to um get their understanding of what the capacity deficit was so that we could, we could fill it. It was that, it was their recommendation that that would be um enough. But uh the uh in terms of the qualifications for the co-responders, we are going to hire them in conjunction with the county. It'll be a joint uh a joint interview team. And uh Captain Sorenson, can you speak specifically to to the qualifications?
Um, I'd like to say yes, but the answer right now is no. Uh, and this is why we just I believe it was Friday of last week, we had just received the Dauphin County uh co-responder um job descriptions. And we have not changed it to craft it to make it fit the city's needs at this time. Uh, I know that we've sent them over to uh, we're going to send them over to human resources to hire the co-responders, but we just have not taken that step yet with all the other things we're trying to get done at the same time. Uh, I know DC Moody wrote a lot of uh job descriptions, as you can see, he had provided to City Council. And I believe we sent over the Dauphin County co-responder job qualifications, uh, but we haven't tailored that. We are right now pretty dependent on the county uh to come up with those qualifications. Like I said before, we don't have that technical expertise uh to um to do to to vet those qualifications that somebody would have. Uh, DC Moody just gave me the uh, yeah, this one right here. Yep, okay. So basically, I mean, here's the qualifications for the Dauphin County um position. It's a bachelor's degree, degree with major coursework in sociology, social work, psychology, criminal justice, uh gerontology, anthropology, political science, history, theology, nursing, counseling, or education. It's basically a a degree. Uh, combination of two to four years of field experience working directly with individuals served by the human service field and or criminal justice systems preferred. Uh, you have to pass a criminal background check and receive a applicable child abuse clearances prior to employment. And then everything else to be able to to get onto a police system with the Sages and Clean qualifications uh as part of that criteria. Uh, you have to be uh first aid CPR and AED qualified. And then like the last part is just demonstrate the ability to work effectively as part of an interdisciplinary team, including law enforcement and mental health professionals. So anyway, we haven't even started the hiring process. We're just at the early stages of it. The mayor said it pretty specifically is, when do we want to hire them? As soon as we possibly can. What's that going to take? It's going to take us, as you can see, all the different jobs we're trying to hire people for are going to take time and effort uh of a lot of people at the police department. Uh, so how are we going to hire them? Uh, would we like to hire city residents to do this? Absolutely. But we didn't, we haven't even announced a position to see who would be interested in doing that job for that salary range.
Okay. Well, I understand. I I just want to be clear that when you're tailoring um the qualifications or or recrafting the job description to make sure um that we, one, have a diverse applicant pool, and hopefully those diverse applicants will be successful in uh gaining the positions as co-responders. Um, and two, that we do consider residents of the city that I'm quite sure are qualified um to fill these roles as well. My next question-
Let me just say, uh, uh, because I agree completely with what you're saying. This is one of the reasons that uh we wanted them to be city employees and to be hired uh by the city through our hiring process so that we can have uh control over that and make sure that um we're we're looking for the type of uh additional qualifications that you are. We weren't simply handing this over to the county, although the county piloted the program and they are our partners and we are working with them. Um, uh, we wanted these to be on our payroll and to be city employees uh specifically so that we can make sure that they were appropriate for serving, you know, a city population. And I just want to say that 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 has gone into the calculus, um, even though we haven't hired anybody yet.
No, I understand, and thank you for clarifying. My next questions are relative to the community service aides.
Councilwoman Bowers, how are you?
Good evening. I'm well, thank you. I was curious to know, uh, similar to the co-responders, if there is an outreach or recruitment plan uh for the community service aides positions to ensure that these aides are reflective of the community that they're aiding as well. Also, will there be a targeted effort made to recruit within the city?
Absolutely. I can tell you that I've already had two dozen people reach out to me through Facebook, Instagram, text message, one-stop me in a furniture store, uh, already expressing interest. Um, members of council have told me, people have reached out to them. Uh, and a lot of our community members who are already either volunteering with our food service program that we've been doing to help feed uh our residents or with the school district have already expressed interest. So we plan to do a full, robust, traditional public relations blitz as well as uh social media blitz through Facebook and through community partners and uh neighborhood groups uh with nonprofit organizations who are really working with our youth as well as working with our seniors. Um, people who know the geography of the city, um, who are from the districts, that is absolutely an emphasis. Now, however, I would counter it to say there are a lot of qualified people who are advocates of the city that do not live in the city limits, but are pro-city and have done great things or are already community leaders running these nonprofit organizations themselves. So there's many people who have the best interest of the city at heart, but absolutely people who know the geography, who are from uh the city or from the area, uh, who have investments in the area, um, whether it's their own children or only family members. Absolutely.
Thank you, and I'm glad to hear that there's already some interest. So that's great.
Lots of interest.
In the job description uh for the community service aides, the it notes that the individuals will be responsible for identifying community problems and issues as well as report violations of city codes and regulations. Um, how will these aides interact with codes?
Absolutely. Um, we're all under one umbrella for the Bureau of Police, which is underneath the Commissioner as well. So it's just through consistent communication. Uh, I work with codes officers all the time um with lighted properties in and around the city, trying to assist uh handle those things. So several codes officers, I've done some investigations with through our, with our community policing officers as well. So codes can only go but so far, and then officers come in as well. So it's through forming those relationships with our code officers, getting to know them, getting to know the Bureau there so that we can address the uh issues that residents have.
Okay. Um, I believe that's all for you, but I again, as I mentioned with the co-responders, I would love to see um a diverse applicant pool and successful uh diverse community service aides. And again, echoing uh that our residents would have an opportunity um to serve in these roles.
Absolutely. Everyone wants to live in a place where they're, you know, feel safe, valued, and respected, and also reflected uh where they live.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
My last questions uh are sort of miscellaneous. I was just curious to know how many officers will be retiring at the end of this uh fiscal year? And I wanted to know if any of those uh officers retiring are um currently members of the command staff.
Uh, I could answer that, ma'am. Uh, yes, uh, I myself uh intend to retire here uh February 1st uh being my last day. Uh, I'm aware of, and that's something that we have been working towards to try and get a a good handle on as to who's leaving and when. Um, there are a lot of factors that uh that build into that time. Uh, we have a large portion of our force that is retirement uh eligible. We're coming up on retirement. Um, today, uh, I know of at least one supervisor that will be retiring. All of these retirements will happen in into uh 2021 in uh Q1 of 2021. Uh, so at least one supervisor, uh, potentially, uh, another one. Uh, no commitment, but we usually go by what's written down on paper. So word of- So word of mouth is one thing. When you commit to paper, that's a little more serious. When you take those steps to process out and have your HR interview before you process out. That comes into the commissioner's office as a request to, to speak with HR for the purpose of retirement planning. And then from there, we go through there. So at this point, I know of, including myself, three. I'm being the only command staff member that I speak for as retiring. One being a supervisor and another one being a patrol officer. But that kind of works a couple of different ways. There could be officers that we have here that are new or testing to go to other departments. Generally, we find that out about two weeks before they leave. So that's the dilemma that we deal with. But from a planning perspective, we've been very clear with the staff of just trying to plan out properly. If we know you're leaving and we notice there are a few things we need to do retirement-wise and get in place, but it helps us plan for staffing issues down the line that we can address.
Sure. I'm sad to learn that you will be retiring. I heard it, but I, it's definitely put a date on it. So it's been a pleasure working with you and thank you very much for all of your service to the city. My last question was just one that I included in the questions that were previously submitted, but I did want to note it for the public. How many officers have left in the last year without at least five years of service?
Give me one second, ma'am, to write my notes. I'm sorry, I'm spread out all over behind.
No, no, that's okay. That's okay.
According to our notes, we have about eight officers that left in 2020. Obviously, we're not at the end of the year yet, but as of record, we have eight. Of that eight, only one had five or, five or more years of service.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowers. We move over to Councilmember Mattson.
Yeah, I have just a couple of practical questions. And a large of these questions are just like real life scenarios that I either experienced or residents had called to talk to me about and asked help with. So one example with the, the new reforms or systems put in place. Over the summer, we had a series of complaints over fireworks. And how would that work out or play out with these new personnel? If we had a situation where fireworks are going off late in the night, who then responds to that call or what does that process look like?
Yes, sir. So the question about fireworks, and I will just, if I could just start off with, the fireworks were in every city, everywhere, every place that you can think of. We were, it was not just specific to the city of Harrisburg, even though it may have seen like it, seemed like it. They were everywhere. Part of that response to the fireworks, again, goes to just a basic call for service. Whether it be quality of life, when, when you're dealing with the fireworks calls and, and assorted issues like that. Our belief is that by the additional personnel, that again frees us up to deal with these types of calls. But from a quali- quality of life issue, I feel like the CSA is being that, that group or that entity that could give that to the special attention that it may need. It may be something as simple as, hey, this is a specific time that this is going on and this is happening. We haven't really tailored out all of what that means, but we would definitely like to have more intel that comes in with it. You'll see in the, in the budget, we ask for a crime analyst. Some of these things would go into our ability to plan and deal with the more long-term problematic issues. Sometimes just an officer stopping by, just doing, hey, you need to leave, you need to, you need to stop this or whatever, doesn't always address the issue because they may stop for that moment, but then as soon as we're gone, they're right back at it. So solution wise, we would love to be able to have the, the, and I, and I want to be careful how I say this, the time to dedicate solely to that particular issue. The reality of it is, is that sometimes we have so many things going on at the same time that a fireworks call may get pushed down lower in the priority when you're, when you're battling, let's just say, for example, firearms call versus active shooting. The fireworks kind of gets pushed down a little bit and that's the problem that we deal with. Some of the priority calls that come in sometimes kind of dictate the response. There's a lot of things that we can do to address that. But fireworks being one, the dirt bikes, I'm sure is coming next in the ATVs. Those are the types of issues that we really need some quality time to really search, research a, a good solution. Again, when I visit my family in Philadelphia, I go down there and it's the same exact thing. So I, I know it happens everywhere. And the agencies, we have, we've opened up our lines of communication for some of these quality of life issues that aren't just happening in the city. They're happening in the townships as well. I can say as a member of the Dauphin County Chiefs of Police Association, this is a topic that we discussed at the countywide level, not just the citywide level. So there are solutions being worked on that just in, not just the city, but how do we address this for the entire county? Obviously, our concern is the city, but we're willing to sit down with a bunch of other entities on the law enforcement side to say, how are you dealing with this? What are the issues that you are seeing? Are these the same people traveling back and forth? You know, there's a whole lot of things that go into it. And I would hate to say that they're just city residents doing this because people come into the city and do all kinds of stuff that don't belong in the city. And when I say don't belong, they're not from the city. They don't live here, they don't do business here. They just come in to do goofy stuff sometimes. So I hope I answered that question. I kind of jumped around a little bit, but I hope I answered that.
Nah, nah, I appreciate that. I guess just for clarification purposes, would a CSA come on the scene for a fireworks call and tell whoever's doing it, knock it off, or this isn't the appropriate place? Or would that be an officer still?
Well, I mean, we're always want to deal with these types of issues at the, the least amount of force involved in it. So there, there's things that you have to factor in. What does it look like? Is it just a bunch of kids doing it or something like that? Or is this something that may be of more of a danger to the CSA? We don't want to put, they're not armed, they're not police officers. So we don't want to put them in a position to fail or get hurt. So obviously, that's going to be a judgment call as to what level of involvement they're going to go into. They may be used more as just the follow-up piece to that. The officer may come out and take an initial report. We may be able to have a CSA come out and do follow-up work, maybe knock one more doors, maybe spend a little bit more time to get us that valuable intel. Or maybe it's something that's fixed at the CSA level. We won't know until we try it, but we're willing to try a bunch of different looks to, to handle the issue. So.
Great. And I appreciate you mentioning the bikes. That was indeed, one of the next questions was, I get a lot of calls and I see it myself and was just curious what the response would be there. Okay, another one is there's an establishment or a house holding, making loud noise or having a party. What would be the response then with, given this new system? Would that be a CSA responding to that? Would that be just a regular officer?
Hey, Dennis Sorensen, more than likely, it would be generated a call for service. So more than likely, a police officer would initially go out there. Continued violations, it, it's a city ordinance which is enforceable by a non-traffic citation. That's the most we're probably going to give somebody out of that unless a situation has caused it. So I think initially it would be a patrol response. But for habitual ones, I mean, what we're trying to do is get someone to turn the music down. That's just be a good citizen and respect your neighbors. And that's what we're trying, and maybe that is a role. And you have to realize that we have a job description for these CSAs, but we need to define that role. We know what we wanted to do in the very beginning, but as we go out there, we said, hey, we want you to go out and do the follow-up for fireworks investigations, just to go find out who's doing it and what's going on. Maybe we find out later that didn't work and we may try the same with the noise ordinance violations, but we'll have to see what that looks like. But more than likely, for like a noise ordinance violation, there'll be a patrol officer who comes out to respond to that call for service.
Okay. Thank you. All right. My next one is a person is visibly intoxicated or non-responsive and needs medical attention. With that, and someone calls 911, who would respond to that? Would the, would the mental health folks, are they going to be responding to something like that? Are they going to be trained in Narcan? Or would the CSAs respond to something like that?
Well, I guess it would depend on who is the closest. The county does our, our dispatching for our uniform patrol officers. So if a citizen calls in and says there is a drunk individual in front of the, a business, that district car would, or whoever's available would be assigned to go investigate that. If the C, CSA happens to be around the corner and they hear that on the radio, they can go over and check and be like, okay, I see someone over there, over there, they're, they're drunk, they have overdosed. We will have to train those CSAs on a variety of tasks, skills they will need to do to go out there and just perform basic, because that's what the public will expect them to do. If someone needs first aid or CPR, they're going to look at them to do something because they're a governmental agent. They really are. When you, you're still a city employee, they're part of the local government. Narcan, I don't know. I don't remember reading that in the job description, but that is something we can look at. It's, it's training we could easily provide and it would give another chance to save a human life. And why wouldn't we do that? I guess it all depends, but more than likely it'd be a patrol officer unless the CSA is close.
Yeah. The reason I mention that is that I had a real life experience where I was at, working out at my gym and somebody was non-responsive and somebody knocked on the gym door and said, hey, there's a person that's non-responsive and they called, we called 911 and a fire truck came and responded. And in that instance, I'm kind of thinking, you know, do we really need the fire department or something? They did a good job with a quick response, but maybe a more effective use of resources would be through the CSA folks or some other emergency responder.
It all depends on who's available, the fastest and the most trained. Sometimes just because a call comes in for an unresponsive individual, you don't know what kind of problem they're having. It could be medical, it could be mental, it could be physical, it could be intoxicants of any kind. So sometimes we don't know until we get there. So they try to send trained people. When someone calls 911 for a, what they believe to be a medical issue, the police are normally dispatched or at least informed and EMS is always dispatched. It depends who gets there first sometimes, too.
Yep. This is the last one I have. Person calls and says they have a loved one who has a history of mental problems. They are threatening them or they've even assaulted them, but they don't want to, to press, they don't want to press charges. They simply just want their loved one to get care. What, what happens in that scenario?
Well, that call will come into the county. It would be, the county is also aware of our CIT response. They know what officers have certain skill sets and they're identified as like Sorensen CIT trained. So they already know that when they're dispatching. That CIT, if they're on that shift, that's the call they go on. That's the one they're, that's what they're there for and they want to go there. So when that call comes in, it'll go to a, a co-responder with an officer, if they're available. If not, the next option is a CIT trained officer. And if that's not available, then it'll be two patrol officers going out to handle the situation as best as they can. And, and what they'll do is they may get there, find out what's going on, call Liz or our future city co-responders and do one of two things. Wait for them to get there, explain the situation and let Liz and the other CIT officer refer services or find out what they can do to help that individual. Or solve that problem as best they can and say, hey, look, we can't solve this right now, but I'm going to send an email or a phone call and they will be out here in an hour or eight hours or whatever that is. Now, in a crisis situation, that's still a little bit differently because we need to get that person help and get them down to the hospital. But if it's something to like, okay, we've identified what the issue is, let's, we're creating a call, we're putting the notes down about what occurred and referring that for a follow-up for our co-responder.
Thank you for all that. That was good. I don't have any further questions, just sort of had some questions around the practicality of implementation of some of these new initiatives. But that's it for me. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I move over to council president. Got to unmute yourself there.
Get my fingers working. Okay. And maybe this is to, maybe this is for Blake.
Good evening, council president.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Great, yourself?
Fine. I didn't see anything in the job description as to what length of time that these individuals are going to be trained. Because obviously they have to learn the organization, regulations, and the policies of the police department. So how much training will you provide for them?
Ongoing training every day. And-
Is there on-site training from the beginning?
What I can, what I can share is really based on my experience kind of walking this new role. And then also, you know, working with other people who have similar roles in other agencies and Lancaster and others. As a civilian coming in, you have one set of thinking of what police should do, shouldn't do, and what you've learned in life. And then you get on the other side and you try to look at the perspective as well of understanding case law or understanding the reasons why, or understanding where things are around the department and who we can connect to. So that's going to take, that onboarding process will take some time. Working on a strategic plan now for training, which is going to involve ride-alongs, which is going to involve spending time out at booking, which is going to involve spending time with nonprofits, with other entities, because there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of questions that people ask that you have to learn. And I'm still learning, being here for almost three years, that once you're knowledgeable in those things, you don't have to call, I wouldn't have to call Corporal Hammer on, who's one of my partners, or, or the commissioner or the deputy chief. You'll be able to identify and answer questions as I feel questions from council members all the time about certain things or why was this done or what could have happened. I would say, okay, let me get back to you, let me call chief. Those things, then the CSAs will be able to understand and articulate in a way, why were you arrested? You know, do you understand this reason? Or tell me why this, why this person was feeling this way or are they allowed to do that? So those are questions that happen that I receive a lot. And then if I don't know, or if the CSA doesn't know, they're then encouraged to then ask Captain Hooper and then who has been on the force for 25 plus years or any other member of the, of the bureau who has that on-site, you know, experience.
Okay. One thing I would like to do, I don't know if you may agree with it or not, is under qualifications. I'd like to see it amended that it's, that we mandate that the individuals who are qualified to be community service aides, that they maintain residence in the city of Harrisburg and that we utilize, utilize residence only. And I know you said something about, we have advocates and community leaders who have our best interests at heart, but I think the best interests at heart is the residents of the city of Harrisburg, who on an everyday basis normally interact with each other. So I would like to see that made it under qualification. We mandate that they live in the city of Harrisburg.
And I think either the mayor or Neil would have to take that one, but thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay. My other question, I guess that goes to the, when I asked about the uniforms, how many uniforms would be given to each person?
Right now, just what is appropriate for the line of the budget. And then we'll kind of work it that way, but we'll want to make sure that this isn't an out-of-pocket expense. They'll still be provided what they need.
Okay. Now, who pays for the certification?
Certification-
Repair for the certification for the CPR and standard first aid?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Next question, and I think this goes to commissioner. I want to know about how, out of the eight officers that left, was the city reimbursed for their training?
Right now, we have paperwork up in the legal section that we're trying to collect that money. And as you know, Madam President, that we put a five-year mandatory service for the city of Harrisburg. So those that didn't meet that standard, then they owe the city money. And we're going through legal now, trying to collect the funds that they owe. Maybe Neil, he can step in and-
We-
Neil, you have to unmute yourself.
We have received some of the funds, but we're, there's others to pursue. So we've got partial payments.
As long as we are initiating payment of those- As long as we are initiating payment of those individual officers who left. Because it was, it was an ordinance that we interacted and enacted, I'm sorry, and the mandated that they reimburse the city of Harrisburg.
Right, so there there there's provisions in a couple places and that happens when they're exiting, we work through what monies are available immediately and then we go from there.
Okay, Commissioner, what are we doing as far as recruiting uh the individuals that we that do leave the uh city of Harrisburg? And then we have a twenty members of the twenty positions that are vacant. So how are you um accessing? As far as, you know, are you publicizing uh using the newsletters or TV stations? Uh, going through some of the uh community colleges or universities to recruit?
Yes, ma'am, we are doing that, we were going to um the job fair shows. Um, uh, we're also looking at um giving a police test, the city of Harrisburg starting to give their own police tests. Again, the problem is, Madam President, is that we're in a consortium uh situation where there's thirteen other police agencies there. And um, we have stricter civil service rules than what they do, so therefore they can get to the cream of the crop before we do. So we're looking at doing a um police test here, Harrisburg Police Test only, only. We're looking at hiring um the one-twenty already certified officers. There's a lot of things, you know, that we're looking at, you know, trying to do, you know, but the biggest thing that my staff and I are trying to put together is attract city residents, other city residents, you know. We need city-born residents, we need city residents that went through the school system that have an interest in becoming um officers here in the city. So we're looking at a a process where we can offer points to those there city people to like take the test, to like help them to get to where they need to like get to.
Okay, and thank you, Commissioner, for the information about the Uptown substation, uh, as you came before this council several years, what, three years ago? And you first requested money for the substation at Outney Hill. Uh, my question to you is, uh, are we going to uh have a substation uptown? Now, I know we have one at Six and Pepper, but I don't think it's huge for that purpose.
Well, that's actually the um Powell building, that's not really a substation.
Exactly, I understand that, I understand.
And as you know, Madam President, you know, you called me later night, fussing about we don't have a um substation yet, but we're looking at um Cooper's Barbecue Stand, I talked about that with you. Uh, we were presenting an opportunity to um get the old fire station up in like District Three, but that was out of the needed area, we didn't want to get that. We were looking at um getting the um Red Cross building, but then they changed their minds, they go, well, we couldn't get that, so we have not stopped looking yet. We're just trying to find the appropriate building or the appropriate uh lot, we're like, we can build, you know, one. But um, you know, that's a dream that um we all have, that Mayor and I talked about it, you and I talked about it and um DC Moody and I talked about it, you know, right now with the um with the CSAs coming on, that a few officers that, you know, we could man possibly an uptown substation too, so you know, everything, you know, that we're planning right now has the mind thought of um bringing a better city for the citizens of the city, so uptown will will get a substation. I just can't give you a time timeline.
I just didn't hear it in the measure uh the mayor's presentation last week, and that's my concern.
Ma'am, um, I can't speak for the mayor and the
I know you can, that's why I'm I'm stating that, he hears me as well, so.
I do know.
He hears me, I've been requesting that we also have a substation uptown, so.
Do know, ma'am, that we were trying to partner with the church uptown that um you mentioned about lighting in the area, that's um the cam curtain area. You know, you know, we are talking to people up there, we're talking to the pastor up there, those talks are still going on, I believe that they were trying to find funding, you know, what have you, you know, but um I know that um the black and white buildings up on Sixth Street that the federal government has purchased over their buildings and, you know, so there's going to be um construction going up there too, so we're not trying to forget the uptown, I'm from uptown too. So it really doesn't matter, I'm from Harrisburg City, but you know, we love the whole city, so we're going to be doing things.
I do as well, but I also want to focus on every area in the city of Harrisburg and I just don't hear to certain areas that are not being considered. Um, I agree with my uh colleagues that we do need more coresponders than we do than community service aides. So I I certainly will hope that uh the council will look at that. Um, now, Commissioner, thank you for your information, can I speak with Mr. Lynch again, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, uh, Mr. Lynch, we talked about um things that regarding the police station, but we don't hear about some of the good things that you're doing in the city of Harrisburg, can you give me an overview, a couple of minutes about some of the good things that we're doing?
Absolutely, um, since starting less than three years ago, uh, it's been a priority of the Commissioner to really try to build that relationship again with the school district. That was a unwritten thing uh from the mayor and the commissioner and we've been able to do that through positive community policing without an SRO program um and assisting with the school district uh to try and really build more positive community policing um and more community relations, especially at the elementary level and high school levels specifically. Uh, we've been, right now in the middle of the pandemic, uh, we've been giving, we've given out over seven hundred fifty thousand pounds of food uh through an all volunteer, aside from our officers and myself, an all volunteer corps of over a hundred and fifteen uh volunteers every single week, uh, once a week, today was our food distribution day at four site locations through partnership with the Central PA Food Bank. Um, right now, we're collecting coats for our kids. Uh, where our goal is to uh collect five hundred coats to help keep our kids warm, especially those affected by the pandemic during the holiday season. Uh, right now, I'm working with the United States Army on a Toys for Tots drive and I have several thousand toys that are currently being put together by volunteers with the US Army to help give those out with community organizations and other nonprofit partners. Uh, we hosted our two National Night Out organs, uh, National Night Out uh events. The first year was fifteen hundred people in attendance, the next one was close to forty-five hundred. Uh, we won a national award for that. Uh, I mean Corporal Hammer and myself have addressed hundreds of quality of life calls, especially his unit um and especially our patrol by trying to assist them and take some of the burden off of them so that our officers can be out and responding to calls. Uh, there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes uh that our CSAs will be privy to um that don't really need to be announced, but it's really just addressing quality of life. Um, animal complaints, loud music complaints, neighborhood disputes, assisting with MOUs for camera operation, replacing light bulbs, working with Aaron Johnson with illegal dumping and Howard with trash sanitation and catching people in that act. Working with uh, gosh, so many different organizations and people from Zarcker Street to to Howard Street all over to try and address quality of life matters. Um, helping people pay their Comcast bill. You'd be surprised, uh, setting up meetings with police officers because people may feel that they were wrongly accused of something and having uh that misunderstanding spoken about and then those charges dropped. Um, assisting with connecting people to judges. Um, working, was working with uh Magisterial District Justice um uh McKnight as well as Anith Johnson on working on a program with the school district for a juvenile court um led by their peers um to assist with truancy and other issues, so they wouldn't have to come through uh their offices and through us. Uh, there's a lot of things that we assist with um that aren't really broadcasters shown and, you know, some things we put on Facebook, some things, a lot of things we don't uh just because that's the nature of the job and that's something that unfortunately uh law enforcement does a bad job in really promoting the positive things that they do. Sometimes it's captured on a video that goes viral, um, but I see a lot of people from the law enforcement community as well as fire uh do some tremendous things that never get fanfare. Um, so our job in this unit is to try and highlight a lot of those things. Uh, answering calls late at night. I get phone calls from people in the community all hours of the night, I have text messages to prove it. And just, you know, hey, there's a shooting going on, what do you know? Hey, you know, my son got picked up, can you help me? I've helped with safe surrenders uh and stood in the middle, you know, to try and assist with that because people are fearful of what would happen if they were found on the street. Uh, so many things, um, council president, I'm sure I can go on, but uh I believe that community policing is really central. Um, I think that there's a reason why President Obama's pushed community policing with Attorney General Eric Holder and I can see it every day, uh, so, yeah.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Lynch, I just wanted the public to hear about some of the good things that the Harrisburg Police Department has done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Council President, moving on to Councilwoman Rogers.
Uh, good evening, everyone, uh, I guess, well, before I, before I begin, uh, my first question is for um our uh, our chair. Um, I know when we've had other meetings and with uh the budget, uh, this is just something that I I was thinking about. Uh, we've had a couple of public hearings, well, at least one where we uh took a a different um approach and had allowed the public to potentially um speak, we were, went to that panelist um for Zoom, is is there going to be any opportunity for the public to participate outside of written public comment?
So I had posed a question to you, I think this is the the format we're in right now is the format that would be used for the work session. I think that that's kind of where it's where it is right now. Um, I think to change that would be something that uh Council President would uh want to approve in consultation with moment.
Okay, um, all right, yeah, so if we if we can look at that, um, that'd be helpful, because I know right now we have a a really short um timeframe, there's a lot of questions and I I think that we may want to um depending on the outcome of these these next uh tonight and uh tomorrow night, uh, we may need uh some additional time to before trying to vote on the budget on um Thursday. Um, so, all right, going on to uh some of my questions, uh as as was mentioned, um I don't know, I'm a lot, this uh, this gives me a a little bit of pause with looking at some of this, right? We um, you know, we we spent the summer work, trying to work with community organizations, um, you know, get a lot of their feedback and input. Um, and we are looking at a one point four million dollar increase um in the the police uh budget, so uh a- and a lot of it seems very top-heavy, right? So there's six hundred thousand dollars just in management alone, um, as we're looking to do some of this stuff. But um, I'm getting no concrete um answers on we're increasing management, so we're going to have a technical services manager, RMS, body camera, but in terms of ensuring um that the data that we're looking for is available, um uh, to me, I think we're going to need more than just promises, we're going to need a some sort of written plan in turn and uh, right, some sort of customer service uh plan from the the police bureau in terms of what the turnaround time is going to be on a lot of the uh the documentation, uh, as council uh chair for public safety mentioned, uh, Councilwoman Green mentioned, uh, you know, a regular schedule on uploading information, uh, because right now it's very difficult to get some of the information that uh the public and even members of council um is seeking. So um, just a couple of things uh here for me. The advertising budget and communications is going from uh, upper, last year we had five thousand dollars to eighty-nine thousand dollars. Could, can I, I don't know if it's the chief or deputy, um, could speak to what the average, why we're seeing such an increase in the advertising budget?
Yes, sir, uh, what line, what line number are you referring to, sir?
Uh, so let me go to the line number, uh, well, first I was on page one oh two, Justin Services, it said communication. The adopted budget for twenty twenty was five thousand hundred twenty dollars for the proposed for twenty um twenty-one is eighty-nine thousand three hundred and I will find the line in one second. Advertising, it's uh line four two zero zero one zero and I'm on page one oh six. Of the city budget.
Okay, uh, two of the the major increases in that, um, I'm looking at it, one would be consulting services for recruitment. Uh, there was a fifty thousand dollar uh put in for that. Basically with uh what we talked about earlier, uh, even uh Mr. Lynch referred to as uh uh professional services, we're looking at hiring professional services to manage the image of the police department. Uh, a lot of that, uh, the things that that occur, uh, a lot of things that are, that um the police department does, uh, the response generally from a police department side is no response. We're looking to be able to uh take charge of that and have a professional uh service manage the image of the police department. Uh, we want to take, take uh, take back our image, we want to be able to professionally take back our image and and portray some of the uh, the other things that go along with policing in a manner that is uh appropriate and efficient and uh and highlights uh other pieces of the police department other than um just the arrests we make and in those cases where we make an arrest and there's a a statement that needs to go out, we want to make sure that we are doing it in a, in the best manner possible. And um, that's where you see the one increase. The second increase uh is a recruit, request for uh advertisement specifically to uh Mr. Lynch's uh um unit, uh, that being this um for the CSA or just in general. Mr. Lynch can speak a little bit more uh about that, but that's a thirty thousand dollar uh increase um to deal with uh 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 requests for advertisement as it pertains to uh uh his side of the house. I don't know if you, if you would like for him to speak a little bit more what that entails, um, but that's just a general overview of what that is, where those two increases come from.
Okay, and and thank you, and I think that that goes back to a point that I think I've made in in several of my other colleagues have made in the past where uh, I I I don't think it is necessarily uh the job of the police to do that, I think either a PIO, a Public Information Officer within the police department or a Communications Director for the city of Harrisburg would be better suited rather than us spending dollars uh in the police budget to uplift your image, right? We we should have communications um coming at a uh a a more holistic approach for the city of Harrisburg. I think right now, we do have uh some great folks in our communications department with someone with that PIO background uh specifically uh to deal with emergency communications, not just coming from the police department but from fire uh as well as um, you know, just the city of Harrisburg in general. I think um maybe a better use of uh some of the funds that we're looking at, I think. Um, and before I I go on, I I wanted to circle back, I think during President Williams, one of her questions uh regarding um the uh CSAs, I looked like Mr. Grover wanted to say something when she was discussing a potential uh requirement for uh for city residents. Um, and I know that, you know, we may run into some issues with the bargaining and on that, but uh if we are going to be uh coming up with some scoring, um, is it possible to have points for city residents included in um any scoring rubric for that would be potentially with them becoming um CSAs?
Right now, the ASME contract's pretty clear that residency is not a requirement, it's not in any city code. And um, it it would be hard to put it in there as a qualification. Uh, but uh, two things, one is ASME is up again for negotiation in twenty twenty-one. Um, and you know, uh, that's the first time I've heard this issue for these hires. And so that could be, it is the subject of bargaining already, so it must be the subject of bargaining in the future because it already was. Uh, and two, um, as opposed to uh requiring it, there may be a way to incentivize it.
Right, so uh again, is there any incentive similar to how there's incentives for becoming members of the police office? Uh, become a a police officer if you have a military background uh in terms of our scoring, is there any way we could potentially have some scoring or or weight given towards uh individuals?
So that, that would be difficult because that scoring is mandated by state statute on the veterans. They tell us exactly how we have to do it. Uh, whether there is, at one point we had a walk-to-work program and things along those lines over the years, different versions of it in the city over thirty years. Um, I I don't, I can't speak to the success of them, I just know that they have been on the books at different times as programs uh to attract people to work in the city, there was one where it allowed them to buy a house and we assisted in doing it, there's been a lot of versions of it. Um, and and that my imagination is limited at the moment to to what's already been in that sense. Uh, but on the bargaining unit one, because it is a matter of bargaining, we can't just impose it, we would be a potentially in a violation of the State Employment Act that we would end up over in a hearing.
Okay, um, uh, but uh, um, again, uh, is there any way we can get to yes on providing some sort of points, because again, I think if we're looking at community uh service aides, and I still have some questions regarding that. Um, if you're serving the community, uh, it it sort of benefits all all parties involved if you are our city residents. I know one of the things that, uh, you know, we get a lot of questions about um, is the the number of officers that are uh city residents and we know that that number is uh uh fairly low, so I I'm trying to think if we're looking at uh uniforms, uh, but uh uniforms, but I guess unarmed members of public safety that are geared towards providing services to the community. It sort of benefits us if they live in the city of Harrisburg.
I think that's a question for the mayor at that point and taking it to labor management and negotiating it with them. It is an ASME question. And we do it, we do labor management almost every month. So related to this, we have sort of a six month informal agreement, side agreement with FOP to allow these positions to be developed and see how they really are working in terms of having to work with the police because they already do this work. So so all of that has been on the table at Labor Management in both unions. But I don't think residency has been on the table at this. The mayor can, I think, speak to that.
Well, I'll just say we we obviously want residents and we we control the hiring process. So we're we're, you know, Blake Lynch, Joni Willingham, and whoever else they want on that interview committee is going to be selecting selecting these positions. So obviously, I would want a strong preference for residents. If we're talking about a requirement for residency, that is something that we can we can take to ASME. We haven't done that yet. Maybe we want to see how, you know, how the initial interviews go. Because I think I I'm optimistic that we're going to find quality. You know, we're gonna have a, we're gonna actually have quite a lot to choose from in terms of community members who who want who apply and are qualified for these positions. So I I don't see an impediment to city residency. We may not need to require it. And it may not be necessary for every single one of those aides to be a city resident. I I, you know, certainly you want the overwhelming majority of them to to be. But I think as Blake was saying earlier, you might have somebody who's who's very much connected to Harrisburg who lives, you know, just across the border in Susquehanna Township or in Steelton. And that doesn't mean that they wouldn't make a great community service aide. So maybe the proof will be in the in the in the results of the of the job search. And we'll certainly do everything we can to publicize it and get the word out.
Okay, yeah, and look, I I'm not trying to get into any, you know, huge disagreements with the bargaining unit. I was again, I wasn't talking about a requirement. I was talking about preference and or points similar to how there are other points and things weighted in terms of.
Yeah, these are not civil service positions, though. So we're not, we're not doing a, our our job hiring is not based on a, you know, numerical calculus and and a testing. These are subjective in the sense that we are our interview team can can focus on the the qualifications which are related to a community service. And clearly, being a city resident is going to be of value. So I, since it's a civilian position and since there is discretion in the hiring process, I think we're going to be okay. But, you know, it will, it will be on us to make sure that we select the the right people for the position.
Okay, and again, just would encourage those folks that to take that into consideration as they make their deliberations. So going to the community service aid piece, how did we decide on a number of 12? I don't know if that's a question for the commissioner or Blake, or how do how do we get to that number?
We can certainly hear from Blake and I'd also value hearing a bit from Lieutenant Hooper, soon to be Captain Hooper, who's who will be in charge of this division. But it was an effort to create enough capacity to 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 really accomplish the goals. We we felt just as the coresponder number came from a conversation with with the coresponder and the county in terms of workload, the 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 number of community service aides grew from fundamentally with from the from out of a discussion of what it would take to perform the duties of the position. But I'll let Blake speak to that. What what you can, what you may be able to do with 12 that you couldn't do with four or, you know, something like that.
To the majors, I I think the big thing, the mayor proposed really with 12 is just to have additional coverage and to ensure that each district is represented. The way that I've seen this done in other cities, large and small, is by having Baltimore, I'll use as an example. Baltimore has several dozen. Atlanta has a huge fleet of them, you know, Lancaster is over 40. But one thing I like that Baltimore City did is that they had one assigned to each district, their police districts. But then they also had specific segments. And the commissioner and I have spoken about this as well as Captain Hooper and I of having people designated for the business community and church organizations as well as the LGBTQ community. I'm an understanding those needs as well as specific for certain minority groups that are underrepresented like Nepali and try to really build those bridges to advocate again. Now, everyone is an advocate for that, but certain communities maybe who are a little bit more underrepresented in in the city could, you know, you could discuss a little bit more.
Yeah, no, look, and and again, I'm just looking at the efficacy of that number. And you mentioned some of the things that I was going to talk about, right? So are we going to be encouraging, you know, folks that have speaking in second language or that they can communicate with some of our our immigrant community or, you know, folks with with different backgrounds and skills that may be interested in in this opportunity? Because again, I think sometimes we run into cultural barriers and language barriers with individuals that have to interact with the police. So just I'm just asking if, you know, if we're going to move forward with this, that we take that into account. And again, I think, I mean, you mentioned some some larger cities. I think the closest to us in population would be Lancaster. There's still about 20,000 more people than us. So if we can get some some information as to how we yeah, with some other similar situated communities in terms of population have that may have these kind of programs, just to determine that we're looking at the the proper number of individuals.
And we utilize Lancaster as an example with their job description. However, we wanted to tailor more towards community policing and serving in more of a relationship building role. Lancaster utilizes their CSAs for wide ride, a wide range of different things such as prisoner transports and a lot of other things in their booking center. We don't want that. We're trying to really double down on community building and relationships as well as advocating for our residents for city services and getting them connected to officers and help build that bridge.
Okay. There's another thing on there in terms of training requirements. Everything seemed very vague. Will there be any specific training requirements for those individuals that we're looking to bring in? Because I could unfortunately see some, yeah. I I try to be optimist, but I'm also pragmatic when it comes to a lot of things. And, you know, having folks that we, you know, again, we don't know if there are any city residents or not. And, you know, there'll be, you know, have have some sort of uniform, what kind of train are we going to be providing to those individuals to be able to interact with our community?
And that's why the hiring process is going to be so so key, Councilman, because understanding being on this side as a civilian doing every day, there's a lot of things you can and cannot do. There's a lot of things that are could be misinterpreted because you represent the bureau, you know, by you're not a policeman. So there, there's a lot of thoughts kind of go into also know that the police department's background check is one of the most thorough background checks you would ever go through, probably next to working for the FBI. So I mean, you're it's really going to dig down deep and address a lot of questions because they're trusted with a lot of sensitive information and have access to overhearing conversations as well as being in part of, you know, radio calls and different things like that, ongoing investigations, perhaps maybe privy to or exposed to in some way. So those are things that could come up, unfortunately. But they just have to be trusted. And I think members of the community who already are working alongside us understand that to a good degree, especially those who are city residents. And as I answered for Councilman, sorry, Councilwoman Bowers, absolutely. I'm on board with a strong preference to those who know the geography of the city, from the city, for the city, who live on the blocks, who already have those preexisting relationships. So that's not lost on me at all, sir.
Okay. Yeah, and and again, I'm I'm looking at. So in terms of the consultation piece on on this, as this was developed, who, what other outside of looking at Lancaster, what other communities or what other, you know, who else did we consult as we were looking to, you know, make this proposal?
Larger cities is, as I mentioned before, Orlando, Atlanta, Los Angeles, I'm sorry, Baltimore. Baltimore was really, I really liked Baltimore's a lot, incorporated a lot of theirs into it. And the reason being is they actually had three divisions of community service, eight. They had one that worked in more of their CID division, criminal investigation. They had one that worked more, almost similar to a street crimes unit like ours was were charged with more investigative work and try to assist on that side and, you know, prevention with drugs. And then they had one that was really focused on more what we're doing is community relations and engagement. And because they matched similar demographics to us and they're in close proximity, following their following their flow, I thought it was a good example. And so didn't necessarily mirror it, we put our own into it, but they were really the lead that I looked at as well as Austin. So there there's many police departments that have similar civilians.
Okay, and then is there, I guess, so if and if you could, is there any data that we can provide that shows that having these type of liaisons leads to any reduction in crime or improved community relations? Okay.
I'm happy to investigate that and get that back to you.
Okay. Additionally, are there are they going to be provided any resources to assist, right? We're already talking about them having access to vehicles. Are we looking to equip them with cell phones as well, radios? I don't know, I guess none, I guess, I don't know. Are they going to have any type of other devices with them, you know, Taser or anything like that? I'm just trying to get a sense of what this looks like.
No, sir, no weapons. There's civilians just like myself. When I go out, I have my radio, I have a vest and I have obviously cellphone and means of communication. If they feel that they're going to be in a dangerous situation, that's why they have their emergency button on their radio. They're going to be trained on how to use their radio. And normally, in the beginning, they're going to be with officers for about 99% of the time through our community policing unit because they have to understand and get to know the reasons and why. And then they can kind of operate a little bit more. Now, I'm not saying they need to be with an officer at a community group or, you know, a block party or anything like that. But when they're responding to calls or doing follow ups, you never know how that situation could go. And when they become a little more comfortable, then they can kind of go on on their own, almost like an intermural period.
Okay, yeah, I think, yeah, having some of these things fully fleshed out would would be helpful for me. Would they have any powers to issue any of any of the any citations?
They, that is still under discussion with the FOP right now. However, again, they are civilians, so they're limited in what they are able to do and they are not law enforcement officers.
Right, well, I mean, so we have code enforcement offers that that have the ability to to write. So that's what I mean, that's why I'm asking, these are I understand, right?
Right, city ordinances that codes can enforce, but they're not doing anything, you know, on anything criminal or anything Act 120, they don't have to be sworn by.
Right, okay. Thank you. I guess there's another line, hold on, let me pull the line. I guess it's listed as extra duty for additional $100,000. I don't know if that's the commissioner or anyone else who can speak to that.
What line number you have that for that, sir?
Give me one second here. Got multiple screens, I just need to.
Page 102.
Chief, I think, Chief, I think he's talking about extra duty when our officers are assigned extra duty and we paid them and then we are yes, I think
I was looking for the line to confirm that, madam.
I think that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, so extra duties on like I heard Mark say, it's on page 102. It was $900,000 last year, does a $100,000 increase to 1 million?
Right, police extra duty, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm I don't have that page. I'm looking for one that has notes. If I would have, I'm I'm not able to locate that at this point, but that sounds like what it is for. I can research that and get that back to you. But I'm pretty sure that has to do with the external employment reimbursement for the jobs that are paid out and then the city has reimbursed the money.
I think Erica could answer that, I think she's on. Erica, are you are you following? Can you address the what's represented in the million dollar proposed salaries for police extra duty?
I think that's from the Dauphin County UDAIS as for traffic control.
Yeah, and the expenditure lines is 414900.
Mark, can you see if you can reach Erica and we'll get back to you on that. At the very worst, we'll we'll have an answer for you for tomorrow.
I think that's what that is. We had that last year, Mr. Majors.
Right, no, it's
They can, they can, they can confirm that, they can
Okay, you know, they can confirm, I'm again, I mean, it's a line in the budget, so I'm just
Yes.
Asking, okay. Guess we have a a doubling of personal safety proposed, it's 430012 in the budget.
Stephanie Moody, that's page 107.
107, yep, 107430012, personal safety.
So there's a couple of things on that line, let me just pull it up on this. I'm sorry, the print on this is really small, so. Hey, on my notes page, I'm looking at the let's see. Biggest addition to that, I'm seeing the complete sets of riot gear, which includes helmet, shoulder, chest, forearm, shin guards, gas mask, canister, bags and Mrs. Lian's items to replace the damaged pieces from our 2020 riots and protests. I'm also looking at I think that was a Taser edition in there as well. Let me just find that.
Okay, i- i- if I can get some of the notes, because like I said, all we get is the the actual, you know, the document. But if you have any any notes that you can provide on that line would would be appreciated. I guess, and then I guess talk to me a little bit about how how this this cellphone thing is going to work for for officers, right? We're looking to provide, are we all, is it's all uniform patrol or every member of the police department with a I guess a city issued phone?
Our current discussions and Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, was for every bureau member, every police officer to have a phone. That was where our numbers were driven up through through IT and the the look at that. That phone, obviously, we looked at potential or at least discussed potential options of whether we put a phone in a car or do we give the officer an actual phone? The actual phone of the officer provides a little bit better ability to reach an officer. The car thing would work maybe if the officer was working and so forth. But the ability with the the new phone system that we're looking to go to in my discussions with IT has the ability to the new phone system that we're looking to go to in my discussions with IT has the ability to do some other features that we could tie the cellphone into. At the end of the day, we looked at, I think our final decision was to move to put a phone in every officer's hand.
Okay. And then are there other departments that are doing similar things? And how does that run up against any issues that may arise with the union and in terms of of working, right? Because, you know, currently, you know, with my cellphone and how freely members of council, we give our cellphone numbers out to individuals. And as I guess, Mr. Lynch can attest to, you get hours, you know, calls at all hours of the night. Mr. Lynch being a part of the management, you know, his salary, but in terms of individuals that are uniform patrol and members of the bargaining unit, how does that impact if they're getting calls, answering calls, emails, et cetera? Well, inside of their normal work hour.
Obviously, I mean, this is something that we're in labor management talking through. We don't see any initial issues. Obviously, there's a couple of ways that that could be achieved. One of the main things we were looking at is a stable number, phone number for an officer. If you're working, your phone is on. If you're not working, your phone may be turned off. You would collect the messages into your voicemail that you could answer whether you when you're working. I don't think we've gotten that far into it, but I can tell you, my phone, I answer calls all throughout the day and and the night as well. It's different for me, as you said, salary being a salary person. Another issue that the phone that I think we wanted to make sure is that and and we don't want to see the use more so of personal phones being used in the potential of an officer potentially using their own personal phone to photograph something that's work related. That opened up another potential issue of the officer's personal phone being able to be pulled into court and have other issues that could possibly arise from tying in the personal end of their phone to the work side of it. So by providing the phone, the actual work phone, if an officer comes to a scene where they may have to take a picture of something, let's just say, for example, let's just say it's a crash and exchange of information and stuff like that and a report taking. Sometimes they could take a little bit of time utilizing a city owned phone, a work phone, they could snap a picture of the things that they need to assist them and get in that report done and get in that group moving. Now, depending on the type of calls, we have another policy that deals with the non reportables, but I just use that as a as a an example of when it would be appropriate to use a city owned phone as opposed to a personally owned phone. But we do believe that providing that actual phone will give us one of the biggest benefits out of that is that ability for a citizen to reach back out to an officer. When the officer leaves on their business card, they write the cellphone number. There's no more middle people. I don't have to call the county. I don't have to call dispatch. I don't have to call anyone to get back in touch with that officer, and we just move it that much closer to a one to one deal.
Okay. And I guess just one or two more questions. Looking to do an increase in to from one to four parking enforcement officers in in the budget, just I guess talk to me a little bit about what what their roles will be, or I guess, are they going to be tackling some of the folk areas outside of our standard parking area? And will they be in coordination with either Capitol Regional Water or others? Because one of the biggest complaints that I know I hear as public works chair is on street cleaning days, people not moving their vehicles and they're not being a a way to get an officer out to either ticket or do some, you know, some sort of mitigation. Because again, I think if we if we're a little, if we're going to enforce street sweeping, then we need to ensure that, you know, our streets do get cleaned. So outside of, I mean, what what are we going to be doing there?
So the parking issue has been a very unique one. For the, we've been dealing with a lot of issues as far as the staffing of it. As it currently stood, we've made some changes. It's been I'm sure councils were one person for the entire city. That opens up the whole host of why areas are not getting the type of coverage that they need. We successfully hired an additional person. We had actually hired a third. That person lasted a week and a half before he resigned from employment, which then puts us back to the two. Of that, where we currently stand now is the second person is currently in training. So what you're seeing is two enforcement officers riding in one car because the second one, the newest addition, obviously has to get trained up before that person is able to effectively and efficiently do their job. The thought process on the additional persons obviously opens up that ability to, I think it's no secret in the city that the enforcement side of it has been has been down for a lot of reasons, whether it was pandemic driven or whatever. Now we're at that point where I think people openly just say, I'm just going to take a chance. I'm not going to move my car because there's a good probability that no one will be here to ticket it. We want to get back on the proactive side of that and make sure that the streets are being clean. Make sure that the the residents know that, you know, hey, there are certain things that we need to get to happen to make sure that these services are being done in a particular area. We are obviously very aware of what that looks like and what it's been like. Obviously, even the ability to collect on persons that are are not paying their tickets with one person, it's extremely hard to boot and to catch these people. We're hoping that that enforcement side of it of just even bringing the personnel up gets our services side back up running efficiently and effectively like it like it should be. The enforcement side will come later down the line with that as far as getting that in line, but just the ability to get our services running back to the way they are and people doing the things that they should be doing anyhow. I think when they see that we have the staffing backup, that will help with people saying, okay, I got it. It's my time to move that car and it needs to be done so that the services can go through. But this is a huge problem for us. Staffing wise, we have, I can't tell you how many people we've interviewed. For whatever reason, this just seems to be a hard position to fill. I don't know. I can't give you the reason why. We interview a lot of people for it. We line them up. And for whatever reason, it just doesn't work. And I don't think it's necessarily the pay. I just, I don't understand it. So we're trying to figure that one out ourselves, but we are still actively interviewing and still actively trying to put people in place. Like I said, our last guy lasted a week and a half, but he got a offer for a job paying probably triple on the law enforcement side on a base when from the the depot side. So he left for that. That just that just made sense. I understand.
Yeah, okay. And then I guess this last question I have is either, I don't know, for the mayor or whoever, but again, so we know where our complement is down and, you know, there's at least twenty vacant positions. And, you know, we're talking about potentially, you know, bringing in additional folks on the public safety side. Should we not be able to fill those positions? At what point do we look to repurpose dollars for other other needs in in the budget, right? You know, we are carrying some some additional fund balance and repurposing some of those dollars for other community needs could be done. But at what point in the year are we looking if we're looking at our police budget one year and we allocated again, this I can't remember the last time where we looked at a potential increase in the police budget of of this much money, which gives me a little bit of a pause, but and you're noting, you know, hey, there's a bunch of vacant positions that we would hope to fill. If we're unsuccessful in filling those positions and we have twenty officers, I don't even want to cross different pay grades. And I'll do some of the math and make sure I have the right number on that. At what point do we look to repurpose those dollars to other needs within the community?
Well, I I would start by saying that's essentially what we are doing in in hiring all these civilian positions. We are essentially redirecting our resources to build capacity in a way that we have not been able to build capacity. I understand we're not taking those positions off the books. But what we but we are being realistic and saying that it's unlikely that we're going to be able to have those positions filled in the short term. So let's put, let's put dollars into into a new strategy, a new community services strategy. And with regard to community needs, I don't think it's an either or. I think we can address community needs in the budget. We are. And we try to and we can apply more dollars to community needs, but it doesn't necessarily have to be redirected in that manner. We, part of the conversation was about fund balance. We have, we have large cash reserves. And while we're in a pandemic and while we have to be mindful of that things could could possibly get worse on that front. We are, we are trying to draw down those reserves to address community needs. And it's not just policing. It's 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 also capital needs and debt reduction, which sets us up in a few years to have to have more resources for the community. So it's it's all part of a broad based strategy that is trying to meet the needs of the community. And I would just say, if you feel that there are needs that are unmet in the budget, let's talk and and see how we can meet them.
Yeah. So so again, I I hear you, but when you look at the budget, it's not reflective of what you're saying. Because again, we're not redirecting any funding. We're actually increasing the amount of proposed budget headed towards the Bureau of Police. Because we're, we are counting the funds that are going to be going towards those currently vacant positions against the police budget on top of four hundred, about four hundred thousand dollars for the proposed community service aids, a doubling of the management complement as well as proposed positions, as well as the increase in those revenues. To to fund those positions, right? We currently have nine in management. We're looking at nineteen. So that's a hundred and nine percent increase in terms of management staff within the Bureau of Police. So again, you're not redirecting any dollars. You've increased with the with, you know, with just the notion that, okay, we won't be filling these positions. So again, at what point, if those positions aren't on aren't successfully filled, would we be looking to, you know, redirect any of those resources? I know we were, you know, we're using other funds, TDBG minded to do the rental assistance program, which is great. But again, you know, there are other needs in our community, particularly as President Williams mentioned about partnering with other community organizations to do some of the the lighting improvements or working with them to you know, provide certain, I guess, levels of service or increase improvements to improve lighting and make their community a little bit better. It's well lit and it's, you know, maintained, we may see a production and crime. I guess, lastly, to the police bureau, one of the questions that didn't come up, and it's not necessarily budget related, but, you know, we're seeing a a increase here recently. We've had a rash of, you know, you know, shootings throughout the city, and it's one of those questions that I think, you know, we're all getting questions about, but, you know, what are we doing to address this this increase in, I guess, what this increase in in shootings here and especially with the pandemic? Yeah, the folks are home and we, I don't know, my community has seen it. I think we've seen it all across the city. So what what are we doing to to address that, especially with this continued reduction in officers? We've worked with other organizations.
So so quite a few things that we have initiated and we've we've drawn down some of our, I guess, for lack of better words, our our resources outside of the city. We've initiated some assistance from using funding streams from the county to bring in additional resources to address the immediate violence. The shootings have increased. Although we understand, or at least we have a some of an understanding of what's causing this increase. It's a little difficult at this point, some of the techniques that we've used in the past to deal with them. It's making us have to go a little bit further into the drawing board to come up with how to combat them. But a lot of it deals with bringing in additional resources to address that. Our calls for service have not dropped off. Our level of more serious crimes have increased in a sense of the shootings, but it doesn't it doesn't make us have an ability that we have a one simple fix to it. It's layered. So to address some of those issues, whether we are utilizing more to services of probation and parole services, whether we're utilizing sheriffs, whether we're using members of the thirteen to come in and bring in in our hot targeted areas. Obviously, the presence of the police alone, our city officers, is not enough to stop some of these daylight shootings and stuff like that. We're hoping that the increase in presence and the ability to just address those particular issues will give a little bit of a pause so that we're able to address them through more of a criminal investigation thing and doing a a full for a lack of better words, I don't want to give up some of the the strategies that we're using. I don't want to tip anyone off so that they're able to prepare for it. So if it sounds like I'm kind of bouncing around a little bit, I'm trying to be careful of the direct methods that we're using and not not give up how we're going to do it. We are aware of the issues. We've initiated, the boss has initiated some mutual aid, for lack of better word, request to come in. We have some we have a lot of it identified. We're still working on the actual response. A piece of it, like I said, is broken down to first identifying who the targets are and who the people are that are doing this. The next thing is making sure that our resources are directed so that we get the right people and we're not for a lack of better words, getting our hands on the on the on the wrong people. We need to focus on a particular group that is showing the spike. And we don't want to catch more or less the residual people. We want to get the the targeted people that are doing that. So we do. We have investigations going on. We've tasked our officers to to drive much harder. And like everyone else, we're fighting a pandemic. We're dropping officers left and right for the pandemic that is now affecting us. And our response to that is digging into our manning because we have officers off recuperating for COVID or possible exposure, just like I'm sure sanitation and everyone else. It is affecting us just as much. So we're trying to do the best that we can with that and still come to a resolve. We are working on quite a few things to deal with that. So it's not just one, one particular thing that's driving it. There are a couple of things driving it, and we're trying to address all of those different problems as best as we can.
Okay, thank you. I know I've taken up a lot of time, so thank you for indulging me.
Councilman, this is this is Mark. I just wanted to follow up on the extra duty line. You'll see that it did go up a hu- a hundred thousand, but on the revenue side, it went up the same amount. So we have a million dollars in revenue and then we have a million dollars in expenses. This is really to cover the the extra duty. That's when the police have services that directly pay private entities for police work. We contract with them. We pay the officers directly, stub you to wages, but it's not pensionable. So while there's an increase on the expense, there's also a similar increase in revenue.
Okay, thank you. And I guess we can discuss that for that additional another time and I'll turn it back over to Chair Allen. My apologies for the way.
No apologies at all. This is what we're here for. Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you. So a lot of the questions were already asked, but the Commissioner Carter, could you just briefly go over the your the police department's COVID continuity of services plan for, you know, what you did in twenty twenty and will you be changing anything in twenty twenty one?
I didn't hear your question, ma'am. Could you say it?
Yeah, the police department's continuity of services, the COVID continuity of services plan in twenty twenty. Will there be any changes? What was it? And will there be any changes to that in twenty twenty one?
Well, it depends on how bad everything gets. The pandemic gets, you know, right now we have medical personnel working with our city officers. You know, we have a extensive COVID plan. We do testing every day. Every officer that 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 comes into the building is tested for the temperature, ask about symptoms and what have you. The biggest thing that we're running into right now is that we're going on a lot of calls where people aren't wearing their PPE. They're having parties, just doing all kinds of things. Officers are exposed. We had shooting victims that were positive for like COVID. And, you know, we're running like first aid. As far as twenty twenty one, depends on what the COVID outbreak is, if the vaccine is out and what have you, but you know, we still plan on ramping up stuff from out here. We plan on being cautious and being careful. And we plan on changing our COVID protocol if we have to.
About how much would you say adjusting to meet kind of the requirements, the safety requirements for COVID compliance added to your budget this year?
Oh, well, I can answer that question. Maybe the mayor or or Erica can answer that question as far as the budget, how much is added to our budget?
Possibly Chief Enderline could answer it from the stand. Possibly Chief Enderline could answer it from the standpoint of how much policing we put in for reimbursement. If he is listening.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm here. I don't have a good solid number on what it's cost, but we're approaching about two hundred thousand dollars, I believe, citywide. So that's a police, fire, and public works personnel that were it's it's kind of all encompassing of the P P and things like that.
And in terms of replacing, like staff who go out to COVID or have to quarantine, Commissioner Carter and actually Chief Ederline too, since you're on, how many more hours of work has that added to to what you all have to do?
I think we'd actually have to run a, we'll have to run a report to really get that. I know that early on, our expenditures was around thirty thousand dollars, of which about twenty eight thousand of that were receiving back through the Commonwealth from a COVID grant that was released through the State Fire Commissioner's Office. We have not received that money yet. Police wise, I'm not sure what it was. I I don't have those numbers in front of me, but that that's something from the payroll standpoint that we can run because we were we were classifying those particular days off is a certain code in payroll.
Yes, if someone could either could get me that or even a guesstimate, this would be helpful. Thank you. And Commissioner Carter, could you give us a demographic breakdown of the police force currently?
I can't give it to you right now, but the H R department could give that to you.
Yeah, I think Joni has prepared those numbers and submitted some to you, Councilwoman, but she'll be here tomorrow night. I think she could also address the the quantity of COVID hours for each department.
I believe we do have that spreadsheet. It came to us just before the council meeting started.
It is an Excel document, and it is in your folders. And then also, I forwarded to you via email as well.
And so the next set of questions are really about the the corresponders and the C S As. So so I guess that's Mr. Lynch, or whoever feels better equipped to answer them. So do any of these roles require, you know, from reading the descriptions of both, I didn't see any license censure requirements for any of these two positions.
Councilwoman Daniels, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, I didn't see any license ensure requirements for any, either the corresponders or the C S As. Do you anticipate any particular licenses that you you might be requiring for any of them?
Aside from a Class C driver's license, no. I don't have any additional licenses in order to perform my duties. This is more of a community policing effort to can build bridges with our our residents. Coresponders on the other side, that's different from the county level. And following that job description that the mayor had discussed earlier.
So yeah, the job description for the coresponder, that one also doesn't have a license. So I want to understand, right? With the coresponder and the C S A, and probably more so for the C S As. They will be in whatever context, they will be gathering information, right, to help people. So currently, right now, if you are the victim of a crime and, you know, there's been, someone's been arrested, you're going to receive some level of assistance from victim witness services at the county level. Right? So, um, so
Victim Witness Advocate that works for the Bureau in our CID department. Is that what you're alluding to or?
So both the county and the local level, right, because they work with each other to provide assistance to victims.
Ours is a county employee that works, who works here in the city's full time in our CID department.
Okay, so the C S A then, in the context of a nine one one call, this C S A goes out with law enforcement. There's an actual arrest that happens. Who is the C S A helping in that context?
Sure, not necessarily. So the C S A is a civilian position with no arrestable powers or anything like that, similar to myself. So the C S As would be, if they were responding to any calls, they would be follow up or they would be proactive in assisting the residents on quality of life issues that would not require immediate police action. If it does arise to anything dangerous or requiring police action, then they would get on their radios and then ask or call for an officer to come and assist. They, that that would be their responsibility.
So, so can you explain to me how the C S A gets involved with someone? Is it at the nine one one call? Is it after there's been an arrest? Is it before? They reach out to police informally?
Sure. So so it's really, again, assessing the quality of life. So let's just say there's ongoing neighborhood disputes going on. Perhaps with loud music calls or animal control, or it could be, you know, suspected drug activity. People report their neighbors all the time. I field a lot of those calls where they want to remain anonymous, completely fine. Community service aides could assist with that and help with our crime analysts to then pinpoint those areas, to then provide to, you know, areas of our police department that would assist and actually work on that investigation or respond to a call for service. The C S As would not be responding to nine one one calls.
Okay, so, so, so the other captain had mentioned that the C S A might be responding if they're if they were closest.
Well, if, I'll give an example of myself personally. If I'm around the corner, which has happened, I was at John Harris and I heard shots fired. Okay, I called it out on my radio. I said, hey, does any calls come in for reported shots fired? County then dispatched officers to investigate and come into the area to then try and locate any any activity. I did not go out and respond to something, but I was there in the area and called it out so someone could investigate it.
And so then, so the C, there will be contexts in which a C S A is interfacing with the community that's completely unrelated to a call. Let's say they're doing educational things or presentations or whatever, right? But they're not going to be interfacing if someone makes a nine one one call. That's still going to be police and EMS and fire that's going to be responding to a nine one one call.
And the coresponders, if I can jump in, just just so you understand, the coresponders are responding as opposed to the C S As. I just want, I'm not sure if you're entirely clear on that. I just wanted to help.
Okay, so the so the the coresponder, depending on where they are, they may or may not be. So, you know, would police office, police officers get a lot of latitude because their job is to investigate? And to get convictions, so who is drafting like that? I guess what I'm trying to understand with the C S A in the C S, like I know what the role of the police officer's job is, where their duty is. The C S A, who is their duty to? Is it to the victim of a crime? Is it to an accused? Is it to their boss, their director? Who is their, who is their professional duty to?
Sure, we all account to the residents of the city, and that is who the C S As will be reporting to. So it's assisting with quality of life issues and quality of life matters. So those things, as I continue to use myself as an example, I am not responding to nine one one calls, but I am assisting on proactive community policing as well as non-threatening, ongoing investigations. Whether that's illegal dumping with Howard Drayton from sanitation, we partner all the time. Or with our vice unit with potential drug activity, with shots fired calls on Zarcker Street or anywhere else. I'm working with neighborhood associations, providing that information to then those in uniform patrol or specialty units who are law enforcement officers, who can then have the powers to investigate and work to remedy the problem. Now, if it's something that we could assist with in a civilian role, whether it's just providing resources or connecting people to resources, which we do as well, that's something civilians can assist with. Really, the customer service side of those low level calls, which allow officers to do more responding to more higher priority calls and investigations.
Okay, so I'm still not getting clarity on who the duty is to, right? Because all, right, so right now, police officer could come to me and, you know, let's say that he suspected me of selling drugs. He could come to me and pretend he's a buyer of drugs and ask me for drugs, right? Even though he's obviously not interested in drugs, right? Just to get evidence to have me arrested. So he could be pretending to be a buyer of drugs. Those are things officers are allowed to do because their professional code allows them to do that, because that's how they are able to get the information they need to convict potential criminals. The C S A, where are their set of duties coming from?
A little bit more specific to set of duties for the question, like set of duties, do you mean outside of what's in the job description or?
Right, like who is their professional duty to? Are they, if if they had to let's say they misrepresented something to someone they're interacting with. Do they, do they have a duty of, like, let's say, a duty of honesty to the people they're interacting with?
Yes.
Yes, they do. But first of all, a C S A will not be doing any undercover drug buys, investigation or anything like that. They're totally about the quality of life, the community and what's happening out there, illegal dumping, dumping loud music, dog barking, different things like that. They would never be putting handcuffs on anybody. They would never be involved in anything that is criminal, criminal or anything like that, ma'am. They are just there for quality of life issues to point out different social service agencies to people that like needed. They're there to point out different mental health agencies that people like needed. So they are totally working for the people, not for the police, but for the people. They're they're tied with the police is to get out there and make sure, you know, that they bridge the gap between the community now, the community out there and police agency. That is their total function, just like Mr. Lynch is doing right now. They'll be going to cookouts. They'll be going to fairs, they'll be going to community service outings and what have you, to crime watch groups. They'll be offering solutions. They'll be giving people education on cameras and, you know, what to get and what not to get. And they'll be talking to to kids working in the streets. They'll be telling us about boarded up houses, houses that are rundown, that needs to be boarded up. That will be their function. We're not going to allow them to do any police work per se whatsoever. They will not look like police officers. They'll be in probably polo shirts with a different patch on it that that may say public safety, but that's it. They will not carry weapons, no weapons whatsoever. The only weapon that they have is their radio in the way that they approach people, interaction with like people, talking to like people. They'll be bridging the gap between us and the citizens out here.
So in the, so with the C S A, they're still answerable to, you are the head, so they they're going to be answerable to the coresponder first and then?
They'll be, they'll be answering to Mr. Lynch.
Lynch, okay, so and but he's answering, he's answering to the coresponder and then?
No, no, corresponders are a different program totally.
Um, in the, in the sheet I have, the coresponder is above all of the use.
What's your question, ma'am? You're talking about the chart, the flow chart? The coresponders touch the whole agency. They they service everybody, so that's why you're
So they're not a supervisor to any of these people below them?
No, no, ma'am, no.
Okay, so then the C S A is only answerable to Mr. Lynch?
They're answerable to to Mr. Lynch, to to Corporal Hammer if need be, and to Captain Hooper, because he would be in charge of the whole unit.
Yeah, so how do you all handle confidentiality issues with the C S A, for example? So the the C S A got a call, the this household needs help with paying utility bills. They go into the house to help the person unless they're there. They see something that's that's criminal. Will they, do they have a duty to report something that they observed? I guess it depends. We are all mandatory reporters anyways, right? So even Mr. Lynch is a mandatory reporter. So outside of mandatory reporter context, let's say they saw, I don't know, a pile of bank notes that were just recently stolen from a bank. I don't know.
You know, well, first of all, they have to be able to articulate, you know, what they saw. They have to be able to say if it was criminal or non-criminal. So, you know, depends on their level of training too. No, but we're not the only information, you know, that we want from the C S As is to fix the quality of life for people. That's it. We're not asking them to go in there and look for things that are criminal or anything like that, just quality life issues.
Yeah, I understand it, but without a professional duty to protect, let's say, the confidence of information they're getting or 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 it's clear that their obligation is to either a victim or a defendant or a category of people, right? How? What are the, you know, what why would someone be open to C S A? Because at the end of the day, they're they're reporting for the police office, you know, you are at the end of the day their big boss.
Well, I'm not sure if I really understand what you're trying to ask me, ma'am. But again, I would say to you that C S As are a total existence, what the police would be to bridge the gap between community and police and to bring about quality of life issues and resolutions, solutions to the many different problems out there.
Yeah, but in the context, going back to like victim witness, the victim witness person, there's a statute that requires them to maintain confidentiality. So as they're helping victims, they really can gather things. You know, they're in the victim's house and they see something that's, you know, that's a problem. They have a duty to the victim because there's a statute that guarantees that. With the C S A, what are the guarantees that those protections are there? Or what are the mechanisms for guaranteeing those protections?
Councilwoman Daniels, there aren't any. You just can't impose them. You can create a statute to do so. You can create a, but you can't sort of just mandate confidentiality of a public employee not to report.
Yeah, so that's what I'm trying to figure out, because all of all of us are mandatory reporters to some degree.
For some things, right?
So, but then there's some things that allow us to keep certain things confidential, right? So so what are the things that allow C S As to keep what they gather?
I have not, I have no clue. Do you?
No.
I I have no clue. We haven't gotten that far, so we've never had them before. So there may be or there may not be, you know, like, we don't know the answer to that.
Okay, and then in terms of the actual services they'll be providing to the people they do help, do we have a sense of at this point, do we have a sense of categories of services we want them to be provider, providing or you know, or is that, what is, what are your thought process right now on that? Like, what is that? This is not for any of this, this is for Mr. Lynch and Commissioner Carter, in terms of the actual service they deliver. Will they just be like a referral service or will they be, will there be specific things that they actually do?
Sure, Councilwoman, I can I can speak to myself, you know, in doing so, and then prior to me, Dave Patero. So I mean, really what it was is we are civilians in in these roles for the pop, for for the opportunity to build trust. People have found over time to trust me with a lot of information. I I mentioned earlier. I've helped with safe surrenders, with people surrendering themselves because they did not, for some reason, had an unsurety of being arrested by the police on the street. That's a level of trust. People provide information all the time and with the hopes of still remaining anonymous. I've done that to, again, in an effort to build trust, to help and assist with quality of life issues for neighbors. The same degree of trust comes on the police side, because working for the agency, you may be privy to certain things, and there's a level of trust. These these civilians are not going to be police officers or These, these civilians are not going to be police officers or agents of the state or anything like that. Their main role is to help with quality of life and address those issues. And again, either find people in the community who can provide those resources. Uh, whether it's food or shelter or clothing or help, I mentioned with Comcast bills, utilities, whatever it is. Their jobs to be a resource to help bridge that gap. And that's what we've done in this time period and we've helped hundreds of people do that, uh, all anonymously. Uh, a lot of times, um, you know, help with, we're, you know, all the time. Uh, so there's many things, there's a duty to report things that are dangerous or in the danger of, you know, children or anything like that. Those are, those are pretty self-explanatory. And with the hiring process being as thorough as, as it's going to be, uh, that is our hope that we hire people who have that duty and responsibility to ensure that what they're doing is for the best of the residents of the city.
Right, but the thing is, at this, in this moment, for any of the people that you've helped, the DA could call you to testify against them and there's no statute and there's no evidentiary rule that would prevent you from testifying.
There's no attorney-client privilege, I'm not covered by anything like that.
Exactly, right, so that's, so that's the thing, right? So you have these CSAs who will be, because I imagine when, at the point where someone is contacting the police department, they're not interacting with the police department for something, uh, small, something that's, you know, that's not.
You'd be surprised. You'd be surprised, uh, the police department feels cause, and this again helps with the CSAs assisting our officers. Our admin officer especially, who gets calls all the time for so many different things that bogs them down. So they can't address quality of, or other calls in the queue waiting for phone calls. So they're able to assist with these things and take them off their plate. Uh, simple as what's the phone number for the district justice, Bianca? Happens all the time. A, a CSA civilian can answer that. That is a 10-minute phone call that takes a police officer to, away from helping someone else. So there's, uh, this is still being built out and rolled out. Um, but these people are going to have the best intentions to help the residents of the city and not try to turn on them in any type of way. It's an effort to build trust.
Okay, I think that's it for me in terms of the, the questions for the police bureau. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, I wanted to, Sharan, you had messaged me. Uh, did you have some follow-up or clarifying questions you needed to confirm before we moved away from law enforcement and over to fire and codes?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify or confirm at this point, um, are there going to be any amendments to the police? Um, specifically? Or are we going to wait to do that? I guess I just need to confirm what, how the process is going to be. Uh, because there were several like things that people said or council members said as far as like, take this into consideration, I'd like to see this. But I need to know if those are hard amendments or if those are just simply what they are, which is take them into consideration.
I don't think we can simply answer that right now. We, we will address, obviously prior to us having voted in the budget, but I will discuss at the end of tonight, kind of a, a process for that to occur. So. All right, um, let's actually go over to, uh, Chief Enterline, are you available still?
Yes, sir, I'm still here, as well as Deputy Chief Souter and Deputy Chief Sadisanzon as well.
Great, thank you guys for hanging in there with us tonight. It's always, you know, it's the most fun time of the year. I know that you look forward to these things too. So thanks for being here. I, I've reviewed everything. I don't have any specific questions for you pertaining to buyer allocations going into 2021. But for our edification, Chief, do you want, is there any specific update or highlight you want to make sure that we zeroed in on? Um, as we're considering, uh, the budget allocations, particularly pertaining to fire?
And I just, just a, a high-level overview for us. You know, we were tasked with, uh, presenting a, a, you know, fairly flat budget for 2021 and, and we presented that, uh, a, as a flat budget for 2021, uh, with the exception of our capital expenditures, uh, which are in our five-year plan. Uh, and as council will remember, we had some issues with, uh, the potential lease purchases, uh, due to ICA, uh, rules. And so we're, we're actually going to be buying apparatus outright, uh, with the help of Harrisburg Volunteer Fireman's Relief. So that's, you know, that, that's our main, uh, you know, our main ask. As, as we go forward, uh, you know, we need to get better at what we do as well. Um, I think that the police department with, uh, you know, with some of the community policing things that they've been able to accomplish and are going to accomplish, uh, in, in the coming years, um, with, with what they have. We need to look at what we're doing as well and, um, and, and see what that looks like for the, for the Bureau of Fire. As far as not only community involvement, but also looking at, you know, how we run and manage, uh, the, the department and making things more efficient from a training standpoint and, and some different things like that. So, uh, that's, you know, that's where we are. One of the things, and I think, you know, the big thing for us this year, um, you know, we've been tasked because we're also in charge of emergency management uh, with, you know, caring for and looking out for all the city employees and, and everybody in the city through this pandemic. Um, you know, we've been very fortunate, um, we had one career member and one volunteer member of the Bureau of Fire that tested positive. We've had multiple, um, that we put on, uh, quarantine just because of potential contacts and things like that. Uh, other departments have not been as fortunate and, uh, you know, so we've worked with them to try and get the testing, uh, that they need. One of the things that's really opened my eyes is the emergency management coordinator and, and you, you know, something that we probably need to look at going forward. Is, uh, really the, um, you know, I, I've really dug in and done a lot with the homeless. Uh, and so we have a significant lack of resources dealing with the homeless throughout the city. And it, it's a pretty amazing thing when you, when you get down and see how many community groups are working there. So from an emergency management standpoint, um, we really need to, to dive into that a little bit. Um, and, and that's going to require resources. There, there's just a, a significant lack of resources citywide, uh, dealing, uh, dealing with that. Ultimately, um, as we had the other day, we had a fire at, uh, at one of the homeless encampments. Um, so they ultimately become, uh, you know, police's issue and, and, and our issue. So we need to, um, you know, look at how we deal with those, uh, a, a little bit better as well. So I'll leave it at that, um, and, uh, we, you know, I guess, you know, to look at things, our complement currently is at 88. Um, we're budgeted at 90. Uh, we have two, uh, that we gave conditional job offers to, uh, back, uh, about three weeks ago now. So they'll be coming on board at, in the end of January, uh, as a new recruit up at Hack. Um, they'll start their EMT training at Hack and they'll be out on the street fully ready to go, um, by July 1. Uh, when they complete training. So that'll put us back up to 90. At this point, we know of no, um, solid retirements. We're kind of like police, um, you know, we find out um, shortly before that they're ready. There's, there's rumors of a couple, but we don't, uh, we don't bank on them until we get the official paperwork.
Fair enough. Thanks, Chief. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for questions and then start. Um, actually, back at the end of my days, back to our Public Safety Chair, Councilmember Marine.
I, I don't have any, any questions for you. Um, everything I think was pretty clear for me, so I don't have any questions for you tonight. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Asha. Going over to Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you, uh, thanks for being here, Chief. I don't have any questions either. Thank you for clarifying the possibility of, uh, those retirements that could be pending, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Madsen.
Uh, no questions for me. Thanks for all your work, Chief.
You're welcome. And at the, the, uh, and I did want to clarify, I know you had a question with the police about responding on those incidents. Uh, one of the things that we've required since, um, 2000, the year 2000, uh, is that all members coming into the Bureau of Fire will be EMTs and will maintain, uh, their EMT status, um, through their, through their entire career. So that puts us strategically closer a lot of times, uh, than even what the medics are. Uh, so there's a lot of those medical type calls that we're dispatched to just because we're able to provide that aid from a, um, from a professional standpoint, uh, immediately with, um, with, with EMTs awaiting for that ambulance there to, to then transport the, the patient to the hospital.
Yeah, I was really impressed with the response time and, uh, they handled themselves well, so. Um, but yeah, obviously it just seemed odd that a fire truck was responding to that situation. So I didn't know if that was sort of, you know, the best use of that, uh, equipment, but, um, it worked out and the person was safe.
Yeah, you know, we hear that a lot, you know, I, I called for an ambulance, not a fire truck. Uh, and, and again, it's, it's because of that close proximity, um, you know, throughout the community and that's, that's why we do it. Um, and, and it's, it's really an added benefit for the, uh, for the citizens.
Yep, good with that, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, Council President.
Oh, Chief, just one question. On your sick leave and vacation buyback, uh, what is the number that you had last year? That, uh, bought back and gave sick leave?
Uh, so 2020 actuals for sick leave buyback, uh, was 191,000.
Yeah, I know, but how many firefighters, uh, participated in that sick leave and vacation buyback?
Uh, so it's just sick leave, it doesn't include vacation, we're not allowed to sell vacation back, only sick leave. Um, I would have to get with, uh, I could look at that tomorrow on a spreadsheet and be able to tell you, if you bear with me, um.
I just think it's lower this year, it's like 40,000 more, I just was wondering.
Yeah, and you're looking at an actual versus the, the budget.
Yeah.
We were actually a little over budget and, and that's just depending on, uh, members have to have, uh, 60 days on the books to be able to sell anything back. Uh, so those, those members that are selling back, um, uh, they, they earn by state law 21 sick days per year.
Right.
Uh, all, all fire, uh, and actually I believe police as well. And so they got to have 60, so you know, it, it takes you a couple of years to get to that number before they can start selling those back.
Okay.
I can give you a number here in a second, if, and any other questions I can answer while I try and find this in my email.
Send that back to me tomorrow, it's not necessarily, I just was interested in how many, uh, sick leave buybacks we had from firefighters, that's all.
Uh, it'll be back in. Looks like one, two, three, four, five. Uh, 15 and. Looks like, uh, 49, Council President Williams.
Okay, 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 thank you.
The, those average payouts and, and look, this isn't a, this is real quick, uh, look at it math, uh, is around 2,500 to $3,000.
Of course, okay. Well, it's just larger than when I first started, you know, on council, that's why we encouraged them to, so they wouldn't lose it and I was just, you know, wanted to know.
Yeah, so those days and, and I'm, you know, i- if you look at the contract the way that's written, they're only really getting 50% of the days back. So if they sell back, uh, 21 sick days, which is how, they're, they're capped out, they're only allowed to sell back 21. Uh, they're sold back at the year prior's hourly rate. And they only get, uh, really 13 full days, so 130 hours is the maximum that you can get, uh, when you sell back. For those 21 days, which would technically be 210 hours.
Okay.
But there, there's a benefit to the employee and also a benefit to this, to the city as well.
Exactly, so that they won't lose it. And I was just concerned because, um, at one point they weren't doing that. And I just, you know, I see now that it was 191,000, so I was just, you know, I was interested in how many were buying it back, that's all.
Yep, good question.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Alec.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Majors.
Thank you and, uh, good evening, Chief. Um, the only question I have is regarding, uh, the fire pension plan. It looks like there's a, there's a significant jump, um, of $500,000. Uh, could you just walk us through, uh, why we're seeing, uh, that large increase?
The, uh, the fire pension plan is a, is the minimum municipal obligation, um, that is dictated by the pension system. So we have no, uh, you know, no saying what that is, that's given to us by the, uh, PMRS, uh, every year. Uh, and that, that's given to us, I believe in October for the year following. So we get that number in October, um, for the following year.
Okay, all right, yeah, I was just looking at that, you know, $500,000 increase, so, okay. Uh, I think outside of that, everything else is explained, especially with you guys looking to, uh, you know, purchase a, a vehicle and, and, and some other things, which, you know, those things get expensive, so, um, I'm glad we're working with the Relief Association to get some, uh, potential assistance there. No additional questions.
Yeah, we, we have a, we're, we're extremely happy with the working relationship we currently have with the Relief Association. We're looking forward to, um, some of the Relief, uh, Association, uh, issues that are going to be relegated now to the State Fire Commissioner's Office. I believe that that's going to be a, a, a significant benefit to us, um, to, to spend some of that money in a more efficient and effective manner to, to benefit the city. Um, and, uh, a- and also it'll, it'll help that, uh, you know, we have an additional volunteer fire company we brought online, uh, last year. So, um, that, that helps us out as well.
Okay, um, and I guess just, since you spoke to that piece, um, since we are looking at, uh, intergovernmental cooperation agreements, uh, on the public work side. And you, you mentioned the volunteer, are there, are you guys looking at any other potential, uh, you know, consolidations or, you know, creation of combination, uh, to provide, uh, you know, fire services to Harrisburg as well as some of the, um, potentially surrounding municipalities?
Uh, yes, sir, we, we have, uh, multiple irons in the fire right now. Um, and, and I don't really want to speak publicly about, um, you know, what we're doing behind the scenes. Um, but we have at least two municipalities that were, um, are actively engaged in talking with. Uh, there's an additional two municipalities that are, would like to talk to us, um, we just haven't had those, those conversations. Uh, and, and really, quite frankly, it comes down to dollars and cents. Um, you know, for a, for a municipality that doesn't, every municipality already pays a trash bill. Every municipality already plays, pays a police bill. They don't necessarily pay for fire protection. They, they quite frankly, don't pay for fire protection. Uh, it's something that's lacking in central Pennsylvania, um, it's something that is, is, um, becoming, um, uh, the, the service and quality is becoming less and less every year, um, because of the lack of volunteers. So we, we believe that that is our future, um, and we're, we're, we need to ramp up. That's part of the reason why we've increased our manpower complement, not only to serve the city of Harrisburg, um, to meet our ISO, um, and, and make that ISO rating better for the citizens of Harrisburg. But as we look to expand out now, we have a trained, qualified staff ready to go that we can push out to that municipality or municipalities that, that may need that. So we're looking at several different angles with that and, uh, we hope that, um, in 2021, we will be able to, um, report some good news that we're going to be providing that service, um, to, to an outside entity.
Okay, all right, good, uh, and yeah, I'll, since, uh, because of my, uh, current position, I'll leave that alone for the time being. And I will defer, uh, back to, uh, Chair Alec, thank you, thank you, Commissioner, or thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Wes. Uh, Councilmember Daniels.
Nothing, uh, specific, but could you just articulate for like the general public, how has your work changed? How, what adjustments have you had to make during the pandemic as you deliver services to the residents?
Uh, as far as service, I think it's, it's more of a lack of what we haven't been able to provide. Um, and, you know, it kind of beats us up. We like to open our fire station doors and invite the public in, uh, and we have not allowed that to happen through the pandemic. Um, just to protect our firefighters, um, and, and maintain that, um, you know, near sterile environment that, that we're dealing with. You know, these guys come to work, uh, and, uh, you know, they're a family together, working together, uh, four days out of the week. And, uh, you know, we try to keep that as sterile as we can. We know from looking at nursing homes and some of the other facilities in the city that, that once you get a, a case in, inside, uh, and, and you're infiltrated, um, it spreads like wildfire. So that's what we've been trying to prevent. So that, that's probably the biggest forward, um, uh, facing thing that the, that the citizens haven't seen, uh, was our interaction at, at, you know, public parks and, 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 uh, you know, the different community events that we would do. Uh, you know, again, of, you know, fire prevention things, uh, we did cut back on building inspections for a while. Um, we're now back at doing those, um, at, at, at a, at a lower rate, a lower, um, capacity, if you will, um, just because, a- again, protecting, uh, our personnel so that we're ready to respond. A, a couple of our guys, um, contracting COVID would be catastrophic to us. Um, and, you know, so we have a plan in place, if, if we, you know, see more than 10% of our personnel, um, in- infected or, or quarantined, we're going to start to look at the potential of, uh, changing shifts and, and making some, you know, pretty significant, um, uh, uh, adjustments so that we can, uh, continue to serve the city. Because no matter what happens, and, and I think that's important for the public. Because no matter what happens, and, and I think that's important for the public to know, that no matter what happens with COVID, um, fires and emergencies still occur, and we still need to be there and respond for you. Uh, and, and that's what we, we are committed to, you know, continuing that, that continuity of operations, uh, is, is maintained.
And that does it for me, thank you.
Thank you, thanks gentlemen for, uh, hanging with us tonight, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Uh, and now moving on to codes, I think I saw Dave Patton was on, uh, I see you right there.
Yes, good evening.
Uh, I know there was a provision to hire, um, I believe additional codes officers, do you want to talk a little bit about any specific changes to your, um, budgetary allocations for 2021?
Uh, quite frankly, my, my budget is, is, uh, there is no extravagance or embellishments anywhere in the budget. In fact, uh, it could probably best characterized as a basic needs budget, and if you look at last year and the year before that, there, there, it's, it's pretty much the same for every year. I don't have a whole lot to add on, on the budget because there isn't really anything, uh, different or noteworthy.
Okay, fair enough, I would look to questions from my colleagues, we'll start with Council, uh, Member Daniels this, this time.
Wes, could you share with the public, um, what your COVID, um, continuity of services plan was in 2020? And you, how much of it do you think you might be changing as we go into January?
Well, uh, obviously everything keeps changing, uh, sometimes almost daily, and, uh, it's basically a playbook in progress. Um, I have issued two very distinct strict protocols, uh, in dealing with, with, uh, situations, especially with tenant landlord situations. Um, so we are trying to taking every precaution and trying to limit our exposure, uh, as much as is absolutely possible. With the prevalence of this thing, it's, you know, it's, it's a little concerning, I've had, uh, two inspectors that were exposed, and, uh, they were off to get tested and self-quarantine. And obviously, we want to make, you know, assure that, uh, nobody is exposed, uh, limited exposure to, to, and, and interaction. Obviously, we don't want to bring anything back to our colleagues or, or the offices for their families.
How did things change for the department in terms of doing home inspection, you know, rental certificates, landlord company? How, how did serving the public change?
Well, we're doing, we're doing limited inspections, uh, we're issuing, we're, we're dealing with the issues at hand. We're not doing the full scope rental inspections. And again, like right now, we're on, uh, emergency heat call assignments, it's on rotation with the city. So I have a, a very strict protocol, uh, in dealing with that, and it's not just for the officers, it's for the complainant as well. So there's an intake procedure where they're, uh, described to the complainant what is expected of them, and the officer knows, reiterates that, and of course, then when they get on site, they have a protocol, uh, as they follow through with the inspection. If anything, if, say the complainant or some doesn't file these specific instructions, then of course, uh, that's a problem. Uh, the, the second set of protocols are very similar to the emergency protocols, uh, and that they have to, we have to try and assure that we, try to have as much as we can control that environment, that, that becomes kind of difficult. We want to know how many people are in the dwelling before we get there, uh, make sure that everyone has masks, um. If there are individuals, other individuals, uh, main, trying to maintain that social distance, if there's, if there's a room with a closing door, uh, and only one person could take us around maintaining that distance, and then if, if it's, again, it's in the room where that's occupied, then we'll have to fade back, let them relocate to another area while we go into that particular room. So we're, we're, we're taking every, you know, every precaution we possibly can.
And if, you know, there was, during the pandemic, where, um, where codes citations were kind of, a lot of them with our cities were stopped, did they begin again, to what, to what degrees did they begin, um, you know?
I'm sorry ma'am, you're kind of breaking up a little bit.
Yeah, I was saying, at the beginning of the pandemic, um, a lot of enforcement was stopped for, during lockdown. Um, and then we brought them back on board, can you tell us what the current state of enforcement is?
Uh, we're continuing with our enforcement, um, we're trying to, to our best to keep up with, um, the permit inspections, they are mandatory. And again, you know, we try and control the environment and the individuals that are on site that are permitted, they're, they're under the Uniform Construction Code requirements and CDC requirements, there's very, there's specific requirements for, uh, workmen, you know, on site. So we try and maintain, uh, make sure that there's, there's control of that particular environment before the officer, uh, arrives at the project. But other enforcement continues on, uh, we're still issuing citations, uh, we're still having, you know, a lot of court time. Uh, a lot of the court, uh, you know, there was multiple continuances, you know, during the, um, initial phases of the pandemic. So, uh, everything was pushed on and forward and forward, you know, later into the year. Uh, and of course, then you have, uh, uh, a lot of individuals that, that couldn't actually do anything, uh, they couldn't correct any particular violations to the COVID. So again, you know, it's just, you know, create a little bit of a bottleneck, you know, within the court system and, and, uh, increase their court time exponentially.
And did you, any of your?
Sorry, you broke, you broke up again ma'am.
Um, did you change any, any of your operations to an online system? Did anything go online so that the public doesn't actually have to come into the office to file complaints, things like that?
No, there hasn't been anything, uh, online, it's, it's been publicized, you know, in terms of, of the complaint procedures, um, uh, where to drop off permits, you know, the drop off box, um, we have a great, uh, person, you know, uh, two people within the A team that, that guide folks, you know, when they come in. But for the most part, I mean, no, there's nothing, nothing specific on the Bureau of Codes, uh, website.
Okay, and I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Majors.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, so I guess budget wise, um, it's not a, uh, a, a significant difference in, 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 in the spending allocation for, uh, codes this year, which is, uh, which is okay, but I know, um, as, uh, Councilmember Daniels had mentioned, uh, if there's anything that we can do to work with, uh, you or IT to improve some of the processes to get more things online. I think, um, especially since, you know, while there's a, a vaccine coming, um, now, we're still going to be in, uh, a heightened state of awareness with COVID, probably, uh, for the vast majority of, uh, 2021, and we want to ensure that, uh, you know, people still have access to services. So if we can work together, um, to get some more of your, uh, some of the functions online, I think that would be, uh, helpful because we are hearing a lot of folks that have, uh, issues with codes, um, and want to be able to improve, uh, that processes. Uh, I guess the only other thing, uh, when we talk about, uh, you know, we get complaints about, uh, you know, rooming houses and, and some of those, uh, types of, uh, illegal activities, uh, happening in, in the city of Harrisburg, uh, you know, with COVID. What are we doing to be able to address some of those, uh, those call outs? And, uh, how do we ensure, um, our folks remain safe and we are able?
Well, the, the complaints that we're getting, we're, we're actually getting some internal complaints, which, um, having that kind of information allows us to, commence with enforcement procedures. In fact, I was just dealing with one today, uh, up on Camp Street for individuals with an illegal rooming house. And, uh, uh, we, we just, we, we start to initiate action right away based on the information, uh, received. And one of the, the advances that, uh, has occurred in administration was part of this, was putting the complaint forms, uh, both versions online and laser fiche, that, that, that is just, uh, it's been amazing. Um, we don't have the, uh, everything sent to a central codes, uh, email address, uh, that the mayor had initiated during initial phases of the pandemic. And, uh, it, it is great, there's email addresses, I'm going back and forth with tenants that have a lot of, they're more legible and more detailed. Uh, so we can process, you know, the complaints a lot, a lot better, you know, under, under this particular system. But we are dealing with the rooming houses, you know, as we see them, it's, the, the one thing that's difficult is when there's an alleged rooming house, uh, but it's an owner occupied structure, there's a little bit more difficult to try and address, um. You know, we, we can, we can call them or something to that effect, but unless we have like that inside information, uh, that becomes a challenge to try and promote any enforcement on those types of properties.
Okay, um, and thank you, and I think the other questions I have, uh, I guess we're running that, I'll have to address with IT when we, um, get to that. Because I think there are some, uh, better synergies than we can do, and I'm glad the laser fiche is working, but I think we can get some, uh, some better web tools for you and, 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 uh, communication. I think we could, uh, improve those processes, uh, no further questions after this.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Council President.
Uh, thank you, I don't have any questions Dave, uh, Mr. Major asked a major question that I had, and that was regarding rooming houses. Of course, you and I have been in conversation as far with, uh, Chardan about those, so thank you.
I would, I would like to, to mention something, uh, uh, Madam President, yeah, I know we've had discussion, you know, along the lines of, over the vacant properties. And I'm sure you, you're aware that the tax sales are one of our most, uh, pressing problems, I mean, that's, that's where a lot of the vacant, that's where the condemned property, that's where, uh, a lot of the speculative purchasers, uh, they're vulnerable to those, those sorts of things.
Sure.
Um, having said that, um, I'm on Senator Argos' Blake Task Force, and, uh, for the last couple of years, I've been working on a tax sale reform package. I'm happy to say that, uh, Senate Bill nine, Senate Bill 940, uh, was signed into law this fall. That's one in this series of, uh, tax sale reform measures, uh, that I've been, and I, I actually architec this one. The next one is SB 775, which we're expecting action on, uh, in the spring, and I have a couple of other measures, uh, that we're promoting. And it's, um, just trying to craft some, some better language to be more effective. So I'm very excited at the direction that we're heading, uh, my goal is to install legislative filters within tax sale system. And so far, you know, with the first piece of legislation going through, everything is designed, at least, you know, the way I envisioned it was to work in tandem with each other. So I, I think this is going to have just not an effect on us, but, uh, cities across the state of Pennsylvania.
Thank you Dave, thank you for initiating that, we certainly need to put something in place to address the, uh, rooming houses because so many people are buying the properties as a single family home and converting, and we're losing out on single family homes within the city of Harrisburg. So thank you for initiating that, and keep us updated on that bill, that House bill that comes out, 775.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The third, the first measure is actually, uh, Act 101 of 2020.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's the state law that's in place right now.
Okay.
It took the, that was, you know, signed for Senate Bill 940. Uh, Senator DeSanto, I, I got him to be a co-sponsor on the, on the measure, but it seems like we have a lot of good people in our corner.
Great, thank you, thank you for all your, your work.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Alec.
Thank you, Councilmember Mattson.
Uh, thanks for a little bit of the legislative update there, um, can we coordinate with our lobbyists at all on these initiatives?
Um, no, no, actually I haven't, uh, being on the Blake Task Force for, for, for quite some time, that's where some of the, the ideas that, you know, that I come up with, uh, the first one is based on a successor liability, uh, with purchases of condemned properties. Uh, and I kind of crafted, um, so that's, that's, I think that's going to work out well as, as we approach the, uh, tax sale season, which is, uh, is next year. And I'm hoping like again in the spring, we have the other measure, because they're, they're all designed, uh, the way I have, they're designed to work with each other. So, um, I'm very enthusiastic and, and excited about it, and I, I have every confidence that, that these are, these bills are going to follow through.
Yeah, there's a way to coordinate that a little bit more, I think that'd be good, especially if we're going to get regular reports from our lobbyists, so they could update us on those bills you're working on. They could be good.
Sure.
Um, and the only other piece, I guess it's not just more of a comment, uh, one of the constituent services calls I always feel the worst about is when a constituent lives right next to a blighted property or structure, and they're getting vermin spilling into their property or structural issues, and largely the system doesn't seem to be able to move quickly, and I'm blaming this on you. Um, but that's just, just a hard thing to help because it just seems like we're rather helpless as a city to really help those constituents. I know we do codes, I often work with them on, uh, citing the property and trying to do the best we can, but still, it's frustrating for the constituent, me as well, to, to watch that process, so whatever we can do.
Yeah, it's.
You know, whatever you need to expect that process, please let me know, I really help support, again, that's one of the harder constituent issues.
Yeah, it's frustrating for us too, because, uh, our successes are very hard to come by. Uh, and that's especially true with, uh, a lot of the condemned properties, you know, where, with the owners who are out of state. Uh, and most likely those, those properties are on tax sale, and, and, um, trying to promote high fines, uh, for a tax sale property, i- i- it's not going to serve any purpose, it's, you're, you're trying to do a high fine for someone to spend $50,000 to demolish it, or $100,000 to rehab it. So, uh, we're trying to do is look, look at attacking these, these in a totally different way. We have to look at some of the properties in a totally different perspective and maybe go at it in some sort of an oblique way. Uh, the, again, you know, the high fines, they're just, they're just not gonna, they're not going to serve well. Because even when they do get high fines or if somewhere, they just get on the, the payment plans.
Yeah, and the other thing I've, oh, go ahead.
Uh, Councilman, this is Mark, uh, depending on, um, what type of issue, uh, the constituent is, is encountering, if you could send that to me, and I'll work with, uh, uh, Lily and DBHD to see if, if there's anything with home or hip that can help, especially if it's impacting their house, um, and see if there's something we can do for that. So, um, like Dave said, look at, look at these problems in, in novel fashion, and maybe there's something we can do, um, uh, using, uh, Lily's, uh, uh, war chest.
Absolutely, yeah, actually I did, we did reach out, I was, what I had asked or requested for is to see, uh, if we could remove some trash from this particular constituents, because there was some debris and trash in the yard, and it seemed like at least an olive branch of support to help them. And we coordinated and you guys were looking into it, but I'm happy to follow up on that property and seeing if we could do anything, um, with the structure next to it.
Okay.
Uh, that's it for me, thank you.
Thanks Dave, uh, Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you, I do have a few questions, and I believe I know the exact property that Councilman Mattson is speaking of, uh, we were working together on it. And quite frankly, that property needs to be demolished. It is, it is a serious, serious, um, fire hazard because it's so open, and I am, am terribly concerned that if we have, it's literally tilting, if we have a terrible winter, I don't know what will happen to those neighbors. So my questions are, um, do you anticipate any, uh, retirements within the Bureau, either at the end of this year or, um, during 2021?
No, there's, there's no one in my Bureau other than myself that's, that's, uh, retirement eligible.
Okay. Uh, my next questions, uh, refer to demolitions, I've been receiving a lot of questions relative to them lately. So I wanted to know how many properties have been condemned in the city within the last year? I believe the latest number I have is from August, and I think the estimate was about 300. So I wanted to know if anything has changed since then.
Uh, there has been an increase in some of the condemnation, and that's simply because, uh, well, we're not, not simply actually, but a lot of the properties that were a, a more of a subordinate grade of structural integrity have sort of risen to the occasion out of being, uh, stagnant. Um, so the, the number is, is a bit higher, or a little bit over 400 for total condemned properties throughout the city. As far as demolition, we've done 20 so far this year, that's one more than last. Uh, quite frankly, there weren't some of the properties that I would have rather addressed, um, but we had the, the arson situation. So that, that demanded our attention, and we, we, we're still addressing, uh, some of the fire situations, and we'll be carrying on to that into next year.
Okay, thank you, I wanted to know what qualifies the property to be added to the demolition list?
Uh, basically, it, it has to be, um, we look at the structural integrity, uh, I come up with, uh, basically, a vacant structure grading system from one to five, one being, being the worst, and that's in the opinion of the inspecting officer, they're looking at the foundation or looking at the walls of, uh, what they can see, you know, from the roof system, and just all around the property itself. That would dictate where they place that as far as grade one and grade two, the properties, those are the two, uh, vacant structure gradings that, that we put on the, the demolition list that we, we hope to demolish. Some of the, the classifications threes, um, they're, they're properties that, that can still be rehabbed. You know, they're, they're simply, they're, they're bored, and they do have structural deterioration, uh, but they haven't risen to that level where it requires any kind of, uh, immediate attention as far as this demolition.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question regarding demolitions was relative to how the COVID-19 pandemic impacted the city's demolition list, but you did answer that with the 20 that were completed this year.
Yes, it's one more than last year.
Right. Now, my next line of questioning is relative to tenant and landlord complaints. In some of the responses that we received prior to tonight's hearing, you noted that there were very few tenant landlord complaints that have been received this year.
Yes.
Curious to know if you can surmise any idea of what may have caused the lower volume? Could it be that tenants, it's a fear they're, they're afraid to make these complaints? Or do you believe that it is a process issue and they just don't know how to do it? They're not aware that they can? If you could just speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Quite frankly, I am surprised. I thought we would get more, more than we have. The tenant landlords are taking advantage of the laser fee system and sending them to me. And I've been dealing actually a lot with myself. You know, I've been calling, and I've had a tremendous response from the management companies and some of the landlords. And fortunately, with the, with the email there, I can go back forth with both tenant and management company. And I do get updates, you know, I have been getting updates. I'm very surprised. And whether it's just me calling, maybe it adds more weight. I don't know. But as long as we get it resolved, that's, that's really all that's important. But I'm not finding anybody that's, that's, doesn't know how to file a particular complaint. So they do call and we direct them. And of course, it's on, it's right on the very front page of the Bureau of Code's website.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Green.
I really don't have many questions. Most of them have been answered. But I know a lot of people that I've talked to don't really understand the process of filing a complaint and what happens afterwards in the follow-up. So would you be able to explain the process of how they would file a complaint and then what happens after the complaint is filed?
Well, actually, you know, they knew how to file the complaints. And actually, with that, if you, you can look for yourself on the website, I do have the travel path it takes. I have this precise way that their complaint is processed. Everything from the filing the complaint to the citation process. That's, that's the same with the property maintenance. I have specific detailed how, how everything proceeds, you know, from that. But it's, it's basically, you know, with, as like anything else, there's always the notification. We have to comply with the rules of criminal procedure with a notification and ultimately the citation. And yeah, sometimes it, it takes a while as it travels through the judicial system. So nothing is, is quick. If I can resolve something with a phone call, that's actually the way I like to go. It's fortunately, we've been getting some good responses, you know, just that specific with the tenant landlord, not, not so much with the the regular property maintenance code complaints.
All right. That's available on the website as far as the path it travels?
Yes, yes, it is.
All right.
When they print it out, that path is printed out along with, with the complaint.
All right. Could you just humor me a little and give me like the basic process? So they file the complaint, and then it goes to your office, and then is the homeowner notified? Just like the basic process, I understand. Just for those who are listening.
Sure. They file the complaint, it's entered into our database, and I sign it to an inspector that's assigned to that particular zone. They investigate the complaint. And sometimes, depending on if it's really egregious, say if it's high grass and weeds, it's over 18 inches or a lot of debris or something that we can do, we have the instant citation powers with that. Other than that, we have to follow the formal notification process. And it's all based on the nature of the situation, how much time we'll give to respond. We have to do both regular and certified mail. And then after, after that all happens, that we can elevate to the citation. And then that's where it gets a little, it gets a little murky because depending on where the, the individual lives, they can, you know, like, like a traffic ticket, they can have to enter a plea of guilty or not guilty. If not guilty, then it prompts a hearing, and we go through the hearing. If it's guilty, they can, the DJ will put the, end up getting paid through the mail. We have to try and track that, maybe issue an additional citation. If it's someplace out, out of town, out of state, and we actually have people out of country, it's not going to see a courtroom. In fact, it's going to go to warrant. And we do have a lot of warrants in the system throughout for, for codes, codes violations. They're just not on the top, you know, hierarchy of crimes. The constables in the DJs, within the DJs that are elected there, they're supposed to be calling out and serving a lot of these warrants.
All right, thank you. And then just out of curiosity, if I was going to move into a property, and I wanted to know if there had been a lot of previous citations for that property, would I, would I have access to that information? Or how would someone go about finding that out?
We get those pretty much, not, not all the time, but we have a right to know request. And you generally process them the same day. But they're, they're just pretty much standard stuff. They want to know what, what the history is of the property. So, you know, something like that, you know, it can be a response. I don't provide anything that's confidential. But simply, you know, what the violation was, if there's a rental inspection, you know, that was done there or something along those lines. But that, that doesn't really present a problem. And, you know, again, I generally process it the same day I get them.
All right. Those are the only questions I have. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Asha. And thanks, Dave, for being here tonight.
Sure.
So believe it or not, we got through public safety three and a half hours later. Just a kind of few kind of housekeeping items to kind of be looking at over, you know, the next, you know, few days. You know, as you know, in the past, when we've made amendments, we've, they've all come from me, and I've made individual amendments that people would like to make for the budget. I'd like to proceed in that same vein, you know, going forward. That way, if there's specific amendments that we can make, I will want to run them by Neil in legal to make sure we've continued to make the budget balanced and the amendments that we're making. So your ability to get the amendments to me sooner than later is a positive thing. But we will put up the amendments one by one for a up or down vote on that, that amendment. And then obviously, if it gets a affirmative vote, that will be attached to an amendment onto the budget. Now, in terms of follow-up questions, I know that most likely anybody, everybody probably did not get a chance unless they were doing double duty, as many of us have been trying to do tonight, review the answer to the questions that the administration submitted earlier. If there's any follow-up or just more information you know you want from the administration, let me know now. We can request that. I know for myself, Mayor, the, the two things I want to kind of be able to perhaps get sent to us ahead of time tomorrow pertaining specifically to the capital improvement plan, because I know we wanted to get to that a little bit tonight, but I think it might be more efficient tomorrow. If we look at a list of the capital, capital projects in 2021, the expenditure associated with them, and the date of which we anticipate that draw of that capital expense to go, I think that would be helpful to kind of echo my earliest point in the evening about looking at the timeline of events and expenditures that we're looking at in 2021. The second thing that had come up tonight, I think Wes brought it up, and it's something that I had often come around to every year, we would talk about the budget, is the way that we have structured the personnel line items in the budget and how we've allocated for the positions basically for the entire year. In years past, we have taken the excess funds that have been allocated and not used for personnel in that quarter, and we have allocated it to that service. I would like us to have some ideas of what we should be doing with those excess funds at a quarter, when the quarter expires, if they exist, and what we would be applying them to. I think that Wes brought up a very good point about any type of social services, any type of community related projects, things that could be tangible and things that we could do. Would be really helpful because we know already that we are not going to hire everybody from day one, and particularly after Q1, we will have some excess personnel funds that we will use and apply. So there's a few things I just wanted to kind of highlight in light of preparations for tomorrow. Did anyone have a follow-up questions based on the questions submitted that we need to request for additional information or things that we know of right now that they wanted to kind of bring up? I'll do a show of hands just because I know everyone's, I can see everybody right now, I think, except for Shamin. Anything from anybody else?
And you probably went over this a little bit, but I guess there's a lot to digest and unpack here, and I definitely have some things I would consider for an amendment. I guess, what's the timeframe to get that to use it ASAP? Or do we have another day or two to process it? Because I would like to sidebar with a few of you on some of these topics, given it regards, it's in your committee.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say the sooner the later. I mean, it, it's gonna, I mean, we know it's budget season, we are going to have to sit down and kind of, you know, work it out and have the conversations. And I mean, at the conclusion of tomorrow night, I mean, the big question that we will have to ask ourselves, are we comfortable putting the budget forward for that vote on, on Thursday? We know that that's a date we've set aside, but I'm a realist to know that I want to make sure that we are all in at least accord to say we can do this or we can't do this, and what we still need. So if there are things that you're thinking about, yes, I would say let's bring them to the forefront of conversation so we can talk about it. Whether you want to send an email, send a text to the appropriate person and have some, that's fine. I'm not, I'm open to whatever means, you know, it's necessary. But I would say let's not wait till Thursday to say, you know, I kind of wanted to do this with the budget. Let's make sure we've had some ability to kind of discuss it. And I, I, I knew when we were doing this, that tonight would be our big night with public safety. I knew that would be a significant portion of the budget. I do not anticipate us to have, spend as much time in other areas because in many cases, there are not that many huge substantive, substantive changes to it. So not saying that we're going to blow through it. But again, you know, I just, I realized, I knew tonight would be the night that we'd spend a significant amount of time on public safety. So you know, if there's things that you guys are thinking about, absolutely, let's, you know, share it around. You know, this is a budget that is passed by a majority, right? So at the end of the day, you know, we need to have some sense of coalescing around the things that we know are important and that we, that we care about. So that's just something to keep in mind for that. But yeah, if we, again, we're going to go through this, we're going to go through this exercise tomorrow night, we'll hang in there and do it again, too. So any other questions right now that we want to put forth to the administration to think about in terms of preparation tomorrow? And Mayor, just in terms of planning, I think we'll pick up again, with just a quick review of any of those outstanding questions to start the evening tomorrow night. And then we will go right into the departmental related areas. Is that, is that suffice for your perspective? Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Any other questions from a council member perspective? Because I know we have public comments tonight to get to as well.
Just general, just a general, could Neil go over the parameters for making amendments? I remember there's a simple, there's, if there's a change in a certain amount, there you recount.
I, I could do that better tomorrow night. I had not prepared for that tonight. But there is a difference based on percentage of changes of how you have to vote and how you have to advertise.
And I, I'll get.
10% beyond the, the budget. Isn't it 10%?
10%, right.
10%, but then, and that creates an advertising requirement. And I forget how long that advertisement is, so.
So I knew that 10% existed. Any other questions right now to wrap up? What are you giggling about, Wanda? Wanda's just staying overnight at City Hall.
Kirk is texting me.
All right, let's, if, Chardan, you ready to move forward with the public comment?
That's fine.
All right, let's roll.
Give me a second. Okay, the first comment is from Beck Joyner. She said, greetings. My name is Beck Joyner, 3118 North Fifth Street. And here are my comments with regard to the 2020 comp plan. Thank you for follow, for allowing public feedback in the process. The comment below refers to points LU 26 through LU 28. LU 28 planned for the Division Street corridor, which which presents an opportunity to consider the revitalization of the Uptown Plaza Shopping Center and the commercial area to the north. LU 27 prepare an area plan for the Division Street corridor incorporating Uptown Maker Space and Division Street Uptown Village. LU 28 commission a McClay Street corridor study and include the Minnick Street Maker Space area coordinating with the Camp Curtain area plan and the Division Street Wildwood corridor. I'd like to see an initiative to apply for a DCED Elm Street community designation, the first step of which would be to create a 15 to 20 member planning committee to work with the residents to create a small area plan that would be centered around the North Sixth Street corridor between Division and McClay Street. There is a great opportunity here for Uptown Maker Space as part of an entire live, work, play plan for this corridor, as well as the heavily blighted camper in neighborhood. Our SAP planning approach, our SAP planning approach needs to be one that is based on an asset-based community development, ABCD plan, building from the strongest points in the community, i.e. starting in the most desirable areas and working out from there. Key organizations such as Tri-County Community Action, Tri-County Housing, Habitat for Humanity, the Camp Curtain YMCA, the CC Neighborhood Group, the Housing Authority, and the Redevelopment Authority, and any organization that has an interest in creating transitional and/or supportive housing should also be invited to join in this planning effort. The Uptown area, area can be a great opportunity to adapt and reuse existing buildings, thereby renovating them for non-traditional housing forms such as missing middle forms of housing and cohousing. Although I believe the priority needs to be on saving existing blighted structures before they deteriorate to the point of no return, there is opportunity for new buildings to increase the supply of in-demand but undersupplied housing such as ABA compliant homes, or perhaps even tiny homes and mid-rise buildings of studio and one-bedroom apartments. Many other items suggested on the 2020 comp plan can be folded into an Elm Street community plan. Small plan for Uptown. The Elm Street plan has five major design components that must be satisfied as part of the application and acceptance process. I've included some of the items from the new comp plan underneath, new comp plan underneath these five Elm Street components to provide some examples. The five Elm Street components are bolded with the comp plan items listed below. Number one is sustainable organization, develops plans and strategy and coordinates projects and people, determines highest and best new use of existing building zones, blocks. And she references LU 67, coordinate with the school district to establish a database of all surplus school facilities and develop a plan to identify opportunities for existing building stock reuse or redevelopment. LU 72 explore coverage of affordable medical services in the city and promote the establishment of new facilities at designated multi, multimodal hubs and neighborhoods throughout the city. LU 76 evaluate senior center, senior center distribution throughout the city and coordinate with senior housing and service providers to promote accessibility for all neighborhoods. LU 77, consider the co-location of senior centers with children and youth facilities. H 21 is achieve a mix of housing types that are attractive, affordable, and accessible to a diversity of ages, incomes, household types, household sizes, and cultural backgrounds. Two is neighbors and economy, partners with all groups, including government, churches, nonprofits, housing, and blight job programs, community programs. She references for this point LU 55, which is to develop an activity program plan for city government facilities embracing building as centers for the community rather than strictly administrative functions. LU 82 is to forward shared commercial kitchen co-location with other food distribution centers. HC 22 develop clear, consistent, and flexible guidelines for public art that facilitates incorporation within the community. H 12, support and promote programs offered by the city and its housing partners that provide homebuyer slash owner counseling, down payment assistance, and help how owner, homeowners conduct home improvement and maintenance. H 6, identify options for better access to mortgages through loan pools focused on non-traditional mortgages. The next is three is image and identity, neighborhood events, rebranding, external communication, PR, and social media. She references H 32, prioritize any public subsidy. She references H 32, prioritize any public subsidies toward activities that will make genuinely transformative impacts. And then the next bullet point four is urban design, neighborhood appearance, vacant lots, infill zoning, and planning code enforcement. LU two, adoptively reuse former industrial commercial areas as flexible creative spaces, incubator zones. LU five, commission market studies defining short, medium, and long-term absorption of commercial office space, retail hospitality, and housing within the city. LU 50, explore land use changes that facilitate the accommodation of research, product development, and small business generation. Five, clean, safe, and green lighting trash block watch program, street beautification, and public art, tree planting, and stormwater management. Under this particular bullet point, she references LU 31, plan and impact a system of green and civic space in the Camp Curtain neighborhood. PLC 43 require bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and green stormwater management strategies to be employed along McClay Street. LU 60 establish a network of police substations presence throughout the city and several mobile stations to better integrate essential public safety and administrative services into the city's communities. LU 84 organize personal and community gardens to establish small neighborhood farmers markets throughout the city to increase access to fresh, healthy food. Other items of note that would enhance the plan would be to develop, sorry, to develop with the appropriate partners a work-based training around the construction trades, incentivize developers and construction companies to hire the new trainees when they do housing rehabs in the city of Harrisburg. Freeze or cap rate of increase of property taxes for homeowners on a fixed income to ensure they do not lose their homes due to an inability to pay taxes. Strengthen and streamline existing codes and laws so that there is a more expeditious process of removing blighted properties from the ownership of negligent owners and placing it in a community land bank for future redevelopment. Incentivize forfeiture of such property owner can donate and have all tax debt wiped out. And um, again, that is from Beck Joyner. The next comment is from Winnie O. Um, she says, to whom it may concern, I am writing regarding the pending Harrisburg comprehensive plant, plan to be implemented. We've hardly had any effective engagement via official channels. There has been minimal communication thus far regarding timelines and implementation procedures, and it is not okay. We deserve better engagement and equitable representation throughout this process. Please see below for detailed comments. Overall community requests, we need clear guidelines on the milestone from public engagement and commenting period to final decisions of approval to implementation timeline. We need additional time to review the plan. HC PCWG, not sure what that stands for, just finished their review. An additional time would be great to give folks a real chance to construct relevant responses to each section presented and to the overall document. It consideration, conduct a John Harrison SciTech Combined Project Based Learning Initiative facilitated by HC PCWG or similar community group prior to making a final decision. It's imperative to get students and younger folks involved in practical civic engagement. Prior to approval, we'd like to see a detailed breakdown of the representation of community engagement and participation throughout this process with the Planning Commission and City Council. Community participation data analytic, analytics reviews, comments by sections, land use. What process of accountability are in place to ensure that the new development is implemented in an equitable manner and does not disenfranchise existing demographics even further? Housing, we'd like to see more affordable housing options, a better mixture, variety of housing options, better long-term property value retention throughout the city. Mobility and access, areas of concern, insufficient bike racks, vision zero, rethinking safety, specifically call out racism and ethnicity bias that affects fatality rates and types on our roadways. Arrested mobility and healthy corridors, healthy corridors, recycle bicycles, health and wellness matters and bicycling scooters, non-motorized mobility. Policies, address contextual, contextual community needs, marijuana legalization implications to black and brown folks. Pop, uh, excuse me, policing, stop and frisk-like implications. Safety across your demo, user demographics, women, kids, elderly, black, brown people. Effective and efficient mass transit, connecting people, how, when, where, inclusive of ADA, atypical users. Inclusive access to smart mobility options, differently abled folks. Economic development, we need to see better mechanisms of support for existing businesses, expect especially small and minority-owned businesses, particularly by black and brown residents. Create policies that encourage innovation and entrepreneurship throughout the city, not just in certain pockets. Engage with the education system to encourage entrepreneurship. Park open and civil spaces and historic and cultural resources. We need to see better representation of Harrisburg's true and robust history in the available and accessible monuments, public spaces, and educational environments. Energy and utilities, we need more options for utility usage, break up the monopolies. Let's rethink the energy grid system, micro grids. Internet access is no longer a luxury but a utility that directly affects access to education, entrepreneurship, innovation, and quality of life. A thriving Harrisburg requires all citizens to have access to internet. Let's make this a reality, reality. Implementation and integ, and integration, we need clear guidelines on the implementation of this plan. There has been minimal, if any, engagement by the City Council Commission on this plan. This is a heavy document to expect the community to digest individually. HC PCWG has been doing the work and bridging the team, and we are yet to hear much from the official channels. When will true community engagement begin? Hello, oh, okay. Uh, thank you for your timely consideration and anticipated response actions. And that is Winnie O'Kellyo.
Sorry, may I interrupt you for a second? Since this was the budget hearing, are there any public comments specifically pertaining to the budget?
I'd have to honestly sit here and go through all of them. Um, there's events ideas for December. Let's see, please contract access and rest to push. Um, yeah, there are a few, but I'd have to, if you have to bear with me, I'd have to weed them out.
I would like to, not because it's moved that hand and the, uh, any comments outside of the budget, I think we can either read into record at our legislative session or something. And is there any, Neil, any guidance on that?
Yeah, I think there's two different things going on here. They're providing written comments, which were requested on the comp plan. They're not the same as the comments for the meeting. They're for council to consider and submit with the record on the comp plan. So the two are getting conflated right now.
Yeah, that's what, so.
So you don't have to read the ones that are the comp plan tonight. They go into the official record when you have hearings on the comp plan. You have to have public hearings down the road.
Okay.
Yeah, and and Shad, sorry, uh, would you mind forwarding me all the comments that are regarding to the comprehensive plan?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
All members of council, yeah.
All members, excuse me.
Okay, okay.
All members of council will get a copy of that.
Thank you. And you may want to think about setting up a different email for the comp plan comments, just for practical purposes.
Okay, thank you, Neil.
Sure.
Okay, um, so this comment is specifically to the budget is from Brandon Bosom. Uh, 3,000 block, uh, 300 block of North Third Street. Um, he says, I am writing again to call for the city to make a public, to make public its contract with the Harrisburg Bureau of Police. It is outstanding and unprofessional that this has been kept from the residents at large this long. I also call on the city to provide time and transpare, transparency so that the residents can see where our money is to be spent. What is the city and HBP trying to hide? Is the expectation that a new contract will be negotiated and approved without the input and consent of the people of Harrisburg? That the police will be given another $3 million when they should have unspent funds from the open positions they claim to be unable to fill? It is tone deaf to increase police budgets when the conversation has been about defunding police forces in order to invest in services that benefit the community. For all the talk by city officials of wanting our engagement and help, there doesn't seem to be much desire to give us what we need to do either of those things. And that is from Brandon Bosom. Um, give me one second. Um, there's another one here from uh Brennan K. She says, hello, concerned citizen here. It is an absolute disgrace from this city and administration to think that they can ram through a budget with a completely unnecessary $3 million increase in police funding with all of the three days or so for public comment. The budget process must be extended until at least December 29th so that citizens whom the budget ultimately affects have their fair say. If this will of the people is not heated, there will be consequences for democracy and consequences for this administration. Papenfoos is fired. Um, this is a public comment, um, I gotta breeze it. Okay, yes, here's another one um in regards to um budget. Dear City Council Members, my name is Amanda Arbor, and I live on Allison Hill. Presenting the city's budget days before a holiday, holding a hearing tonight, and anticipating a vote this Thursday feels like an attempt to push this budget through without meaningful public input. Even if that's how it's always been done, how it's always been done needs to change so that there's time for us to tell you how our tax dollars should be spent. I am appalled that the mayor is proposing nearly $3 million more for the police. Um, let's see, 21,696,000, wait, 21,696 million that what they actually spent last year, which is 18.834 million. Over 1 million of this would go towards the largest creation of new positions all at once that we've seen at the city of Harrisburg. As the mayor said during his budget presentation, drastically, drastically expanding the police department, they may be primarily civilian positions, but within the police department, they would still uphold and carry out the violent and racist work of policing. The mayor claims that this is based on listening to the public and the feedback that we received. But if he had actually been listening, he would know that this is not what the people of Harrisburg want. We want more funds for the police department or more people hired to enforce their agenda. We want more, we, excuse me, we don't want more funds for the, the police department or more people hired to enforce their agenda. We want more basic services to meet the needs of our communities. If I were allocating $3 million, I would spend it on housing. I would fi, fund community organizations through the Capital Area Coalition of Homelessness, CASH, which have a proven track record in meeting housing needs. I would pay off all eviction judgment amounts in the city since the September 1st momentorium expired, all undecided open claims, and six months of full rent for all tenants who have had an eviction filed against them. I would invest and incentivize the development of affordable housing and provide incentives and support for city residents, not developers, to buy and rehab properties. $3 million can make a real impact on housing in the city of Harrisburg, so let's do it. Finally, remember that for months, community members have been demanding data and transparency from the police department, including posting ratio and other demographic data on stops, arrests, and charges, aggregate data on use of force reports and citizens' complaints, public documents and department statistics online. We have yet to see any of this information. So ask yourselves, what data is driving your decision to approve or not approve this drastic increase? If there's no data, there should be no more dollars. In conclusion, I urge you to, one, reschedule the vote on this budget for at least another week. And if it is brought up for a vote this Thursday, to vote no. Two, amend the budget to flat fund the Harrisburg Police Department at their 2019 actual number and reallocate the nearly $3 million above that to community housing services. Three, not allocate any additional funds to the Harrisburg Police Department until they provide the data that the community has been demanding for months. No data, no dollars. After-school program, community centers, safe supportive spaces for youth, accessibility and mobility infrastructure, repairing potholes, fixing sidewalks, and ensuring that there are ramps expanding public transit, et cetera. Public health infrastructure, setting up COVID testing sites in the city and other public health measures. And that's it for that comment. And I'm sorry, it looks like she sent in a, a corrected one to continue on, on. But it looks like it's the same thing. Um, let's see, proposed budget increase, okay. Um, this is from Meg Rammey, a Midtown resident. She said, dear City Council, I just heard that the mayor is proposing a uh 2.862 million dollar increase from the Bureau of Police's 2019 budget without providing any data to justify these increases. I would strongly urge you to not approve this increase. What our city needs more is affordable housing, assistance to those who are unemployed due to go COVID, investment in the city's aging infrastructure, after-school programs for children, and support for mental health in those struggling with addiction, just to name a few programs that should take precedence over any increases to police budgets. There are other entities that, entities that can perform many of the police's duties better and with less racial bias than the police to do them. Please give our tax dollars to other programs that will benefit the community more. This comment is from Allison Work. And she said, dear City Council, I respectfully ask that you read my comment in its entirety. This is not a template, these are my personal comments. The residents of our city deserve and demand more transparency on the 2021 budget, especially when there is currently no information or clarity being provided to us on why the Bureau of Police would be receiving a nearly $3 million increase in their budget for 2021. The residents of this city deserve and demand that more time be allotted for our voices and wishes to be heard, considered deeply, and for sound changes and adjustments to be made for this budget. As a resident of this city, I see a dire need for our tax dollars to impact our communities in a much different and healthier way. Incentivizing the development of affordable housing, there aren't enough affordable options for families. Expanding COVID testing centers, we're, will be dealing with the pandemic well into 2021. Help stop the spread by allowing more people to get tested. Invest in our schools, our teachers and students deserve more from us. Provide financial support for various programs, after-school programs. Compensate our teachers better with higher salaries and better benefits and pour time, money, and resources into creating a stabiling, a stable learning environment amid the pandemic, whether it is online, in person, or a high, or hybrid, or both. These are so many, these and so many other issues, needs and needs are far worthier of that than nearly $3 million. I do not want that big of an increase going to the Bureau of Police. I want it allocated to the above needs. I do not see a need for our police to have that much of an increase. With Chief Carter himself at a town hall meeting that in the summer, said they consistently have a significant amount of money left over in their budget every year. They need to adjust their budget, not increase it. Do not pass the 2021 Harrisburg City Budget as it is without first hearing from us, city residents who want to make changes to it so we get what we need. You legally have until December 31st to pass it. Don't rush this. Thank you for your time and commitment to our city and its future. And um, she's of the Green Street area. Uh, we have another comment from Becca Smith. Becca Smith says, please read again this comment in its entirety. Um, on November 24th, Mayor Papenfoos presented his proposed budget, 2021 budget for the city of Harrisburg, which included 21.696 million dollars for the Bureau of Police. This is a 2.862 million dollar increase from what the Bureau of Police actually spent in 2019. The community demands to have more time to review this budget. The current system is not working for the collective people. We must first complete data collection and analysis to learn why before we begin implementing further policing. The proposed budget is trying to fix a problem that isn't fully defined. I demand that HBD begins collecting demographic data on all calls and arrests. Further, I demand that this information be collected and shared in a manner that is easily accessible to all community members. Stop making decisions for us, make decisions with us. We, the citizens of Harrisburg overwhelmingly agree. We, the citizens of Harrisburg overwhelmingly agree that housing needs to be a priority. Instead of investing further funds into HPD, please support our families by helping them stay in their homes. Utilize the two point eight, six, two million dollars to provide emergency housing and utility assistance and affordable housing. Encourage native people to stay and build the city, not developers. Our current population needs to be priority. Uh, we know that the holidays are coming. We still demand transparency and fairness for our budget. You have until December thirty first to pass this budget. No data, no dollars. There is nothing to provide that these drastic measures and bloated increase in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. The city's history of rushing budgets through without input from the community must end. We demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time. And just put a zip code of one, seven, one, zero, two. Um, this is from Duke Adams. I am writing a relation to the unprecedented increase to the Harrisburg budget for police. More police does not help our people in need, our infrastructure, our homeless problem. A greater show of police strength is not what is needed to foster a safe community. Social services that help people instead of incarcerate people is a better approach. People are suffering economically and mentally. Life is difficult. COVID has only exasperated the challenges we face daily. Why not grow public programs that help people get out of situations that lead to delinquent actions, drugs, and crime? Programs that put people on a road to improve mental health and financial stability so they can be participating members of our community. More police presence will only worsen the idea of the police state we have been experiencing. It will likely lead to increased ratio inequities. The time for new ideas and approaches is now. Stop throwing money at old concepts that have no place in a growing and improving world. There is nothing to improve that the, there is nothing to prove that these drastic measures and bloated increase in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. The city's history of rushing budgets through will input from the, without input from the community must end. We demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time. We know that the holidays are coming. We still demand transparency and fairness for our budget. The city has until December thirty first to pass this budget. Please listen to the community as this important decision is deliberated, deliberated, excuse me, and he is on the seventeen hundred block of Penn Street. Um, this one is from Patricia Stringer. Please bring to the attention of Erin Johnson, uh, Director of Public Works and West Major's Public Works Chair so that funds can be provided for the following in the twenty twenty one city of Harrisburg budget. Four blue and white street signs needed, needed a twenty first and Kensington Street and twenty second and Kensington to identif- to identify streets. This has been requested for four years, but nothing has been done. Street signs, residents have received one wrong address packages left by UPS and Federal Express. Two, food delivery meant for surrounding streets of Swaterra and Berry Hill. Three, repair and servicemen and cat share a ride have had difficulty locating the street with no street signs. Four, even Harrisburg Bureau of Police have an officer on Kensington Street when he should have been on Swaterra Street looking to locate a residence. Five, in case of fire, electrical, gas, medical emergency, or snow removal, our street needs to be identified. Um, and the second is McLeister Street between Kensington Street and Swaterra Streets need paved and potholes filled the twenty hun- hundred block to twenty two hundred block. Lastly, those standards round trap, those standard brown trash containers purchased by the city of Harrisburg have split and cracked lids and water comes in, into the containers after it rains. It needs replaced. Has this been factored into the budget? And that is Patricia Stringer of Kensington Street. And then this one is from Pierre McCoy. Overall, I would like to thank City Council and the mayor's office for doing a good job of running the city, especially considering the challenges we face. I have questions as it relates to the parking system in regards to the budget as it represents a major revenue category for the city. One, in twenty eighteen, the city entered into a settlement agreement with PEDFA, Dolphin County AGM, PK Harris, HPA, in which the city slash HPA gave up priority distribution payments accruals in future years. In other words, any payments owed to the city, HPA used to be rolled over forward until they could be paid. But now are gone if the money is not available in the calendar year. This appears to encumber the proposed budget by over a million dollars and essentially reduces the amount of money the cities agreed, a city agreed to when leasing the system. Was City Council aware of this agreement? And if so, was there a public comment and vote? How is the city planning on making up for these revenues? Two, according to the CDM Smith Parking Report, April, of April twenty twenty, on-street metered parking spots have increased by about a hundred spots, while permit parking has been reduced and will continue to be reduced based on proposed roadwork. The City Council have plans to make up for those lost permit spots as they provide income and help residents. And three, the proposed budget has an increase of two parking enforcement. Um, and one, one position, two parking enforcement positions, excuse me. Um, are the revenue from these positions collected, collecting any revenue for the parking system? Or does a hundred percent of the revenue go to the city? Would City Council, city, the city consider operating the parking system to reduce costs to the system and increase revenue to the city? And then this is a comment. Uh, a review of the CDM Smith Parking Facilities Conditions Report for twenty nineteen noted. However, some significant structural deterioration was noted at Locust Street, this street, Seventh Street, South Street, and Market Square, which if not properly addressed in the near future will lead to serious structural issues. Additional detailed structure assessments and evaluations are required and customized repairs will likely be needed on page one of this document. These structural issues are potential dangers, both in terms of physical damage, but also revenue for the city, as well as any required bond payment by Dolphin County. The Parking Advisory Committee has not met in over a year and very little information is being provided to citizens and perhaps to elected officials. I ask that you become more proactive in overseeing the parking system as bad management on the part of out-of-state operators and managers have reduced revenue to the city. If this continues, the parking system will have to raise rates to unsustainable levels that will impact small Harrisburg businesses and the residents that work there. Thank you for your time and your service to the city, Pierre McCoy, and it's the twenty six hundred block of Fifth Street. This is from Rachel Goode. She said, dear City Council, we are now ten months into a devastating global pandemic that has impacted all of us. COVID nineteen has caused massive damage to our economy and that impact is not abstract. Community members, especially those who are already disadvantaged, have lost income, jobs, and lives as agencies and institutions have failed to prevent this disaster from worsening. Public health experts recognize that keeping people in their homes and specifically preventing their eviction is key to reducing the spread and impact of COVID nineteen. To address the, this eviction moratorium have been in place at federal, state, and local levels on and off since March. Since Pennsylvania ended its statewide moratorium on August thirty first, our five, over five hundred eviction judgments have been handed down, impacting an estimated one thousand two hundred and twenty-five people in the city of Harrisburg. Many of these evictions have been processed in spite of the existence of a nationwide eviction moratorium for the CDC. Unfortunately, this moratorium expires at the end of December. On the first day of twenty twenty one, city residents are set to wake up with very little to protect them from being evicted during the coldest time of the year. Mayor Papen Foose's budget proposal does not en- does not do enough to address the reality of this crisis. Instead of focusing on critical needs of the most vulnerable citizens, the mayor proposes a massive investment into the city's police borough. He indicates that residents are looking for public safety and is surely convinced that his proposal is the best strategy. We reject, we reject the premise that police are the primary purveyors of public safety. The public is safest when people have access to adequate and affordable, affordable housing, as well as critical resources like food, healthcare, and education. Allowing people to be evicted from their homes during a pandemic creates massive community instability and increased risk of disease transmission. Even a portion of that two point eight million dollars would go a long way toward addressing these needs. In addition to these specific concerns with the budget proposal, we are also concerned about the speed of this process. Although the current review timeframe is similar to that of prior years, two issues illustrate the necessity of extending the time for review and a vote. First, Pennsylvania law requires public hearings in the month of November on the content of department budget priorities, which either did not occur or have not been made public. Second, due to the COVID nineteen crisis and the significant investing being provoked, proposed, the stakes are higher than in a normal year. In order for these and other concerns to be reviewed and discussed, we ask the City Council extend the vote until the end of December and schedule additional public forums. Uh, this question is from Matthew Kossick. He says, the idea of the city increasing the police budget while hundreds of city residents face eviction due to loss of work from COVID nineteen is obscene. It reeks of the political elite of the city making sure to pad the pockets of the occupiers who will inevitably be dealing with the increase of houseless folks on our streets. This city is not a prison. We did not sign any social contract agreeing to live in one. We want to see actual community needs funded and not the occupying police force. I also want to say that the idea of community policing with the implementation of civilian positions in the department is a red herring intended to appease the gentrifying class of the city while functionally increasing the amount of police presence in our communities. We don't want cops dressed up as social workers. We want actual social workers. We don't want people that will engender trust turn around and slap cuffs on you, um, to then turn around and slap cuffs on you, excuse me. He the people's call, stop increasing funding for police to brutality crackdown on the symptoms of all failing society and begin to actually address the root causes of violence, poverty, and instability. Begin addressing the material inequality of the people, defund the police, and refund the people. Matthew Kossick. Uh, this is from Deborah Neth- Netha Ziger, Netha Zeiger. Um, dear City Council, I am writing today in regards to the House, Harrisburg City Budget Proposal. On November twenty fourth, Mayor Papen Foose proposed the Harrisburg City twenty twenty one budget including twenty one point six nine, six million dollars for the Bureau of Police. This is a two point eight, six, two million dollar increase from what the Bureau of Police actually spent in twenty nineteen. This is also the largest increase in Harrisburg's history. The community demands to have more time to review this budget. Specifically, I demand the City Council not approve the proposed budget as currently written and instead provide more time for City Council and the community to review the budget and provide comments and changes reflecting the community's need, community's needs because despite years of demands for city residents for transparency and data from the mayor and HPD, the police department and mayor have not provided this. The mayor and HPD need to prove that they are not implementing policies with racist outcomes in the communities they serve before they receive budget increases. Excuse me. Harrisburg residents are demanding access to public services. Hang on a second, I have to cough. My apologies. Harrisburg residents are demanding access to public services, housing, and community initiatives, not more policing. During a pandemic, it is inhumane and cruel to continue evictions and to ignore the massive number of Harrisburg residents who do not have homes. Use the proposed three million dollars to increase to expand rental assistance provided by community organizations, to halt evictions during the pandemic, and to incentivize affordable housing development. Other major needs in the community include after-school programs and community centers, accessibility and mobility infrastructure such as expanding public transportation, fixing potholes and building ramps, and providing public health services such as COVID testing sites in the city of Harrisburg. City residents are demanding transparency, transparency, and fairness for the Harrisburg's budget. City Council has until December thirty first to pass the budget, so please extend the process until then. There is no data to prove that increasing police budgets will improve public safety and HPD should not receive an increase without data to back it up. Additionally, Harrisburg's history of rushing budgets through without input from the community must end. Finally, we demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time. And then there's a comment from, is it Eli or Ely, Ely Taylor? Dear City Council, please read this comment in its entirety. Um, again, on November twenty fourth, Mayor Papen Foose presented his proposed twenty twenty one budget. Um, this is the same exact comment. Um, but I guess since she asked me to read it in its entirety, that's what I'll do. On November twenty fourth, Mayor Papen Foose presented his proposed twenty twenty one budget for the city of Harrisburg, which includes twenty one point six nine, six million dollars for the Bureau of Police. This is a two point eight, six, two million dollar increase from what the Bureau of Police actually spent in twenty nineteen. This is also the largest increase in Harrisburg's history. The community demands to have more time to review this budget. Why, we are nine months into a pandemic with no clear end in sight. People in the community need assistance with housing payments. We need six months of rental relief for all affected tenants, supportive services for section eight recipients, and vacate, vacating eviction judgments against Harrisburg residents. We know that the holidays are coming. We still demand transparency and fairness for our budget. You have until December thirty first to pass this budget. No data, no dollars. There is nothing to prove that these drastic measures and bloated increases in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. The city's history of rushing budgets through without input from the community must end. We demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time. And that sincerely, um, I'm sorry, this looks like it's from Gabe Taylor. My apologies, Gabe Taylor of the Midtown area. And looks like the next one is from Alex Domingos. Uh, dear Harrisburg City Council Members, I am writing to urge you all to vote no on Mayor Papen Foose's proposed budget increase for the Harrisburg Police Department. You all have sat in meetings and had private conversations with citizens that have been negatively impacted by HPD or fear that they or their loved ones may be. Your proposed new Director of Community Relations has publicly admitted that there is a culture problem in HPD and that he has been concerned by the actions of employees of HPD. While the mayor may believe that the key building trust between the police and the community is hiring more employees, the real way to build trust is to prove that HPD isn't upholding a racist criminal legal system. Why should I, as a citizen, trust the community service aide when they are employed by department that doesn't, doesn't even track stops, detention, use of force, or arrests by race? If you can't prove that you're not already disproportionately targeting people of color with the power you have, why should we assume that more staff would increase our trust levels? If you have displayed the curiosity or initiative to hold yourself accountable on these difficult questions, why should we believe these new civilian employees will act as anything more than apologists and PR representatives? If Harrisburg citizens are indeed at the top of our city's organizational chart, then it is incumbent on HPD to provide data, clear position descriptions, including required qualifications, and a vastly expanded role for the community to be in charge of its own public safety. I recognize that these issues are difficult, that these conversations are hard, and that elected officials want to take action. However, there is so much work to be done before we should consider sinking millions of dollars into the police budget at this time. Thank you, Alex Domingo, seventeen hundred block of Penn Street. Uh, this is from Otis Pierce. He said, dear City Council, please delay the vote on this budget until the end of the month. The City Council is not being given adequate time to review and discuss the opinions of city residents on areas of the budget. of city residents on areas of the budget, such as the allocations of nearly three million dollars to the police department toward programs that are not proven to reduce bias in police, in policing. Public safety can and must go beyond policing and surveillance of our communities. I find it insulting that the mayor is using the twenty twenty one budget to primarily address the long-term financial stability of the city of Harrisburg while the residents, his constituents are facing such acute and immediate financial crisis. Joblessness and homelessness must be prioritized over policing and the city's own debt repayment. There is an eviction crisis in Harrisburg. On January first, thousands of people who were protected from eviction by the CDC's Evictions Memoratorium will have nothing keeping them safe in their home during the coldest time of year and during a devastating pandemic. Given that we are surrounded by crises all, on all sides and many of us have lost control over most aspects of our lives and futures, please allow us to regain some control over the future of, future of our city. Extend the timeline to vote on the twenty twenty one budget and seriously consider the suggestions from the public. Thank you. And that is from Otis Pierce, Fifth Street resident. Um, let's see, we have one from um, Dustin Augustine of the Midtown area. He says, dear city council, the budget should not be hastily rushed through, especially with the massive increase to the police budget and further cuts to sanitation and other public works. Investing in the communities within the city of Harrisburg instead of further bolstering an already extremely bloated police force will do more good for city residents that are already overpoliced as it stands. Money needs to be allocated for housing and people need to be safe from evictions. Evictions during a global pandemic are heartless and unconscionable and will be a death sentence for a great many people. And this is from Lou. Oh, excuse me, this is from Angela Kirkland. My apologies, the fifteen hundred block of North Second Street. Dear city council members, Mayor Pappenfuss released a budget for the city the week of the Thanksgiving holiday and now just two weeks later, there is a vote scheduled. All broadcast talks about, all, all broadcast talks about it have been during times that are largely inaccessible to hardworking residents. This speaks to a lack of transparency as well as consideration and planning. It's crucially important that you delay the vote until December twenty ninth so that the community has enough time for input and review and can direct substantial funds to relieve Harrisburg's most immediate needs for the good of all. The budget as it currently stands gives Harrisburg Police their largest increase in city history, a total of nearly three million dollars in a new and un, in new and unspent funds. How have they proven themselves worthy, worthy of this? Harrisburg Police have notoriously been, been unable and or unwilling to provide demographic data regarding their arrest. When I was part of a local organization, we had issued several right to know requests which went unanswered. And when data was finally handed over, much of it was redacted and poorly formatted. Why are the police so deserving of nearly three million dollars in additional funds when they cannot or will not even show the community how well they're allegedly, they allegedly serve us? Why are the police so deserve, deserving of this money when they cannot prove that they don't disproportionately target black and brown people for arrest? Until they can provide this data, they shouldn't be given any more dollars. Nationwide, we are facing an eviction crisis. Once the CDC's memoratorium expires in December, Harrisburg is not exempt from this, from this. Uh, let's see. Well, of the nearly three million dollars earmarked for police, some should be redirected toward keeping as many people as possible in their homes during what is set to be a deadly winter with COVID nineteen still raging. Housing of insecurity is also a factor in crime rates. Housing insecurity, excuse me, is also a factor in crime rates. One of the best ways to serve the residents of Harrisburg at this time and for the long haul is to make sure that everyone has shelter. We must make it so that our most vulnerable are protected for only then will we all be. And this is Angela Kirkland, fifteen hundred block of Second Street. And um, next comment, um, is from, is it Haniel, uh, Sin Deller, Sin Deller uh, of Delaware Street. Says, member of coun, members of council, I'd like to advocate for the delay of a vote on the city budget until December twenty ninth, but wonder if a delay will do anything to actually affect the outcome. The current proposed budget gives Harrisburg Police their largest increase in city history, throwing money at an institution that shows no interest in being accountable to the larger public and that has repeatedly faced criticism for their lack of accountability to the community they are supposed to serve. Mayor Pappenfuss has continually shown a lack of interest in the community, community's concerns about police on our streets and the disproportionate amount of funds they've received to perform services that the public is perpetually dissatisfied with. While families across the city struggle to stay in their homes and local businesses fight to stay open, there are literally a thousand other items that are more deserving of these funds in the coming year. But do the concerns and well-being of citizens matter more than prioritizing a police force that continues to disturb and endanger us? That remains to be seen. Um, let's see. Uh, this comment is from Liam Hicklin. And he says, Dear city council members, I remember this summer at a town hall meeting when Mayor Pappenfuss mansplained defunding the police to the crowd. He tried to make the idea more platable, platable, excuse me, to the masses by explaining that the idea was to reallocate funds from the police department to other services such as housing, health, social services and education. At that time, I thought, even though he's trying to soften the idea of defunding the police, he seems to be agreeing with the idea, at least in principle. Even if he's not fully on board with the slogan, he's signaling, he's signaling that he's willing to make structural changes to the budget so that the police department isn't allotted the lion's share of the Harrisburg city's funds. Or even if they're still allotted more than any other city department, they'll receive less so that funds can be allocated to more critical areas of health and human services. Boy, was I wrong. Not only did he no, not take some of the funds that according to several city council members were languishing because they were earmarked for personnel that doesn't exist, he increased the budget. It appears the mayor is solidly on the side of the militarized, militarized police force. At least that much is clear. I hope that the council does not adopt this budget proposal unless the budget for the police department is examined. I also hope that Harrisburg residents remember Mayor Pappenfuss's inflation of the police budget in light of his words at the townhouse, town hall at Reservoir Park. If it is his goal to connect with the residents to show that the lesson of early twenty twenty have impacted him in a way and to honor the protests, demonstrations and organizing that occurred through the spring, summer and fall of this past year, he has failed. We need a leader who is attenuated, um, to the needs of the residents, not of a particular department or fraternal organization. Um, Harrisburg is languishing not for lack of police, but for lack of services and resources accessible to many residents. And that is, um, Liam Hicklin of the Midtown area. And then, hang on a second. I see. Um, this is from Winnie O. Dear city council, here we go again. Please read this submission in its entirety. Uh, put a little oomph on it, please. Uh, we are immediately busy, okay. On November twenty fourth, two weeks ago, Mayor Pappenfuss presented his proposed twenty twenty one budget for the city of Harrisburg, which included twenty one point six nine six million dollars for the Bureau of Police. This is a two point eight six two million dollar increase from what the Bureau of Police actually spent in twenty nineteen. This is also the largest increase in Harrisburg's history. Can you please explain why, especially given the increased concerns over the public relations and implementations of protecting and serving the community? The community demands to have more time to effectively review this budget. We understand that the holidays are coming and we still demand transparency and fairness for our city's budget. You have until December thirty first to pass this budget, so no data, no dollars. There is no clear justification that these drastic measures are incre, and increase in spending by the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for the Harrisburg residents. The city's history of rushing new action items and budgets through without considerable input from the community must end. We demand that the community funds be prioritized to better our youth's academic experience within the public school system, accessible community mental health programs and other immediate, immediate community needs during this difficult time. And this is from Winnie O'Kello, South Thirteenth Street resident. And this comment is from Julia Mallory. Uh, she said, dear city council, Mayor Pappenfuss refu, released the budget from the Harris, for the Harrisburg during a holiday week and a vote is scheduled within fourteen days. City residents deserve adequate time to ac, access and deliberate on these matters and a voting date of December twenty ninth would provide the needed review period. The budget as it currently stands gives Harrisburg Police their largest increase in city history, a total of nearly three million dollars in new and unspent funds. Safety cannot be a reactive measure when youth unemployment, evictions and COVID nineteen remain largely unaddressed in our community. It's unfair that we continue to burden police with fixing social problems. Our community is enduring a lot. A rush to vote without adequate explanation contributes to mistrust and disengagement. At a minimum, I am asking council to please extend the period for citizen review and input. Julia Mallory. Alright, um. This comment is from Jeanette and she just said, I support the proposed budget as it is for the community, which includes police. Um, this comment is from Rachel Peacock. Dear city council, my name is still Rachel, Rachel Peacock. I still live in Midtown. I read that on November twenty fourth, Eric proposed twenty twenty one budget for the city of Harrisburg, which includes twenty one point six nine six million dollars for the Bureau of Police. This is a two point eight six two million dollar increase from what the Bureau of Police actually spent in twenty nineteen. This is also the largest increase in Harrisburg's history. The community demands to have more time to review this budget. Folks being evicted from the homes in the winter during a pandemic, the city needs to help the community and use that funding for food, clothing or shelter. We the people can't wait. We need with resource, we need with resource not to be overpoliced. We need to sh, uh, to shirk the budget, I think maybe it's supposed to mean strength, the budget for the police. Residents of the city need transparency and fairness for our budget. You have until December thirty first to pass this budget. No data, no dollars. There is nothing to improve, to prove that these drastic measures and bloated increases in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. The city's history of rushing budgets through without input from this community must end. We demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time. Sincerely, Rachel Peacock. Uh, this comment is from, uh, Vishal. I apologize for butchering your last name, Pajapa. Um, Pajapa, excuse me. Eric has once again attempted to keep the public in the dark with his budget proposal, just like when his attempt to privatize the water. He has sprung a, a surprise on the city and is insisting on finalizing the budget within his timeframe. Eric keeps doing this because council never tells him he can't. Council appeased him when he tried to privatize the water and Harrisburg had to fend for themselves. Council must take a stance this time. The public needs time to assess and revise Eric's budget. Like many of his policies, they favor developers and businesses over regular Harris, Harrisburgians. We do not need to give the Bureau of Police its largest budget hike. We do, we do need to move money around for COVID-related relief. Until we get forthright and clear data from the Bureau of Police, they should not get a nickel more. Instead, we should be focusing on families that are facing eviction or other hardships. Please delay the budget process and allow Harrisburg to have a voice on the budget. I implore this council to take a stance for democratic processes and procedural fairness. Extend the process, allow the public to weigh in, make the decision transparent and tell Eric he cannot run raw shod over the city. Thank you. Um, this is from Robert Shoff. He says, elected members of city council, please read this comment in its entirety. Thanks to the work of grassroots community organizing, more Harrisburg citizens are becoming watchdogs over the automatic business as usual government. We are busy and we are asking for representation in this, in the process. We demand transparency, transparency, excuse me, and fairness. This should be a baseline standard of all levels of government. Tuesday, November twen, November twenty fourth for the presentation of Mayor Pappenfuss's twenty twenty one budget for the city of Harrisburg, a whopping twenty one point six nine million dollars for the Bureau of Police with a whopping two point eight six two million dollar increase from what the Bureau of Police actually spent in twenty nineteen. This was the largest increase in Harrisburg's history. It should be clear from the summer Black Lives Matters demonstration and Citizens Review Board Initiative that officials take directives from citizens. This should also, this should cause everyone to pause. The community demands to have more time to review this budget. Areas for investment include community services, deeper dive into policy, housing initiatives with established goals for affordability, renovation of units and community initiatives to support remote education, citywide infrastructure, maintenance, increased and distributed COVID nineteen testing sites. Where is the plan or related action items to achieve community goals and objectives? We are asking for evidence-based metrics in any city initiatives to demonstrate effectiveness annually. We, no data, no dollars, excuse me. We demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time. And sincerely, Robert Shoff of fifteen hundred block of Green Street. And next comment is from Peter Fair. Uh, Peter Fair, uptown Harrisburg resident says, hello. It is widely inappropriate that Mayor Pappenfuss is calling for an increased police budget at this time. Harrisburg city residents are being evicted from their homes at this current moment and the police are doing nothing to help them. These dollars that the mayor is allocating for the police must go towards community services. Please consider taking the time to postpone his, this budget and do further research into why the funding should go towards services that help Harrisburg city residents instead of our ineffective police force. Uh, next comment is from Leah Davis. Leah Davis said, the vote for twenty twenty one budget should absolutely be delayed until the community can properly review it and provide input. I don't support the increase in the police budget, especially considering that the increase is three million dollars more than they spent in twenty nineteen. Harrisburg needs that three million dollars redirected into support for affordable housing measures, especially considering the coming eviction crises due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. This is Leah Davis of Bo Street. Uh, another comment is from Jovanna Sarver. Uh, she states, uh, dear council, Harrisburg residents deserve to have a say in where, where funding is allocated in the city. Please consider delaying the vote and providing more time for public hearings on the proposed twenty twenty one budget. Most importantly, there is an eviction crisis happening in Dauphin County. The city funds should be used to keep residents safe in their homes this winter. Unemployment and housing needs need to be prioritized over policing. It's reprehensible that the police would get a pay increase while people are struggling to eat and afford rent. Thank you, Jovanna Sarver. Uh, next comment is from Jennifer Hartman. Jennifer Hartman stated, dear city council, please read this comment in its entirety. On November twenty fourth, Mayor Pappenfuss presented his proposed twenty twenty one budget for the city of Harrisburg, which includes twenty one point six nine six million dollars for the Bureau of Police. This is a two point eight six two million dollar increase from what the Bureau of Police actually spent in twenty nineteen. This is also the largest increase in Harrisburg's history. The community demands to have more time to review this budget. The almost three million dollars can be used to support the city in a meaningful way outside of the Harrisburg Police Department. The funds could be used to invest in community initiatives by creating supportive spaces for youth with after school programs. The funds could be used to improve road conditions. The funds could also be used to invest in housing. The funds could be used to support community organizations proven to meet housing needs. The funds could be used to create incentives for city residents to acquire property. We know that the holidays are coming. We still demand transparency and fairness for our budget. You have until December thirty first to pass this budget. No data, no dollars. There is nothing to prove that these drastic measures and bloated increase in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. The city's history of rushing the budgets through without input from the community must end. We demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time." And that is Jennifer Hartman, sixteen hundred block of Green Street. Next comment is from Chelsea Howard Foley. She says, "Hello. Just sending a note to let you know that I'm Chelsea Howard Foley, city resident and property owner, and urge the council not to pass the city budget until the public has made, had more time to weigh in on the proposed budget and plan. Additionally, no increases in funding for the police force. They should all be fired. Thanks." Next comment is from Shannon Tuker. Twenty-two hundred block of Second Street stated, "Dear City Council, I am embarrassed by this mayor's proposal to add funds to the HPD in a time of economic hardships for our city. Not only because it is so disrespectful to our citizens who have lost income during this pandemic, but also because it shows such a lack of understanding and empathy of what this community has been trying to educate him on. Our city is struggling and funding is needed in so many sectors. How can he justify adding to the police budget that the citizens have still not been granted access to? True public safety looks to keep the citizens housed and fed instead of evicting and brutalizing them as we have seen during pandemic, during this pandemic, excuse me. Our citizens are struggling and need relief, childcare assistance, access to COVID testing, and so much more. Policing our citizens further is not how we share, we show care. We demand transparency and fairness to our budget. You have until December thirty first to pass this budget. There is nothing to prove that these drastic measures and bloated increases in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. The city's history of rushing budgets through without impact, excuse me, input from the community must end. This mayor is an embarrassment to our city and should resign for even suggesting such regressive and racist budgeting. Do not stand with him." This comment is for, I mean, this comment is from Melissa Hansberger. She says, "Dear City Council, the community demands to have more time to review this year's budget that includes an almost three million dollar increase for the police. We need more time to review this budget and to learn why it is necessary to implement. What is their purpose? Who will they serve? Who will they be? Whose idea was this? Among calls to defund the police and increase police oversight and eradicate racist policing, it is absurd that you would pass a budget increasing the police budget, especially without proper input from your city, your city that is majority black and brown, those who are most affected by the racist policing. We, the people of our city, call on you..." Let's see. Sorry. "We, the people of your city, call on you to reroute these dollars to community programs that will help lift our community up. Instead of focusing on how to police people, if we invest in mental health services, adequate and affordable housing, education, et cetera, we will better our community in sustainable ways with longer lasting and more positive impacts than funneling even more money into the police. We know that the holidays are coming. We still demand transparency and fairness for our budget. You have until December thirty first to pass this budget. No data, no dollars. There is nothing to prove that these drastic measures and bloated increase in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. The city's history of rushing projects through without input from the community must end. We demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save the community during this difficult time." And this is Melissa Hansberger of the Green Street. We have a comment from Kamika Campbell. "Hey, Harrisburg, it's time for public comment on the proposed twenty twenty one budget." She says, "Use the template below." Oh, she sent it, "No data, no dollars." She said, "Please read the comment in its entirety. On November twenty first, fourth, excuse me, Mayor Papenfuss presented his proposed twenty twenty one budget for the city of Harrisburg, which includes twenty-one point six nine six million dollars for the Bureau of Police. This is a two point eight six two million dollar increase from what the Bureau of Police actually spent in twenty nineteen. This is also the largest increase in Harrisburg's history. The community demands to have more time to review this budget. Why we need to bolster support for people that are experiencing housing crises in the city of Harrisburg due to this pandemic. We need to form better support services for our youth. We need to have a city public health response to this pandemic. We need more money poured into public works and not into the police bureau. The mayor is trying to use his bully pulpit, his bully pulpit is to pass this bill as is. We won't let that happen. We know that the holidays are coming. We still demand transparency and fairness for our budget. You have until December thirty first to pass this budget. No data, no dollars. There is nothing to prove that these drastic measures and bloated increases in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. The city's history of pushing budgets through without input from the community must end. We demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time." There's one comment from Michaela Beckwith. Yes.
You do not have to keep reading the same comment over and over again.
Well, see, the thing about it, Neil, is some of them aren't exactly the same. Like, their beginning and end might be, but their in-between isn't. I guess my question also becomes, if they're asking for the comment to be read in its entirety, that's a question for you. Do I, I mean...
You do not have to keep reading the same statement over and over again because someone says they want it read.
Okay.
It's already been read. It's in the record.
Okay.
You just have to attach their name to it.
Okay. Hello, attached is my public comment for tonight. Dear City Council members, this comment seems to be the same as before in reference to the mayor's budget report on November twenty fourth. And it says, yeah, the same thing. It's just attached.
I'll read her name into record, Charan, or his or her name into record.
Michaela Beckwith-Moritz.
Okay.
Michelle Locas of two sixteen Vineyard Road. Dear City Council, I am a Harrisburg resident writing to urge you to slow down the decision-making process on deciding the twenty twenty one city budget. Why rush the vote on December ten when the decision does not need to be made until December thirty first? Allowing more time invites more public comment and careful consideration, which you must agree is best for all. When you do vote on the budget, I urge you to invest more heavily in community services and lessen policing. Even so-called community policing is not what our city needs. We need better funding for housing, rental relief, safe spaces for youth, and COVID testing sites. Until there is more transparency on specific actions the police is taking to change this racist culture and practices, I do not support more money going to the police department. The current proposal would mean one out of every five dollars goes to the police department. Meanwhile, other essential city services are starved, like sanitation and care for the needy. We cannot police our way into a better future. The police serve a limited purpose and should not be axed or funded to solve mental health, addiction, and other problems. Please note that voters like me are watching for wise leadership on these important matters. Please do your part. Thank you for your consideration on this matter." And that is Michelle Locas of Vineyard Road. Let's see. This comment is from Jessica Long of Second Street. Dear City Council, thank you for taking the time to read this comment in its entirety. It has come to my attention that Mayor Papenfuss presented his proposed twenty twenty one budget for the city of Harrisburg on November twenty first, or, excuse me, twenty-fourth. The budget includes twenty-one point six nine six million dollars for the Bureau of Police, which is sort of in line with what other comments have said. She said, "The community demands to have more time to review this budget. The city doesn't need more bad policing, but needs more community resources such as affordable housing incentives for the Harrisburg residents to acquire properties, not outside developers, and supportive resources for struggling families. These are unprecedented times, but the city's history of rushing budgets through without input from the community must end now. We need transparency and more community initiatives that actually benefit the entire city. Sincerely, Jessica Long of North Second Street." And the last comment for tonight is Ruth Lott of Second Street. Dear City Council, again, her first part is reflective of the same sentiments about the mayor presenting his budget on November twenty fourth and the increase, the noticeable increase for the police bureau. The added comment is, "We know that the holidays are coming. We still need to demand transparency and fairness for our budget." And again, that you have until December thirty first to pass this budget. So, no rush, no data, no dollars. And again, the same thing that's been said before in the sense of there's nothing to prove that these drastic measures will help with policing and that they would like more public input. And this is, again, from Ruth Lott.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Charan. Mr. Allen, anything further from the chair?
Nope, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting if you so wish.
Second, please, for adjournment?
Okay.
Pardon me, Mr. Matson, are you seconding the motion?
Oh, yes, I am seconding. With authority.
Wow, you all have a good evening and I will see you tomorrow, five thirty, Budget Finance.
Good night, everyone.
Good evening, good night.